Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Islip Planning Board for Wednesday, July 16th. We all please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one inch, one yard, invisible but ready, justice for all.
Thank you. I just want to go over the agenda for this evening. Just two items that have been adjourned. Item one on the agenda, Paul Bottra, if you're here for that, that will not be heard this evening. Item four on the agenda, Feldfem Associates will also be adjourned. We have a few short items on this evening that are decision items, then we'll go to the R-Square Development in Seville. I remind all applicants to please keep your presentations to 30 minutes or less. You're welcome to submit anything in writing. That'll be made part of the record. Anybody from the community that wants to speak, I know we have over 100 signed up right now. We ask you to keep your comments. There'll be a clock updated at three minutes or less. Please try and focus on the impacts of the community. That's what you all need to hear about so that we can actually make a decision on that. You're also welcome as well to submit, if you don't want to speak this evening, you'd rather submit something in writing, please do so. I know we've received a lot of emails on this agenda item. I've read most of them, but I think they were approaching 300 and change, or 400, as I drove here today, so there, we will read them all individually before we do anything. That being said, I ask everyone also to be respectful of each other, whether your opinion is for it or against it. Everybody's entitled to opinion. We want to hear that. And most importantly, we have a court reporter at the end, so if you can speak slowly, loudly, and not interrupt any of the speakers with clapping, or booing, or whatever the case may be, so that she can keep an accurate record. We thank you all for that. And the first item on the agenda for this evening is Charles P. Ferraro, SP 2023-005, west side of Grant Avenue, 280 feet south of Moffett Boulevard Islip, 156 Grant Avenue. App can request a park and relaxation, permission to locate overhead doors facing Grant Avenue, and other site plan modifications in connection with the construction of a new four-story mini-storage facility. Is the applicant here? Come on up.
Mark Saglioka, offices at 131 East Main Street, Bay Shore, New York.
Feel free to add anything, Mr. Saglioka. If not, we can go right to a staff report.
No, I'd like to go right to the staff report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This application had a public hearing on February 26th of this year. Decision was reserved for the applicant to meet with the adjacent homeowners association to the south to discuss the project. Per the applicant, productive meetings took place with the HOA. The town received a letter from that HOA with a list of conditions requested, and further meetings between the applicant and them were concluded. Those initial requests by the HOA included limiting hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., implementing any possible visual and noise barriers, strict adherence to the town's site lighting requirements, and limited use and thoughtful placement of any 24-hour lighting. And lastly, a prohibition on drop-box services and moving-vehicle rental service. So the following is a short list of improvements to the application by the applicant. Per the applicant, as these types of uses are primarily used before and after working hours, they would agree to a limit from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., with exception of emergencies. The other facility across Grant Avenue is 24-hour access, so this operation is being reduced to lessen any potential impacts to the neighbors to the south. The applicant is agreeing to replace a section of the HOA's parking lot that is in need of repair, as well as plant approximately 10 to 15 evergreens, about six to seven feet in height, on the HOA property side of the required residential buffer, so that is in addition to the required buffer that they have on their property. The applicant is agreeing to prohibit drop-box and vehicle-moving rental service at this property. In terms of lighting, the project is required to abide by the town's lighting ordinance, which is dark-skY compliant. There was a comment at the public hearing regarding parking onsite and the relaxation requested. 12 stalls are required, 6 are provided. This property will be required to record a shared parking agreement with their storage facility on the other side of Grant Avenue. And although across the street, it does allow any tenants at this site to unload and then park at the other site if necessary. Self-storage facilities generally have the least impacts in terms of vehicles compared to other uses, and having most of the parking at the other site would limit vehicle impact to the surrounding neighbors adjacent to this site. Lastly, the height of the building was an initial comment raised at the public hearing. Per the applicant, this project, in terms of building height, has been the same proposal since before they purchased the property. There were various meetings with the town, county legislators, et cetera, in regards to this project. The building size was actually reduced from the initial concept plan to meet fire code requirements. And for reference, the proposed building height is permitted as of right an industrial one. The main bulk of the building is about 43 to 44 feet high, and the only portion exceeding that ridge height is the east side of the building, which faces Grant Avenue, which provides a higher ridge for the lighthouse aesthetic. Essentially, most of the building is only about eight to nine feet taller than the maximum permitted height of the adjacent rez CA housing to the south. So based on all the facts above, staff recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Not seeing any. I just want to note for the record that Mr. Moriarty has recused on this matter. Is there a motion?
Well, I just wanted to ask, did you read the conditions?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and everything's fine with that?
They're satisfactory, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Rulon. Mr. Brown?
Yes, I see that you addressed all the issues that we had at our public hearing. And you did execute the CNRs?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, please?
Have you signed the CNRs?
I have not signed the CNRs just yet.
You agreed to them, correct?
Yes, I have agreed to them.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, based on the staff report, I'm going to make a recommendation to grant the application.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to grant the application, subject to the covenants and restrictions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Rulon. All in favor? Opposed? And one abstention. The application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Plan Board Application, Eric Bjornby, RAPB 2025-010, southwest corner of Lowell Avenue and Oceanside Street. Islip Terrace, 34-48 Lowell Avenue. App can request a planning board special permit for a minor restaurant in the Business One District, pursuant to 68-272.1A. Site plan modifications are also requested as part of the application. Good evening to the applicant.
Good evening.
If you'd like to make a presentation, you're welcome to. We go right to a staff report. It's your choice.
Staff report, please.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Woznick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the public hearing, concerns were brought up about the potential negative impacts of late-night hours of operation adjacent to single-family homes. A nearby resident mentioned issues in the past regarding property maintenance and concerns of noise late at night. The property itself does have a deficient buffer, lacks landscaping, and has some deficient parking stalls. However, it's important to note the property recently received site plan approval from the Engineering Division, which addresses many of these concerns, including the addition of much-needed landscaping. The site improvements will need to be completed before a CO is issued for the restaurant, and the applicant has stated the majority of orders are delivery and pickup orders, as there will be no seating indoors or outdoors. Based on this, planning recommends the board grant the application subject to the attached conditions, which limits the hours of operation from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but allows delivery and pickup orders until 1:00 a.m., which will help limit the potential of customers arriving late at night to place orders at the counter and then waiting on the property until their food is ready.
Thank you, Ms. Woznick. You okay with those conditions?
I am.
Is there any further questions from the board? Anything further from the applicant?
Nope.
Is there a motion? Mr. Moriarty?
I'd make a motion to grant the application, subject to the attached conditions.
It's a motion by Mr. Moriarty to grant the application, subject to the attached conditions. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Cruz. All in favor?
Aye, abstention.
Opposed? One abstention. The application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Board Application, recommendation item, Outer County Construction Corp., CZ 2024-001, south side of Eastern Street, approximately 149 feet east of Rayner Avenue, Ronkonkoma, 966 Eastern Street. App can request a change of zone from Residence A to Industrial One in order to construct a warehouse with office. App can further request a planning board special permit for the overnight parking of registered vehicles pursuant to 68-340.1C. Site plan modifications are required as part of the application. Good evening.
Good evening.
Your choice. Presentation, or Mr. Colgan?
Mr. Colgan, I just do want to say that we did amend the call of the meeting to remove the request for a special permit for outdoor storage.
Thank you. Mr. Colgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This application was previously heard on March 6th of last year. The primary concerns raised at that time were the proximity of the overnight parked vehicles to residences, the rezoning of residentially-zoned property to industrial, noise, onsite circulation, and the nature and character of the neighborhood. Since that time, the applicant has modified the conceptual site plan to remove the overnight parking of trucks. They've increased the front yard landscaping and residential buffers. They preserved the existing house, and they reoriented the warehouse so that the overhead doors do not face the residences and instead face the street. All of these changes are positive in mitigating the impacts to the adjacent residences. If the board is satisfied with the changes, the staff recommends the attached covenants and restrictions, which minimize the impacts to the nearby residences.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Anything further from the applicant?
No.
Is there a motion? Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the application, subject to those conditions.
It's a motion by Mr. Wilson to grant the application, subject to the conditions. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Moriarty. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention. The application is granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Board Application, Public Hearing, R-Square Development LLC, CZ 2017-009A, southwest corner of Lakeland Avenue and 11th Street, Seville, 458 Lakeland Avenue. The proposed action involves amendments to Chapter 68 zoning of the Town of Islip Code, including the zoning map to establish the South Bay Village Plan Development District, SBV PDD, and a change of zone from Residence AAA District to the created SBV PDD in order to permit the construction of an 890-unit residential community consisting of 576 rental units and 314 for-sale units. Of the rental units, 318 are multifamily, 66 are single-family detached, and 192 are single-family attached. Of the for-sale units, 77 are single-family detached and 237 are single-family attached. 174 of the rental homes and all of the for-sale homes proposed are to be age-restricted, with a portion of affordable rental homes to be reserved for adults with disabilities. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. -- can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Speak closer, or pull the mic closer to you.
How's that? Better?
Can you hear in the back?
Good.
Speak loud. Pretend you're in court, and there you go.
Again, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Daniel Baker from the law firm Greenberg-Trowrig, 900 Stewart Avenue, Garden City, New York, 11530. On behalf of the applicant, just before I get started, understanding the board's desire to keep this to 30 minutes, we are going to be as close as we can. We believe this is a very complex application. There have been significant changes. We want to make sure the board hears that, and the audience as well. So with that, I think I can immediately chop off my first paragraph because you just said it. So with that, I'll start by simply saying that the application tonight is to amend Chapter 68 of the Town of Islip Code, including the zoning map to establish South Bay Village Plan Development District and to change the zone of the subject premises, the Island Hills Golf Course property, from Residence AAA to the new South Bay Village PDD. As with the original plan, applicant will not be seeking any IDA benefits for any of the units in the proposed project. I am joined tonight by our project team, which includes members of the applicant, a member of the Island Hills Independent Advisory Committee, and representatives of our design and environmental consultant teams. I will ask some of them to speak shortly to provide a description of the current proposal for the property and to highlight some of the changes made from the previous submission in 2018, then known as the Island Hills Plan Development District, which includes a dramatic reduction in density and number of units, as well as design changes such as reduced height limitations of three stories and less, and intended to create a development that fits more within the existing character of the surrounding community. In 2014, Reckler Equity Partners acquired the defunct Island Hills Golf Course and spent the next three years performing outreach and developing the plans for Gray Barn at Island Hills. In March 2017, a change of zone application was submitted for a 1,365-unit community that resulted in the Islip Town Board taking lead-agency status under SECRE, conducting scoping, and deeming the original draft environmental impact statement, or DEIS, complete, which then led to a December 2021 Town Board hearing on the DEIS and proposed PDD. On December 14th, 2021, the Town Board adopted a resolution not to proceed on the application as then submitted. Applicant spent the next two years creating a new vision that adjusted the size, scale, and configuration of the previous plan into the newly-created South Bay Village. This reimagined plan was strongly driven by the formation of the Island Hills Independent Advisory Committee, which conducted community meetings that led to a committee report and findings which were incorporated into the revised vision for South Bay Village and a 35% reduction in overall density. Earlier this year, the Town Board confirmed its continuing lead-agency status for this matter, and a supplemental draft environmental impact study, or SDEIS, was submitted to and deemed accepted by the Town Board, which issued a notice of completion on June 10th, 2025. It is important to note that the Town Planning Staff and the town's consultants, VHB and LKMA, reviewed the SDEIS and participated in the Town Board process to issue the notice of completeness. While the SDEIS will be the subject of a future hearing before the Town Board, the purpose of tonight's hearing is to present the South Bay Village PDD and associated change of zone in order to seek this board's approval and recommendation to the Town Board for its consideration of the new PDD and proposed development. At this time, I would like to call Michael Dewidziak, a member of the Island Hills Independent Advisory Committee, who will share information about the meetings the committee held and the June 2024 report that was prepared based on the feedback from community stakeholders. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Dewidziak. I've worked for over 45 years as a pollster, strategist, and general consultant. So why am I here talking to you tonight? It all started in June of 2023 when an old friend, Jim Morgo, approached me with a novel concept. For decades here on Long Island, we've seen contentious battles between developers and NIMBY groups. At the same time, we've witnessed an ever-declining level of decorum in our national discourse. Jim asked, "What if there was a way to get meaningful input from the community without all the rancor?" If not immediately convinced, I was definitely intrigued. Reckler Equity Partners reached out to five members of the Bayport-Seville-West Seville Hamlets, known for their history of community involvement, to form the Island Hills Advisory Committee. They were me, a Bayport resident and former president of the Seville Rotary, Mary Lou Kohalen, a Bayport resident and former publisher and editor of the Suffolk County News, and a former editor of the Suffolk County News, Justin Jacon, a West Seville resident and director of Public and Community Relations at Good Samaritan Hospital, Fred Welsh, a Seville resident and former restaurant and tavern professional, and Timothy Dolan, a Seville resident and public high school teacher and football coach. We were tasked with listening to and reporting on public input about a new concept for the Island Hills property. It's important to note that we were given a completely free hand in conducting our meetings in any way we choose. We decided on invitation-only meetings with participants of like interest. Our goal was to create a safe environment for people to engage in civil discourse. From September to November of 2023, we conducted a series of meetings with groups that included restaurant and tavern owners, school board members, and district officials, chambers of commerce, environmental groups, civic associations, local residents, and business owners. Before each meeting, I got up and told the attendees that we were there to listen, not to talk. I stressed that we were an advisory committee and not an advocacy committee. We weren't there to engage in debate or convince them of anything. We were there for proponents of the process, not the project. We also stressed that what they were being shown was only a design concept and not the final plan for the project. One of the architects of the new concept then made a presentation, during and after which people were able to ask questions. Afterward, everybody was invited to give their feedback and opinions with no time restraints and were listened to respectfully. In my introduction at each meeting, I relayed to the group that there had been a social media post criticizing our committee as powerless. I said they were right. None of us had the slightest power to affect the final decision at what would ultimately happen to the Island Hills property. The charge was absolutely true unless you believe in the power of communication, of respectful discourse, and of compromise. The vast majority of attendees, even those who opposed the new concept, had mostly praise for our process. Several attendees mentioned that they appreciated being given the opportunity to provide their ideas freely without fear of rancor. One Seville resident and homeowner who attended one of the meetings stated that he thought the committee had developed a productive way of gathering community feedback. He stated he thought the invitation-only format produced more meaningful dialogue. Additionally, the address of our website was published in the local newspaper, and residents were invited to leave comments or to ask to attend a meeting. We received a total of 50 submissions from 47 individuals. Once the meetings were over, the committee set to work to write an in-depth report that included an executive summary and a detailed account of all the comments, pro and con, we heard at our meetings. We reported the feedback we received, both good and bad. Concerns about homeownership, infrastructure, traffic. Sorry? Were all included in the report. So once the committee's meetings were over, we were then set to write the report. We sat down and edited it very carefully. People who were quoted in the report were asked to look at their comments and make sure that they accurately portrayed what they said that they actually did say at the meetings. So... Sorry.
Thank you, Matty.
Okay. So with as much completeness and accuracy as possible, we reported the concerns as stated. As our job was to accurately report the community's feelings, we made no attempt to correct misstatements or inaccuracies stated at the meetings. The final report was then presented to Reckler Equity Partners and also made publicly available on our website, whose address was publicized in the local newspaper. Lastly, I would like to make note of the historic nature of this process. In 45 years of working on Long Island, I've never seen a builder or developer make this kind of effort to get input from the surrounding community. I can tell you that I am personally impressed. There was no attempt to excise out the negative parts of our report, nor any objection to making it completely available to anyone and everyone. I can also tell you that I am personally impressed by the compromise generated and changes made directly to what the community stated and was contained in our report. And I will now turn it over to Greg Reckler to describe those changes made.
Mr. Dewidziak, before you sit down, if I can just go back to the advisory committee?
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me what the general concerns raised, the primary concerns raised, and anything that was primarily said in support of it?
Absolutely. It's...
I know it's in the report, but if you could just give me a summary.
We heard traffic over and over again.
Right.
We heard overdevelopment often enough. We heard impact on the school districts, the number of students that could possibly be added. And I will just tell you that, again, all of these things are contained in the report. And I will just tell you that the only criticism I have heard about this report personally was, "Well, you didn't talk to everybody." And my answer has always been, "Well, no. It would have been literally impossible to have talked to every resident of the Town of Islip or even every resident of the hamlet of Seville." But what I have asked people to do is look at the report, read it, and tell me that your concerns are not adequately represented in this report. Nobody has ever come back to tell me that. And in fact, there have been social media posts citing the report by the opponents of the project.
Thank you. Were there any issues raised by the community in terms of the height of any of the buildings? I know I have the traffic down. I read the report. I just want to put this on the record.
Okay. That's probably more in what Greg Reckler is about to represent. But I will tell you, yes, but we were also facing with a lot of misinformation. We've had a lot of people came in and said, "I hear it's going to be eight stories." So we've dealt with a lot of misinformation.
If I can ask everybody again, we have to keep a record. Everybody will have an opportunity to be heard. We will listen to all of you and all of your comments. We'll take them into consideration. I want to make sure you have the same respect when each of you speak as well. Please continue.
So we were dealing with a lot of misinformation. If it was factual, we tried to put their mind at ease as to what the misstatements might be. But again, we didn't try to not put things in the report that people said, even though we knew they were inaccurate.
You know, I read the report. I just wanted to give you the opportunity to put on the record the summary of those issues that were raised of concern and any issues that were raised in support. If there was a summary of the top issues on both sides, if you wanted to put those on the record.
I would say the top issue in support was clearly environmental. I mean, clearly, the chance to get sewers for Main Street Seville. And then those who were just building advocates who wanted greater choice of housing for seniors and for young millennials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. So my job is really to talk about the report and what was in the report and how we were able to incorporate it into the new plan. So... So my name is Greg Reckler. I'm managing a partner at Reckler Equity Partners, located 85 South Service Road, Plainview, New York. So before you is the original plan that was submitted in 2017. It was 1,365 units. It was predominantly three- and four-story buildings. It was just one- and two-bedroom units. And it was what we typically called our gray barn residence. And this is what was put before the Town Board in 2021. And that was really, you know, not, you know, it wasn't thought of very well. And so with that, you know, Mike Dewidziak, you know, and this committee went out and, you know, wrote this report. Our job was to read the report. And the things that we took from the report that we incorporated into the new plan was decrease the scale and height of the original proposed plan, decrease the overall density, reduce future impact of school-age kids, include single-family detached cottage-style homes, include homes for sale, create a plan that reduces traffic impact particularly to Lakeland Avenue, break up large expanses of parking, reduce nitrogen impact to protect the aquifer, and to provide sewer capacity at downtown Seville. So to do that, we really had to scrap the original gray barn concept. And we had to go to a whole new design concept where we eliminated mid-rise buildings. We focused on a combination of different building types, a typical cottage, a cottage with attached garage, townhouses, something we're calling a typical captain's house, which really would have eight to 10 apartments or flats, and a manor house, something that one would see on the south shore of Long Island, you know, that was cedar shingle that would have, you know, multiple apartments in it. And we used this as our guideline for, you know, for the new design. And, you know, just quickly, the upper rendering is what was proposed in 2017. The lower rendering is what we're proposing now. So I'm just going to quickly hit all the issues that came out of the report and talk about how we addressed them. So, you know, the first item is decrease the scale and height of the proposed buildings, revise the design to reflect the aesthetic of the surrounding community and greater Seville. So we did this by, again, you know, creating a range of small buildings and different types of buildings with no greater height than three stories. The design feels like something you would find, you know, in a, you know, pre-war Long Island suburban neighborhood. And we were able to mix these different building types together that it feels like a neighborhood. The second item was to include... The second set of comments from stakeholders was to include a range of housing type and price points, decrease the density, include age-restricted homes, and include homes for adults with autism and developmental disabilities. is a 35% total reduction, of which 576 are proposed to be rental, 314 for sale. Of that, 100% of the for-sale would be age-restricted, and 30% of the rental would be age-restricted. So, on a blended basis, the total amount of age-restricted would be 55%. In addition, 15 of the affordable rental homes would be reserved for adults with disability and autism. The next set of comments we heard from the stakeholders in the report was to include single-family detached cottage-style homes. So, here, we had the opportunity to make, you know, to typically, you would cluster something like this. We decided this was a great opportunity to take the single-family detached homes and place them around the entire perimeter of the property so they're facing the other single-family homes that exist today. And this is a good example. This is a view looking up Bohemia Parkway. To the left would be the existing homes. There's a 250-foot space between the homes on the left and the homes on the right with the green belt in between. So, we thought this was a great recommendation. This was actually a recommendation that came from one of the civic associations. It was the GIA who recommended, you know, this, you know, single-family cottage-style homes. And we incorporated that into the plan. The next recommendation was include for-sale homes. So, as I mentioned, 314 of the homes that were being proposed will be for-sale. That represents 35% of the total site. And we're... I'm sorry. Let me... And that's being recommended to, you know, we're planning on putting that on the southern, the southwest portion of the site. And again, you know, these, you know, everything along the perimeter would be single-family detached, and in the center would be, you know, townhomes. The next, the next item from stakeholders was consider traffic flow improvements to the proposed area as it relates to the previous plan. So, we really were able to address this, you know, three ways. First, by reducing the overall density by 35%, we're automatically reducing total traffic. But more importantly, by having 55% of the total site be dedicated to age-restricted housing, we're automatically reducing the peak traffic time and the number of vehicles that are being used by those residents. The third way that we're addressing this is really by design. And in our original plan, we had the entrance, the primary entrance, on Lakeland Avenue. In our new proposal, we're now moving that to the corner of Bohemia and 11th, where most of the traffic will be able to move, be, come in and go out on the South Service Road of Sunrise Highway. So, you know, eastbound traffic could just go east, westbound could loop around to the North Service Road, and if you're going north, you go north. And it really eliminates, eliminates a lot of traffic onto Lakeland. So, the next, the next set of comments was break up large expanses of parking. Here, really by design, by, you know, changing the building type, we're able to keep parking really to the streetscapes and to, you know, to behind the buildings. And, yeah, and this is kind of what, you know, what that would look like. I'm sorry. Okay. So, with that, this is the proposed plan. I'm going to let the rest of the team really talk more about it. I really wanted to talk specifically about, about the changes that we made as a result of the committee's report, and I think that's what's really important. The last thing I want, you know, the second to last thing I want to talk about are the community benefits. So, Dan Baker mentioned that there's going to be a sewer treatment plant. We're proposing that 70,000 gallons per day of additional capacity be built into this plant and be dedicated to downtown Saville. This does two things. It's huge for local businesses, but it also significantly reduces the nitrogen impact that will benefit the water quality of the Great South Bay and the surrounding aquifer. We're making a financial contribution to a downtown Saville art center. 22 and 1/2 acres will be set aside for public space along the perimeter of South Bay Village. There'll be 89 affordable homes with 15 dedicated to adults with autism. There'll be tax increases of just under $5 million to the local school districts, and there'll be an onsite fire department substation. So, these are the community benefits that we're... So, before, sorry, again. So, before I move on and hand the podium over to Chick Voorhees, I wanted to point out, as Mike said, there are some misstatements, and I want to, I want to just clear the record and be clear, and just run through a few of them very quickly. The first misstatement is that we're looking to receive a tax abatement or an IDA. I want to be clear that that's not true. We will not be seeking a tax abatement for this project, not now and not in the future. The second one is that South Bay Village will be comprised of four stories and higher buildings. And again, as I already testified, also not true, you know, as shown by our presentation, there'll be no buildings proposed that are four stories or higher, so nothing, nothing higher than three stories, you know, on the property. The third is that, you know, South Bay Village...
Mr. Reckler, the diagrams that I've looked at show three and 1/2 stories. Is that not accurate? You're saying nothing higher than three. I just want to confirm for the record. Is it three and 1/2 or is it three?
Three stories.
Okay. So, then there's certainly something that I can send you a copy of that shows, that I'm looking at right now, that shows them at three and 1/2 stories.
Okay. And so, our architect will be up shortly.
Okay. So, we can trust that with your architect then?
He'll testify. Okay. So, anyway, so, the next item that I wanted to discuss that's, you know, that has been discussed as misinformation is that South Bay Village will be a burden on the school districts. You know, I want to point out that the school districts have seen decreasing enrollment of approximately 14% over the last 10 years. Through this proposal, the school districts will receive over $5 million of property tax revenue and a very small increase of students due to the fact that 55% of this project would be, would be age-restricted, and the majority of the additional rental units would be one- and two-bedrooms, creating a disproportionate low number of school-age children. Therefore, the taxes generated by this project would far, you know, would be far more than the cost to educate students generated by the project. The other item that we've heard that, you know, is that South Bay Village will harm the environment, and this couldn't be further from the truth. Providing sewer capacity to downtown Saville will directly improve the water quality of the Great, of the Great South Bay. And lastly, that the South Bay Village refused to meet with the public. And so, as Mike, you know, Dwezziak just testified, the Island Hills Advisory Committee met with all major stakeholders and wrote the report. Additionally, since February, we've met with 10, we provided 10 presentations to different organizations and community groups that were open to the public. And it should be noted that there were several groups that, you know, didn't want to meet with us. And I just wanted to go on the record and just, you know, kind of clarify those issues. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Chick Voorhees to run through his presentation. Thank you very much.
Either for Mr. Reckler or Mr. Baker. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time because I'm not sure who your lineup of speakers are. But I want to talk a little bit about the unit breakdown. Do you have somebody else who's going to speak about that, or is it Mr. Reckler or is it you?
Yeah, I mean, Chick, I mean, you're going to...
Chick's going to speak about that, then we'll go to him.
And our architect, our architect. So, the next speakers are going to be Chick Voorhees to talk about environmental, and Jeremy Lake is our architect, and he'll get into all the unit breakdown and the architecture and the height and all of that.
Okay. And then either for you, Mr. Baker. When you came up with the first proposal of 1,300 units and the second proposal of almost 900 units, did you look at the Town of Islip comprehensive plan as well as the Suffolk County Sunrise Highway corridor study, which talked about maintain... If I can ask everyone just... One is I want to get through the meeting because we have over 100 speakers. Two, I need to have her keep a record, and everybody will have, given an opportunity to speak. But I just want to know how that was factored into the number of units you came up with.
Yep. And again, you've directed right into our next speaker.
Oh, perfect. I'm getting ahead of myself. I apologize. Mr. Robinson?
Just a quick question because we're talking about the advisory group as it had a major impact on, you know, how you guys changed the plan. Was the advisory group independent or was it funded? Was Mr. Waziac paid by the Reckler to conduct this, you know, independent advisory group?
I am a public opinion professional, so I was paid. Not all members of the advisory committee were, but I individually was. I'm, I do work for, I mean, you know, attorneys do work for pay. You know, I don't think you'd ask that question of a, you know, a teacher or a police officer and say, "Well, if you, you know, if you're doing your work for free, are you really dedicated to the community or can you really be fair?" You know, so, yes, I was paid as a professional, but I can't speak for, I can't speak for every other member of the committee.
And as the professional is paid, did you come up with the invitation list? How were the people, how did you decide who was invited to partake in the advisory group? Because you said it was invitation-only, and obviously now you're saying you were paid. Who came up with the formula or who would be invited and who would be able to partake in this, you know, discussion?
Again, I'm just going to ask everyone to please refrain from the clapping so we can move the meeting along. But thank you.
Notably, we invited the chief known opponents to the plan. We invited the GIA to their own meeting. They're free to bring as many members of their, of their organization as they wanted to, and they were free to speak as much as they wanted to. And the GIA actually got more ink in the report than anybody else. Similarly, the Saville, the Greater Saville Civic Association was invited. So, we intentionally went for people who were known opponents for the plan to give them as much chance to speak as possible, and we listened to respectfully. And then we went to logical stakeholders such as the Main Street businesses, the restaurant and tavern owners, the school district, the members of the school boards in the school district, you know, so we, and then regular residents and businesses. So, we tried to get as good a cross-section as possible, you know, of stakeholders so that we could get input. And as I've said, if you feel like, you know, your concerns aren't represented in the report, then read the report and tell me what isn't represented in there. Is traffic represented? Yes. Is overdevelopment represented? Yes. Is the impact on Main Street? And again, this was a new process. There, there's a place for open meetings like tonight. You know, there is a place for open meetings where everybody comes and gets to speak, and there's a place for that. But that wasn't our process. We were trying for a new process. We were trying to create safe space where people could feel free to express their opinions without somebody shouting them down on the other side of the table.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike and Greg. Good evening. For the record, my name is Charles Voorhees of the firm Nelson Pope Voorhees. We are environmental planning consultants. I've been an environmental planner on Long Island for the past 47 years. I know I don't look it. I'm very familiar with the site, the area, and I was the primary author of the prior DEIS and this current supplemental EIS. As was mentioned, and I'll be very brief, but there was a prior accepted draft EIS. Based on that, as you've heard, there are a number of changes to the proposed project, and as a result, a supplemental EIS is the appropriate method for project review at this time. The town board agreed. They required a draft supplemental environmental impact statement on November 19th, 2024. And as Mr. Baker mentioned, they accepted the document after multiple revisions reviewed by consultants and staff on June 10th, 2025. You are an involved agency, as you know, and I'm sure you take your role seriously. We also very much value planning board input through this process. The DEIS can be referred to, and it provides a lot of useful information for you to consider. It fully identifies the changes in the project and the updated plans. It also conforms with the original scope and secret requirements, and all such requirements have been met to date. It includes a full description of the, of the project with maps and plans, existing environmental conditions, potential environmental impacts, alternatives to the project. It also includes detailed traffic studies, economic and fiscal analysis, ground and surface water impact studies, soil conditions due to past use of the site, archaeological investigations, ecology, and a number of additional studies. There are a couple of factors. The DEIS is an information gathering document available for all involved agencies and the town board. Just to briefly touch on some of the environmental considerations that came out of that analysis, it is recognized that the site is a former golf course. The project will ensure a healthy environment for the site and area residents. As has been mentioned, there will be a sewage treatment plant for the proposed project as well as additional capacity for businesses along Main Street. There's a substantial environmental benefit to groundwater and baywater quality. Based on the analysis, there will be a net nitrogen load reduction of 2,640 pounds of nitrogen per year when accounting for the project and treatment of currently untreated commercial flow from downtown. The project will retain all stormwater on-site based on the design storm provided by the engineer, and drainage will use green infrastructure for rainwater treatment. The project will retain existing vegetation, particularly around the perimeter of the site, and it will also enhance ecology. We have prepared and included an ecological restoration plan. It establishes new native habitats over 15.61 acres or 14% of the site. In terms of planning considerations, the project will provide substantial tax revenue to all taxing jurisdictions as a result of the change from fallow land to improved land. Total taxes will increase by 24 times over existing taxes to about $7.4 million per year. The majority of taxes, or an increase of about $4.9 million, will accrue to the Connect Quot and Saville school districts. This revenue more than covers the cost of educational services. It was mentioned, but I'll specify that the project will not seek IDA tax deferral. Therefore, tax revenues will be positive. There's no commercial use proposed on the site as was requested through public outreach. The project will provide over 1,300 construction jobs and over 40 permanent jobs, and will have a tremendous beneficial ripple effect on the economy in the town and the region. The project will provide housing diversity options at various price points, including single-family, multifamily, age-restricted, and affordable housing, which includes homes for special needs individuals, as Mr. Reckler mentioned. The project is designed to be compatible with the neighborhood through buffers, setbacks, housing types, and architectural design. It was mentioned that there's a 22.4-acre park on the perimeter of the property and a number of additional benefits that you've heard about. There was one question about land use plans and analysis of the comprehensive plan as well as the Sunrise Highway corridor study. That is covered in detail in Section 3 of the draft supplemental environmental impact statement. We do present it in three sections. We identify the plan itself, what the plan states, how it may relate to the proposed project, and we compare...
Can you, I mean, that's a preliminary question I have. Can you give me a summary as to how you considered the comprehensive plan as well as the Suffolk County Sunrise Highway corridor study, and how you arrived at where you're at now based upon those two studies?
Well, it was, it was certainly factored into the project planning. As I said, we identified what each plan says. I don't have the 100,000-page document with me at this moment, but the comprehensive plan covers a number of areas. It covers land use compatibility. Well, it was, it was certainly factored into the project planning. As I said, we identified what each plan says. I don't have the hundred, thousand-page document with me at this moment, but the, the comprehensive plan covers a number of areas. It covers land use compatibility, covers excellence in design, it covers housing diversity, affordable housing, not impacting the environment or traffic. So where we, this is all analyzed, and that's the reason for it, where we refer to other sections of the draft EIS in terms of visual, potential visual impacts of height, that was addressed through setbacks, design, and incorporation of the multifamily structures into the central portion of the site. We do talk about housing diversity. Again, there was a detailed traffic study. Our traffic engineer is here. So when you look at the comprehensive plan collectively, it covers really quality of life issues.
Right, but the comprehensive plan specifically called out, this comprehensive plan specifically called out this property. And what I'm trying to get from you is how you got from what's in the comprehensive plan, and what's in the Sunrise Highway Traffic Corridor Study, which also specifically talked about this, to where you're at now in terms of the number of units. I understand townwide, but they went out of their way to put something specifically about this property in there, and I'm just trying to get that bridge to how you got from there to the numbers you're at. That's what I'm trying to find out from you.
If, if it's, if it's all right, I will research that. I have the document on my...
If I can ask everyone, thank you. I appreciate it.
I can certainly come back and address that. There may be some comments that are addressed by our architect also, in terms of how the project was designed and its compatibility. And the EIS is a public document. It's in the review period, and comments can be made on that document. It was reviewed, determined to be adequate.
I'm not questioning that all that stuff is in there. I'm just trying to establish from the beginning how we went from those two studies, which are before us as well, to look at and consider, from that to where we're at in terms of your recommendation or your proposal before us. And that's what I, if you or Mr. Baker or someone can speak to that, I just wonder how we got from there to there, and maybe there are mitigating reasons, the factors that you considered. I just want to hear them and put them on the record.
Well, I think I've identified some. It is a large, it's a unique piece of property. It's 114 acres. It presents opportunities. It allows us the ability to address a number of elements of the comprehensive plan. We're here because it is a land use application, and we're, we're here to listen to input and take that seriously and go through the process. So I will come back with additional specifics, and I can access the document from my laptop right now.
Yeah, I understand your, there are other parts in there about housing diversity, housing, diversity of housing stock and the rest, but there's specific sections in both of those that deal with this property, and I think we're glossing over that. So maybe one of your other speakers can talk specifically how we got from those two studies and that specific property to where we're at. There may be factors you considered. I just want to hear them from you.
Yes.
I understand you're talking about the entire comprehensive plan, but those two prop, those two studies call out that specific property. And I'd like to hear the relation, whether it be this evening, or something submitted in writing, and we'll leave the record open for that, to find out how you got from that, those two studies, to the numbers you came up with. That's what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I think it's been an iterative process. As Michael mentioned, there was a lot of public input. I don't want to repeat what's already been said, but let me delve into the document and pull that specific information out for you. And that does conclude my remarks.
Before you sit down, I think Mr. Wilson and Mr. Brown have a question.
Can you confirm the wastewater plant's capacity from Main Street?
Yes, it was...
Do you have any independent data to, you know, on its design or its maintenance? Or if you have any independent data on its design or how it's going to be maintained?
Yes, our project engineers researched Main Street, Main Street businesses. They looked at a tax parcel basis. They identified uses and sanitary flow, and we have, as I said, designed the plant with an additional capacity of 70,000 gallons. In terms of operations, we do have our engineers here, but the plants are designed and reviewed by the Suffolk County Department of Health Services as an arm of the New York State DEC. They have to conform to the, the review criteria. The plant is approved through the Health Department. It's constructed under their guidance, and it's operated under Health Department guidance.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out if it's, it's just going to reach maybe a few restaurants on Main Street, if it's going to do the bulk of Main Street.
I'm just trying to get a sense if it's going, if it's going to reach, you know, multiple restaurants, multiple locations on Main Street, just a couple, just a handful? Like, how's that going to work?
No, it's a, it's a large segment of, I'd say, the majority of Main Street. We do have specific information on that area, but it, it's a, it's a substantial area, and 70,000 gallons is a substantial flow. It's currently untreated. It's being discharged closer to the bay. This will remove it, treat it, farther north from the bay, and discharge it at less than 10 milligrams per liter, where now it could be anywhere from 50 to 65 milligrams per liter. So there's a substantial quantified benefit that we address in the environmental impact statement.
Thank you.
Yes, I wanted to ask you, you mentioned the draft environmental impact study, which I saw in that you used a 1.5-mile radius, which went north. Can you hear me?
I, I can't hear. I'm sorry.
Okay, I want you to explain to me, you went from 1,300 to 890 units, and I want you to explain to me how it's in the character of the neighborhood. You used a 1.5-mile radius, which goes north of Sunrise, includes a lot of Bohemia, and I'd like to know how that fits into the character of this neighborhood that we're surrounding now.
We did do a, a density analysis. It is an attachment to the EIS. We looked at a large radius and a small radius. I believe it's a quarter of a mile. We characterized the land uses within those areas. We computed density of the existing development in the area, and we compared our proposed project to that density. We found that we're less than the average of the multiple-family residential developments that are within the study area, and we are somewhat more than the existing only-single-family home development in the area. And this may go partly to the chairman's question that I'll refer to as well, if I'm up, provided the opportunity to come back. But the density analysis does provide that information, and we looked at, as I said, a wide radius and a small radius.
Right, and when you're researching what Mr., our chairman asked before, I think the master plan stated that it was cluster housing with a golf course. And I, I would like to know, too, how you got from there and transist to this project, and see what principles and sources you used for that.
I understand. Again, it, it was a long community input process and a lot of design work that went into it, and that'll be presented by some of our upcoming speakers. So I'd like to hand it over to our project engineer.
I'm just going to keep you in the hot seat a second longer, since this is your area of speaking. Assuming we accept the 1.5-mile radius, which I have a problem with based upon Mr. Brown's comments on that, I think the best we come up with is a Residence B type of zone, right? If you compare the majority of those in the 1.5-mile radius, which, if we converted it all to Residence B, which I'm not suggesting we are, the maximum unit you would get under Residence B would be between 464 and 600 units. So even in your own study of the 1.5-mile radius, which is much larger than should have been considered, considering it's north of Montauk, it's Bohemia, it's different areas, a Residence B gets you to 464 to 600 units. How do we, this goes to my first question, again, looking at the comprehensive plan, looking at the Sunrise Highway Corridor Study, how are we getting to this larger number? Like, what are the, what are the reasons we're using to justify that? And that's a question for you. Unless it's some other speaker. I don't want to put you in the hot seat if it's another speaker.
I mean, I will, I will tell you that there are alternatives to the proposed project as part of the environmental impact statement. We did look at scenarios that have a lower density. They don't result in a lot of the benefits that we believe this project provides. I mentioned the size of the property and the design elements that provide compatibility with the neighborhood, and that it's, it's a uniquely large site. So all of that information, I mentioned, it's an information gathering process. The EIS looks at all of that. Looks at lower-density alternatives and compares them to the proposed project. That's Section 5 of the draft EIS, and we have a very detailed table that goes through all of the associated impacts with the proposed project, as well as the alternatives. So I'd urge you to look at that. And again, I'll, I'll look to specifically address your comment either later or in writing.
Yeah, if you can, address both above Residence B, and as well as taking into account those two studies. And I've read the DEIS and all the other documents, and I'm making my way through about 400 emails, so a little behind.
You're a good reader. This will be Eric Mine.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Eric Mine. I'm with Bowler, B-O-H-L-E-R. We are the civil engineering consultant for the project. I have been doing land development on Long Island for the past 27 years, the last 22 of which have been with Bowler. And for the record, I am a Bayport resident of 17 years. I'm here to speak about the site plan and civil aspects of the proposed, proposed development. And just to orient you with regard to the site plan, I know everyone's familiar with the site, but the image on the right, plan left is north, just to orient everyone. Bohemia Parkway is at the bottom. Lakeland Avenue is at the top. The subject site's comprised of approximately 114 acres, south of Sunrise Highway. With regard to the proposed buildings, the larger proposed structures, the manor houses, are centrally located at the core of the development, and then the development steps down as you move outward through the captain's houses and townhomes, out to the single-family cottage-style homes around the perimeter. Mr. Lake, our architect, will discuss more about these structures later in the presentation. As you've heard, the development is surrounded by a walkable green space, and existing trees around the perimeter of the site will be retained to the extent practical. You've also heard there are four access points proposed for the project, with the main access point being located on Bohemia Parkway across from East Golf Street. There's also a signalized access at Lakeland Avenue, and then additionally, there's an access proposed kind of in the middle of 11th Street on that frontage, and there'll be one on the south side of the development on Terry Road across from St. John's. We do have our traffic engineer, Mr. Mahay, here, who can address some of the traffic design and mitigation measures as necessary. Back to the plan itself, the roadway network internal to the development will have no dead ends, and will be designed in such a way to promote walkability and pedestrian safety. Residence parking will largely be at the rear, in drive aisles of the residential structures, and there'll be on-street parking on one side of the fronting roads. A good example of that is the image on the left. So you can see that there. The roadways are designed in compliance with fire code and emergency access vehicle requirements. As part of the process, we did meet with the town fire marshal and with the Sayville, West Sayville Oakdale Fire District. One of their requests was to provide a fire substation, which that we have also proposed, again, on 11th Street, up in the northeast corner of the site. From a parking perspective, we're proposing a surplus of 199 parking spaces over that which is required by town code for the development. The development will also have several amenities, inclusive of two clubhouses with pools, sport courts in a field, the aforementioned walkable perimeter greenway, and pocket parks. The development will be phased, beginning with the northwest portion of the site and extending southward to the for sale portion of the, of the project that's in the southern portion, and will also include the Lakeland Avenue access upgrades, as well as much as the infrastructure as part of Phase 1. Moving on to more of the engineering, the grading, drainage, and utility side of things, the grading plan was developed in a manner to minimize earthwork, with just under 8,700 cubic yards of export proposed, which is a negligible amount for a project like this. Stormwater drainage for the subject development will be retained on-site and will be designed to accommodate the 100-year storm event. The storm drainage will occur in a combination of below-grade drywells and three retention ponds. You can see the ponds kind of in the middle of the development up on the rendering. The subgrade, subgrade drywells will handle the more remote areas of the site, and much of the roof drainage, whereas the three retention ponds will handle much of the surface drainage. Wastewater, that sanitary wastewater, as you've heard, will be handled by an on-site sewage treatment plant, designed in accordance with Suffolk County standards. The plant will be designed to accommodate the excess 70,000 gallons per day for the Sayville Business District. All tankage and equipment associated with the STP will be enclosed within a building approximately 271 feet south of 11th Street. You can see that kind of central on 11th Street, and will be screened from view by landscaping. That being said, the aesthetics of the building will match those of the surrounding development, and all sanitary infrastructure will otherwise be located below grade, and the treated wastewater from the STP will be recharged on-site via subsurface leaching pools. From an electric standpoint, the homes proposed will be heated by an efficient electric technology, and the electric infrastructure for the development will be buried below grade, and water will be provided by the Suffolk County Water Authority, and will loop the development, much as the surrounding neighborhood receives, receives their water. The irrigation, however, will be provided by the existing golf course well. And with regard to lighting, we are providing decorative street lighting throughout the development that will meet town and dark-skies standards. And now, in the interest of time to keep it moving, I will turn it over to Mr. Lake, our architect.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio. I did want to mention, we were going to potentially have Hitesh talk about the traffic, but in the interest of time, we were wondering if you want us to skip over that, because it's all part of the material we submitted? Would you like for him to do a couple slides real quick about the traffic before I finish with the architecture?
I think traffic is probably one of the most critical parts. Besides getting to the number of units, I think traffic is probably one of the most critical parts of this. So I think, absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sitesh Mahay. I'm a traffic engineer with Nelson and Pope, a Long Island-based firm. Nelson and Pope has been conducting...
I'm going to ask you to speak a little bit louder, so everybody can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sitesh Mahay. I'm a traffic engineer with Nelson and Pope, a Long Island-based firm. Nelson and Pope have been conducting extensive traffic analysis and impact studies across the Long Island from the past 75 years. Nelson and Pope conduct a comprehensive traffic impact study for the proposed 890 residential community to identify potential traffic impacts and determine appropriate mitigation measures. The study methodology and assumption used in this report were reviewed and approved by the town's consultant traffic engineer. In order for us to, to start with the traffic study, initially, we counted 22 intersections to collect the traffic data during the weekday AM, weekday PM, and Saturday midday peak hour in both school and summer peak season. The turning moment data were summarized and used to simulate a traffic analysis model for existing and proposed condition. The existing model were calibrated for school and summer peak period, ensure alignment with the existing traffic. The most recent three-year of accident data from January 2020 to December 2023 was obtained from the New York State Department of Transportation, and all the study intersections were analyzed. The proposed development will build in four phases. Each phase will analyze for traffic impacts. Future new build and build volume were projected using conservative annual growth of 0.4%. Trip generation for the proposed 890 unit were estimated using the highest traffic rate observed among the three comparable residential development in the vicinity of the site, along with the read from the IT trip generation manual, to evaluate peak hour impacts. Trip distribution and assignment for the project were developed using the data from the 2020 U.S. Census Bureau, Journey to, Journey to Work for Sayville, and trip distribution pattern for the nearby Fairfield-Noll community. The final distribution was determined by averaging these two data sources. Site-generated traffic volume were then added to the future new build volume to establish the build condition traffic volume, representing the project traffic after the full build-out. To assess the traffic impacts, capacity analysis were completed at all the study intersections for both new build and build condition during the weekday AM, weekday PM, Saturday midday peak hour, covering both school and summer peak.
So what are the total number of trips expected to be generated during the AM and PM peak hours and Saturday, midday peak hours on Saturday? I sure can. Sorry, just trying to clear my throat there at the same time. What are the total trips expected to be generated during the AM and PM peak hours, as well as the Saturday midday peak hours?
Yeah, excuse me, and that would be at the full build, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we are expecting for AMP cover, the total entering and exiting will be 424. For PM, 489, 299 entering and 190 exiting. And for Saturday midday peak hour, 425, 213 entering and 212 exiting.
So total trips are what? And this is for the total... And this is for the total 890 units, correct?
For total 890 units.
And what are the total trips? What does that work out to, trip-wise?
Can you repeat?
How many trips is that? What's the total number of trips that equals?
424 for AM, 489 for PM, and 425 for Saturday.
And then what's the overall total?
Yeah, this is the overall.
That's the peak hours. What's the overall total trips that it adds, the project adds?
The overall with the existing site traffic, you mean?
When you add 890 units, what's not just the peak hours, what's the overall traffic, the number of trips that are added? Total, not just for the-
Per day.
By day, how many trips are added for the entire day, is my question?
Oh, for the entire day?
Yes, not just peak hours.
Okay, so I think, I don't, I don't have that here, but I will get back to you on that. I think it's gonna be close to like 1,300, if I'm not wrong. I don't want to quote something wrong here, but it's gonna be close to 1,300 vehicles per day.
Okay.
Including both AM, PM, and even the midday peak period.
And can you speak to the impacts of the traffic at the intersections and mitigation?
Yes. Afterover analysis, yeah. So the next slide that we are looking at is the mitigation measurement. So the impact of the traffic based on the analysis for the build condition, the analysis found that only the signalized intersection of the Lakeland Avenue and the Sunrise Highway North Service Road would require the physical improvement. In order to improve this intersection, the southbound approach will be redesigned to provide two through lanes and two right-turn lane, increasing the capacity and reducing the delay. Other than that, all the study intersection will operate adequately with the minor signal timing adjustment. That was the results of the analysis. There was like just one intersection to the North Service Road required the physical mitigation. All, other than all, like all the other intersections were operating fine. To further enhance the traffic flow along the Lakeland Avenue corridor, the following intersection improvement have been proposed. The Lakeland Avenue widening. So we are widening the Lakeland Avenue between Eastover Road and 11th Street to add a second additional northbound through lane to connect it with the existing two-lane section to the north of 11th Street. Right now, the Lakeland Avenue is operating as a one north through lane and one south through lane. So we will be adding additional northbound through lane. Similarly, we are adding a striping for the Chester Road, the Lakeland Avenue between the Eastover Road and the Chester Road to provide a one shared northbound lane to turn onto the Chester Road and one dedicated through lane. We are also eliminating eastbound left turn from the Chester Road onto the Lakeland Avenue. Instead, the driver will use a new connector road to access the signalized side driveway. This will improve the safety and reduce the congestion at the unsignalized intersection. We are also eliminating the eastbound left turn from the 11th Street onto the Lakeland Avenue to improve the safety and traffic flow. With these improvements, the traffic flow along the Lakeland Avenue corridor will improve significantly. As mentioned by the previous speaker, the main access of the proposed development is on the Bohemia Parkway. Accordingly, the access point on the Bohemia Parkway and 11th Street provide additional opportunities for the vehicle to exit site via the Sunrise Highway South Service Road. These roadway offer convenient access for making right turn onto the Sunrise Highway South Service Road. The section of the Sunrise Highway near to the Bohemia Parkway intersection carries relatively light traffic volume, allowing the easier right turn with the minimum minimal conflict compared to making the eastbound left turn onto the Lakeland Avenue with the higher traffic.
Mr. Moore, ready?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It sounds, based on the testimony, it sounds as if significant mitigation is going to have to occur with respect to a number of roads surrounding the project. That's going to require, at minimum, well, in certain cases, New York State Department of Transportation approvals, county approvals. Where are you in that process? I mean, the concern I have is these mitigation requirements are going to be necessary, you know, once the entire project is built. We can't just assume that you're going to get these approvals. Have you gone into DOT, spoken with the county, and worked through some of these issues to make sure that, you know, any of these road changes are feasible and would be approved?
I think we are in the preliminary stage. We analyze these mitigations. And we are, like, we didn't do the final design. Everything is on the conceptual plan for now. And I think we will eventually get approval from the county and state, all the involving agencies in future.
I mean, again, these sound like they're fairly significant mitigation efforts and significant modifications to the roadways, particularly a service road on Sunrise Highway, and I can't imagine that's going to be an easy effort. I'd like to see, you know, you provide some information to this board that, you know, you're comfortable that these approvals would be secured, not just based upon your own opinion, but based upon discussions with these agencies.
Sure. So the last slide that we, okay, and we move, okay. The last slide, I am going to talk about the conclusion. Based on the traffic and impact study and the analysis, Nelson &amp; Pope conclude that after the full build-out, all the study intersections and the Lakeland Avenue corridor are expected to operate at the level of service equal to or better than the noble condition. The Phase One and Phase Two of the project will not significantly impact surrounding roadway and intersections. The impact for Phase Three and Four, Phase Four, can be effectively mitigated through the proposed improvement. Here I have a table that compares the previous site and compared to the new site.
Can I stop you there?
Yes.
The relevant part for us is going to be what you're proposing to what is as of right. Comparing it to the 1,365 units is not a valid comparison. I mean, it's a comparison for what you originally proposed, but for our perspective, what, let me see the comparison from what you can put there as of right to what 890 units is. Not 890 to 1,365, that's not really a valid comparison for our purposes.
Okay.
So if you can give me that information.
Yeah, all the information that I gave you before was based on what we have of existing as of, with the comparison of the 890 units.
890 to the 1,365, with the 1,365?
13, no, the, all the information that that traffic study is based on the 890 unit comparing with what we have as of existing. This comparison table is just to-
This is, if you can put on the record, then explain what, give me the comparison on the record, not versus the 1,365 versus the 100 that you'd be allowed on the AAA versus the 890. That's what I'm trying to get on the record.
Okay, so based on the comparison with the 1,365 and 890.
What I'm asking for is the comparison from what you can build as of right to the 890 is the comparison I want you to speak about.
Hi, Hitesh is the true traffic professional. I'm just going to help him out a little because that is in Table 5-1 of the environmental impact statement, page 5-4. We do have Alternative 2 is a AAA-zoned project, as you said. And to answer your prior question, several of the studies that you referenced do call for retaining AAA zoning to facilitate the retention of the existing golf course. So those were fixed in time, at a time when the golf course was operating. Obviously, it's fallow now. It's not a viable use at this time. And we are presenting an alternative project that presents the opportunities that we've identified. So that, I think that addresses your question.
I'm going to leave you to follow up. You don't have to answer it now, but certainly get back to me on there. There was a project recently built not long ago in Brookhaven that included an executive golf course that has actually been termed very successful. So I want to know if you've considered an executive golf course and whether or not you've compared that. And again, I just want to keep the meeting moving so all of you can speak. We also have some public officials here who want to get up as well, so I want to keep things moving. I already cut into the 30 minutes by asking a lot of questions ahead of time, but I just want to put this on the record and get you to be able to respond to these because these are important factors for us to make a decision.
Of course, thank you. And there is a comparison of the trip generation, AM, PM, and Saturday midday peak. In that table, I can go through those numbers if it's helpful, or you can refer to Table 5-1. But I think we've covered a lot of traffic.
Do you have 5-1 in front of you? Can you give, can you give the board a brief, what the difference is?
Weekday AM peak. So, Hitesh, we've got three numbers here. Oh, enter. So there's an entering number of cars, trips, there's an exiting number, and there's a total. I'll just give you the totals. AM peak, proposed project, 424 trips during the AM peak. The Alternative 2 is 68 trips during that same period. PM peak, 489 trips during the PM peak. And for the Alternative 2, it's 87 trips. And the Saturday midday peak, proposed project, 425 trips. And Alternative 2, 79 trips. And again, there are a number of different alternatives. All of that data is in that table.
Right, so again, probably not this evening, but I'm going to ask you to, that's in some instances, six times more or 6.5 times more, to delve into that in terms of how the roadways can handle that, how the mitigation is going to work. Does the mitigation you're proposing to put in place return those intersections back to the conditions if it were AAA? Or is it just less than the impact that it's going to have? So you're happy to answer them now if you have the answers. If you don't have the answers, that's something that really needs to be addressed. Just because mitigation goes in place, if it doesn't bring it back to the current situation, which on some parts of Lakeland, some hours, there are traffic problems. So even returning it to the mitigated level is somewhat problematic. So I'd like to know what, if you have the answer now, what the mitigation does. Does it just not make it as bad, or does it bring it back or make it better?
So we did the field observation to match over existing condition model, to match with the existing condition model. And based on the analysis, the Lakeland Avenue corridor is operating at the acceptable level of service. With the proposed project, none of the Lakeland Avenue intersection is going to be affected, except the North Service Road. So that level of service will change from D to E. But with our proposed mitigation, we were able to bring it down to level of service D. So we are, with the comparison of the no build and with the adding the proposed site into that, we are looking at the, either the better no build or the equal to the noble level of service after the proposed development.
At the, again, either tonight if you have the answer, if not, something you can put back to us in writing. People, if you're going south on Lakeland, using those side streets to get to Lakeland, what it does, how it affects their access, turning out, going north or south on Lakeland. That's something if you can address now, if not, you can submit it in writing. If you don't have the answer, I'd rather have the proper answer than speculation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's what we are going to do. Anything that we need to address, whether it relates to traffic mitigation or anything else, we would ask that the board allow us to submit that in writing after the hearing. Leave some time open for us to do that, and we can discuss that timeframe when you want.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thanks. What I'd like to do now is just have Jeremy Lake come in quickly. I know we, you know, the timing is what it is, but we've also addressed a lot of questions.
I've cut into your timing, so we'll credit you for that time, I think.
Yes, he'll be brief, and then we can open it up for any questions and comments.
And Mr. Ruland has one question before you change speakers. Good.
Yes. Can everybody hear me before you yell at me? Good. In regards to the traffic studies, was any study done in regards to the Oakdale merge and the effect this would have on it?
That would be a question back again for our traffic and Nelson Pope and Bohees. Nelson and Pope.
Is he here?
So the answer is yes.
Where is he?
Hitesh, please step back up.
Not the same guy? Is that the same guy? Yeah. Did you understand the question?
Did we study the Oakdale merge? That's what you asked?
Yeah, did you do any studies in regards how the project as you proposed it would affect the Oakdale merge? I know it's more west of Lakeland, but you probably know about the Oakdale merge before the project.
I know about the Oakdale merge, but we included like a 2022 intersection in the vicinity of the site. The traffic, like, since we have like a four access points, so what we are assuming is the traffic is going to get dispersed. So there will be only minimal impact on the surrounding intersection if it is not right next to the proposed site.
So you did look into this?
Sorry?
You did look into this?
No, we didn't look at it. So if there was any impact, that would have been captured to the study intersection. If we were able to mitigate the study intersection, so I would assume all the other intersections which are farther away from the proposed site will also be fine.
Okay. Yeah, just to Mr. Ruland's point, I would note that you used your analysis of 1.5 miles away, which got you past Sunrise Highway. So I think we should certainly look at traffic a little further away if you're going to use that as your analysis point.
Okay.
Understood, and we will take that into consideration. Thank you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Jeremy Lake with Union Studio Architecture and Community Design. We are an architecture practice based in Providence, Rhode Island. We also have an office in Philadelphia. But we do work around the country. I will also say, this is my second project in Islip. I was here a few years ago, a project called Nula Green, a cottage court on Bayview Avenue. We were part of that application as well, so we're excited to be back. We work on a wide range of architectural projects, primarily housing, but housing of all sorts. Affordable housing, market rate housing, senior housing, student housing. We also do mixed use. We do institutional, et cetera. But what I think really sets us apart is that we also do a lot of work around the idea of community design. We do neighborhood planning. We were brought into this project because there was a desire to really shift the model from what was proposed previously to something that would be more akin to a walkable traditional neighborhood, and that's something that we do quite a bit of. I did want to just quickly recap some of the broader principles of the neighborhood design in case they, you know, got lost somewhere in the shuffle here. But overall, our overarching goal here was to create a walkable neighborhood, including a network of interconnected streets and blocks. And it really was intended to feel more like an extension of the existing community to the degree that we felt like that was appropriate. I actually started this thing connecting every street through as if this thing, there were no boundaries between the two. And I was told, you're nuts, no one's going to go for that. Let's find a balance point for that. So that's where we have a couple of points of access within, but it's why we also felt it was important to ring the community with a park that would be available for the existing residents that live across the street. And really treat those existing boundaries more like parkways, where neighbors are fronting on neighbors, not creating a bunch of buffers, not trying to hide this as if it's an isolated subdivision. Within the community, when you start to actually sort of blur your eyes and not focus necessarily on individual building footprints, and it becomes very obvious that the whole thing was designed to be a network of formal and informal green spaces. Again, we have the greenways that wrap around the perimeter of the site. We also have these greenways that work their way through the middle of the site. And we have community amenities like clubhouses, tennis courts, you know, things of that nature distributed around the community. So if you're, if you're living in this area, you've got access to a wonderful network of these things. This will be a dog walker's paradise. We've created multiple access points, as I mentioned before. I think we've touched on that, that we have really four primary access points that will help distribute and mitigate traffic impacts. But even within the community, I think it's important to recognize that we really are an interconnected network, you know. From a firefighting perspective, you have multiple points of access to everywhere within this community. That's, I think, a big improvement over what we proposed previously. And the incorporation of these shared parking lanes behind the units, those are those sort of gray dash lines that are mid-block. The goal here is to get the majority of the parking off of our internal streets and back into those rear parking areas, just to create that much of a more wonderful sort of experience as you're walking through the streets. And again, these were designed with emergency access and service needs in mind. And again, the goal overall was to have contextual, high-quality design for both the neighborhood and architecture by also incorporating a range of housing types. I know Greg touched on that briefly earlier, but that's really what I wanted to speak a little bit more about briefly here. He shared this diagram, you know, these are the various housing types that we are proposing for the community. Everything from a single-family cottage up to the multifamily corridor building in the lower right that we're calling a manor house. And I'll go through these one by one.
If you can leave that up there right now, that's actually I referenced earlier. I'm just noticing at the bottom. Is that not three and a half stories?
No, there's three layers of windows, three stories, right?
And what's on the other side, where I see the peak roof the other way?
Just the roof going up and over to the other side.
And what's the height of that?
We have not calculated the total height as of yet, but I would say to the-
So I would just suggest another thing, if you, again, if you can, again, submit to us in writing, the heights, and let's look at a three-story height versus above a three-story height. That's what I looked at in your plan, and to me, that's three stories in the front. And if you look at the side, that's another half-story above it. So that's where I think clarification is needed, and that's where-
Okay.
One thing I just want to reference, and maybe it's not you, it's someone else, you're talking about walkability within there.
Yeah.
Let's talk about walkability within a half a mile. What stores, what commercial areas are there that people who live there can walk to? That's one of the questions I have.
I mean, it'd be whatever exists currently, obviously, out primarily on Lakeland. There's also stuff out on the service road. I don't have the exact, you know, location.
Well, if you don't have that, I mean, you know, I've done an analysis myself. I've been there. I went out and walked it and measured the distance of it. I mean, getting to supermarkets and the rest, if we're talking about- I mean, getting to supermarkets and the rest, if we're talking about walkability, you're walking across, you know, Service Road, you're walking across underneath the bridge of Sunrise Highway to get to the other side of Sunrise Highway for those things. And I just bring that up because we're talking about increased density, we're talking about typically what's a walkable community, not walkable within the community, but that the residents, if we're looking at a downtown or something else that's in a district like that, they can walk out their door and walk to the amenities in the community. And I'd just like an analysis on that, that shows the walkability of that. So, if that's not you, I apologize, but that's the closest I saw to walkability, was you talking about walkability inside, I'm trying to get the walkability outside as well.
Gotcha. The first couple of types we wanted to share, the typical cottage and the typical cottage with attached garage. The difference here, again, is primarily we have those rear shared drives. So, most of the cottages would actually have their parking to the back. We have a handful of cottages that are up towards Chester Road. It's our one edge where we actually have neighbors that are backing to the property. In most cases, our edges are right-of-ways, our streets. And so, there was one condition where, because there were existing neighbors to the back, we didn't want to do that shared lane. So, we have a couple of cottages that just have a garage entering out to the front. Again, I think we showed this earlier, but just highlighting the location of these is around the periphery. So, these are one-to-one-and-a-half-story units out at the edges where we are adjacent to the existing single-family homes. And when we were thinking about the design of these, you know, the first thing we always do is sort of walk the neighborhoods and try to just look for examples in the local community. And so, we just have a variety of examples from Savel. Again, no one of these is the exact thing that we're trying to replicate, but we certainly are trying to pick up on some of the patterns we think, patterns of things we see, like the front-facing gables, the presence of dormers, the types of materials, the inclusion of front porches. I should point out, all the buildings we have have either a front porch or a covered front stoop at the primary entry point.
I'll give you the benefit of the data, I've reviewed all this, and I don't know what my board members stand on this, but you've done a great job with the design of the units inside there. The question is whether or not the project as a whole and the size of it fits with the character of that community. That's what the question is. I mean, I can go back and forth, and again, if I can ask everyone not to, I'm not arguing with you over design, I bet members of the community looking at the design, it is a beautiful design. The question is, you put time into that, we have to get past the traffic issue, the resource issue, the walkability issue. Those are the concerns that I hope we can spend more time on and focus on, because those are where my concerns come in. I'm not arguing with you over how it looks, maybe the height. But on the other stuff, you've done a great job in terms of how it looks, it's a question of whether what you're proposing actually fits in the character of the community, whether the neighboring streets can handle what you're proposing, whether or not you can mitigate traffic to the point where it returns it to an acceptable level, not just it mitigates it so it's not as bad. You know, there are questions about, I know Mr. Brown has questions, we have other questions regarding why all the for-sale units are senior-only if we're trying to build a community. I know that's being done to mitigate traffic, but the reason we have to mitigate the traffic is because we're asking for a lot more units than you're entitled to, which is why you can't offer houses for sale to families or people under a certain age. So, those are the type of issues that I have. I don't speak for the entire board, they have their own issues and concerns, but those are the areas I'd like to get you to focus on. I'll grant you, I'll stipulate that you've done a great job, the architects have done a great job with how the units look, minus three and a half stories, if it is three and a half stories. My question is just how that entire project fits within the community. Can it work within the community? And those aren't the answers I've heard this evening from the questions I've asked, and those are the concerns that I have. So, you're welcome to continue on this presentation, but I will stipulate, I don't know if my fellow board members would as well, but the design you've done is not in question for us, it's whether or not the project itself can fit within the community.
Okay. Great. Well, you've made my job easier. I'll just quickly just highlight that the townhouses and the captain houses, those are the things that are, the majority of it, that are a layer back from the single-family around the edge. We have townhouses and captains' houses in the rental portion, in the for-sale portion, just townhouses. We didn't do those small six-unit buildings that we're calling captains' houses. And again, the reference for those are large, single-family homes and homes and historic structures that were here as well, that really capsule, or I think, a lot of the character and spirit of what we're trying to achieve. And then last but not least, the manor house. I think the important thing to point out here is, we intentionally located these very much at the center of the community. So, from the periphery, you wouldn't see those structures, you wouldn't see that three-story building. They're very much in the interior. The idea was to transition down the scale of the buildings as you get out to the edges. So, again, just a couple of reference points of how we were looking at, how buildings in the area have successfully broken down the scale of larger buildings. So, those are sorts of things that we would pick up on and try to do as well. And so, that's the architecture. Happy to take any questions you might have.
Mr. Brown and Mr. Ruland.
Yeah, I had one question. How did you determine, I see non-age-restricted for sale, there's zero units, for kids growing up, you know, that want to stay in Savel, that grew up in Savel. So, how did you determine the different breakdowns, how many townhouses, seniors, for sale, not for sale, and all the rentals?
Yeah, I really should probably not answer this as the architect. I will say, I think, I know generally speaking, one of the big feedback points we heard through those community meetings were to think about how we reduce impacts on schools. So, one of the games we were playing was trying to figure out how much age restricted versus not. In a way, I'm agnostic, you know, when I started drawing the homes in the community, I wasn't necessarily thinking of age restricted versus not. It was about trying to just get that blend of the various house types to allow for a variety of households. But maybe Greg can speak to the age restriction.
Yes. So, the way we looked at it is, and that's a really good question, is, you know, there's no question, there's a strong need for all housing types. And, you know, age-restricted is one housing type, but our view is it's kind of a cycle. So, you could have young people, you know, starting out in one bedrooms, who then, you know, become, you know, a couple and are in two bedrooms, and then want to stay in the community. At the same time, you have people who live around the existing, you know, community, who want to downsize from their larger houses and move into an age-restricted home for sale. And that opens up housing for that next generation who wants to start a family, buy that home, and stay in the community. So, we kind of view it as a cycle, and that's really, you know, how we looked at the overall mix.
Right, because I saw the senior unit you had also had three bedrooms, which, to me, I thought that was a little unusual for seniors downsizing, having three-bedroom units.
Yeah, I mean, it's a combination of twos and threes. Some people, you know, want room for, you know, for grandkids to come and to stay, so it's a combination.
Yeah, just to Mr. Brown's point, that's something I also noticed, three-bedroom units are not typical when you're talking about senior housing. But I, just one other question again, because I want to get this moving along, I know we have a couple of public officials who are spending a lot of time here this evening, I want to get up also. How did you come up with the number of school-aged children? Typically, when we see an analysis done that includes multifamily housing, the numbers are less, but you still put out a number that seemed high, even though you're proposing multifamily housing, which to me didn't add up on paper, and I don't know how you arrived at that.
I usually get the opposite question. I think it's very astute, your observation. There are a number of studies in downtown areas, transit-oriented development areas...
You're not comparing this to transit-oriented development, because it's not walkable.
And that explains why we came up with the numbers that we did. And those, all of those studies have much lower numbers for generation of school-aged children. So, we did use a known reference that identifies price points for units, type of housing units, and number of bedrooms. And it gives us the ability to get more in the detail of the specific project. So, you know, there is a economic and fiscal analysis, it's Appendix C of the environmental impact statement. It discusses the entire methodology of how that was done. There's a full table of each type of unit and the estimated number of children based on known data in the Northeast and, you know, specific to the project type. But your observation is typically what, you know...
Usually, you're coming too low. That's, we always say, there's never going to be a school-aged child that's in there. I just couldn't figure out where these numbers were.
Exactly. So, we wanted to be honest, we wanted to assess the impacts, and that is what we've done.
I will look at the study if I can find it, I'll reach out to your counsel and ask for the clarification.
Sure.
Mr. Ruland has a question for you.
And I do want to just quickly mention that the EIS does have information on walkability. Page 3-19, Section 3 of the EIS, looks at a 10-minute walk. That's the reason that we did the half-mile radius around the project site.
So, tell me where you're getting in a half-mile walk. What services that you would need to avoid using a car?
Sure.
What you're getting, where's the closest supermarket?
The site's a 10-minute walk to Savel Plaza to the Northeast. There are existing...
Where is that?
North, it's across Sunrise and...
Okay. We're talking walkability here, we're not, hopefully not encouraging people to cross Sunrise Highway as part of this.
Again, please refer to the document.
I've seen it, I've read it, I just...
We did identify existing sidewalks and crosswalks in that area. That plaza includes a variety of restaurants, retail stores, and a number of undeveloped pad sites that we expect will be occupied. There are other commercial establishments in the area that we identified as well, I can go through them. Page 3-19 will have that information.
I would ask you to just point that out to us in a letter in writing, and where they're located, and how you, what steps, literally and figuratively, a person would have to take in order to get there.
Yes.
I want to keep, Mr. Ruland has a quick question, I want to make it to wrap up, and then we're going to go to our public officials.
Same gentleman that was just up there, though.
I keep trying to wrap it up.
I'm sorry. In regards to the school-aged children, I know that it affects mainly the Connectwood School District. Did you talk to them about whether they had the capacity for these students?
There was information that we presented earlier, that there's been a decrease in enrollment in that school district.
I understand that, but because of the decrease...
And they were also part of the study group.
I'm sorry. Because of the decrease in enrollment, the schools changed different buildings and that sort of thing.
Of course.
What happens now when there's an influx of, say, 140 students? And how much is that going to, did you talk to the school about how much that might cost them to make changes back?
We contacted them, we sent a letter. I can research if we did get a response. We don't always get a response, but we do reach out. We provided the information from our analysis so they could comment on it, and they would be part of this EIS process if they choose to comment. They were also represented in the study group that Mike discussed before. So, we're open to communication, and they have had the opportunity, and we have sent them information.
Right. I understand they're getting more money through this project. However, I just want to make sure that, how much money they have to spend to actually have the children there.
I understand. Yeah, that's completely within the district's hands.
And I would just point out on that, we received a letter today from the School Board of Connectwood, I don't know if you were copied on that or not, but opposed to the project. So, to Mr. Ruland's point, to Mr. Ruland's point, if I can ask you, do outreach to the school district as well as, yeah, I have questions about the fire department, you know, you're proposing a substation there. Have you spoken to the Board of Fire Commissioners? Have you met with them? Do they know what the proposal is? Again, you can put it in writing, it's related to the school district, doesn't have to be answered now, but those are some of the things that, when we're talking about community input and community involvement, have you sat down with the school board? Have you sat down with the superintendent? Have you sat down with the fire commissioners? If you want to answer briefly, but I want to get your presentation going, I do have public officials here who spent a lot of time this evening, and I want to speak, and I want to get them up here.
Yes, and I'll speak quickly, too. The quick answer to that is, yes, there has been outreach to the fire commissioners. We're going to put this all in a very comprehensive response to the board. We're taking notes on every question, every comment, we will continue to do so throughout the night. Our goal, obviously, is to get through this night.
Yeah.
Close it and be able to give you responses and information and feedback for anything.
And if I can also ask you at the end to project how long you think it'll take to get that, because we're going to put it, obviously, on the website so that the community can review it, and we want to leave the public comment period open so they can respond to that as well.
We can talk to that at the end.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, very good. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're going to go to the public comment section, we're going to bring up, we have three public officials here, or if you wouldn't want to come up first, Kevin will call you and we'll ask you to speak, it's normally three minutes, but if you need a little more time than that, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, Legislative Trish Bergen. And also, I'm going to be calling two at a time, and my pronunciation will be based on your handwriting, so bear with me.
And also, if I ask, I know you're going to support or not support a lot of what's being said, if we can keep the applause to minimum so we can get everybody up, we'll know by your comments where you stand. Legislative Bergen.
All right, and if everybody spoke for three minutes, we'd be here almost six hours, so don't go over three minutes, please.
I'll be very quick. Thank you very much. I just want to say, thank you for having me here today. I am Legislature Trish Bergen, I represent the 10th Legislative District. 94 West Main Street, and East Islip is my office address. I'd like to thank the chairman and the members of the planning board, as well as the members of the planning staff who have worked so diligently on all of this. Chairman, I would like to thank you specifically for asking such pointed questions that demonstrate just how knowledgeable you are about all of what we have been going through for years on this project. While this project does not fall within my legislative district, it very much impacts the people who I represent, because I represent the area that includes Connectwood School District, and I am also a proud T-bird. Thank you. I'm not sure we're allowed to use that phrase anymore these days, which is unfortunate, but let me just begin by saying that this application, when I was a town board member before I became a Suffolk County legislator, was before me, and Mr. Reckler came to my office, and he rolled out the set of plans for what he had hoped to build, 1,365 units. And I very politely rolled the document back up again, handed it to him, and said, "Mr. Reckler, there's my door." Mr. Reckler, I don't mean to make this sound personal by any means, we are all professionals here tonight, but I have to tell you that I'm very insulted that you would come to this meeting tonight and almost expect that we should feel gracious that you have now taken the plan down to 890 units. Please do not insult me, do not insult the people who I represent. My suggestion to you, sir, at that point was that it might be better suited if we had come up with a plan where nine-acre golf course could be preserved for the community and for the residents, and then perhaps develop the other nine acres, and let's strike a balance, because we understand, we understand that you purchased this property, you own this property, and you have property rights as an owner and a developer, and that's fine, we get that. But let's not be piggish about it.
I gauge you're all in support of what's being said opposed to the project, if I can ask you, just so we can move along and get all of you up to speak, because we have 100 cards here.
Please recognize, Mr. Reckler, that I don't mean to get personal, but for us, this is personal, this is our community, this is where we live, this is where we're raising our children. To impact the school district and the way, to impact the traffic in the way that you are proposing is not acceptable, and I professionally request that this board deny this application, and that you go back to the drawing board and come up with a better plan that better suits our children, our environment, our community, and our residents. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If we can go right to our next speaker.
Legislative Picarello.
Thank you. Thank you, Legislative Bergen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I want to thank my colleague, Legislative Bergen, for her remarks. Bergen, for her remarks. I didn't prepare any remarks, because I wanted to hear the presentation, then, you know, comment on some of the things that were said. First of all, using the stick routine for sewers in downtown Seville, the taxpayers of Suffolk County, time and again, especially last November, passed a clean water referendum that's going to raise $5 billion in the next 30 years. I was happy to support that referendum to make sure that our bays and waterways are clean. Adding this kind of density would be a step backwards in trying to clean up the waterways that we've worked so hard to clean up. If we can go further to the density issue, this is an over, depending on what study you look at, an 800 or 900 percent increase in density. This is a single-family suburban community. We do not want to live in an urbanized community. I hear this from residents on a daily basis, and usually you get calls in your office, people pro and, you know, people against issues. I've never gotten one phone call at my office that anyone who wanted this project, in this form or the last form. I think that says a lot for the people who live around this and live in the community of Seville and Bohemia. And I'm glad the chairman brought up the comprehensive study. That was one of the points I wanted to make tonight. This proposal didn't even recognize the comprehensive study, and actually what it said. You can mention something, but to not have a clear answer of not developing this space to the density that it's proposed to be developed should kill the application on its face. To not talk about the Oakdale merge should kill the application on its face. Time and again, the issues that most of us raise on a regular basis have seemed to have been left out of this proposal, or even the thought of how it's going to impact the people who elect me time and time again to represent them. It's been very clear, and I hope you hear the residents, and I hope you hear myself and Legislative Bergen, please deny this application. Build single-family homes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Legislature.
Bohemia Civic, Bohemia Civic President, Dawn Marie Cohn.
Whoops. Hello. My name is Dawn Marie. I am fourth-generation Bohemian, lifelong Bohemian resident. I wear many hats in my community, but today I come before you as the Bohemia Civic President. And to set the record straight, in 2017, when the first project was proposed, we were included in community conversations. But when this was proposed, we were ignored. Besides a postcard to my house, because I live in the, I guess, 1.5-mile radius, I did not receive any reach out from the Recklers or anything about this project, and I feel that very disingenuous. So, I'm going to read a letter that my board, with myself, wrote to the planning board in opposition to this project. Dear members of the Islip Town Planning Board, on behalf of the Bohemia Civic Association, I am writing to strongly oppose the proposed zoning change for the Island Hills Golf Course property, now known as South Bay Village. This plan would increase the permitted housing density from 98 single-family homes to 890 residential units, an unprecedented 808 increase. The scale of this development poises a serious consequence for our community, particularly the Connectwood Central School District, which myself, my brother, and my parents are all alumni of. Based on the accepted planning estimates, the project could result in 200 to 300 new students. The association and educated costs will significantly increase and exceed the property tax revenue generated by the developers, especially if Reckler receives tax abatements through the IDA, as they have received on other projects. This would shift the burdens onto the local taxpayers and strain an already limited school resources, including the Special Education Department, which currently supports about 20 percent of Connectwood students. Beyond the educational impacts, this project would also add over 1,500 vehicles. I don't want to hear anything about 400 vehicles. If you travel on Lakeland Avenue every day, like I do, you will see the amount of accidents that are already on that road. There's going to be a strain on the emergency services without ending funding or staff. Have you guys spoke to the Bohemia Fire Department? We have members on our board that belong to the fire department, and they are adamantly proposed against this project. Comprising groundwater recharging and threatening our environmental balance. It also challenges existing sewer and wastewater infrastructure with no clear plan to mitigate those impacts. This proposal is not smart growth. It disregards the town's existing zoning policies and long-term interests of our residents. We respectfully urge the planning board to reject this proposal for this zone change and preserve the integrity and character of our community. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. We're going to call people up in groups of two, so that the second person will be right behind them to come up and speak. Mr. Brown.
Bill Lindsey, and then Kyle Strober.
And whoever gets there first, feel free to speak first. Just say your name, and then the next one can speak.
My name is Bill Lindsey. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here at the public hearing. I just want to start by saying, I'm maybe in the minority here in the room, but I'm in favor of the project. I live less than a mile from the project for the last 25 years. I can tell you my, I'm hearing all the arguments in regards to the school district. So, in 1999, when I purchased my home less than a mile away from the project, there were 1,200 students that graduated from Connectwood High School. This year, they graduated roughly 483. That's a huge drop in attendance. That's a huge drop in the population. And part of the reason is, for the last 30 years, we've told young people, we don't want you to live here. We only build over 55 housing. That's every project that's come in place. In fact, that's the only negative I see with this project here is that it's not creating enough young professional housing and young people housing that we want these people back in the community. John Pearl Elementary School, which both of my children went through, should have been closed probably 30 years ago because enrollment has been declining since then. My son's fifth-grade class, six years ago, had 18 students in it. 18 students. That's not, when I went to school, we had 30 kids in every class. I understand times have changed. There's more special instruction and so forth, but those resources are there, and the capacity is there for the school district to absorb 173 more students. I think you could do it without hiring any more teachers. In fact, if things don't turn around, they're going to end up having to close buildings. They're going to have to start laying off teachers, and then where's the community going to be? The other issue that I see as being vital as part of this project is the connection of the sewer district to Seville's Main Street. As we see the Ronkonkoma Hub Project developing, we see all the new businesses that are going in there, the new restaurants, the new entertainment. It's going to draw more and more people away from Main Street in Seville, and in the next 20 years, Main Street in Seville is going to be a ghost town without the addition of sewers. I heard the legislator, please, I respectfully listen to everybody else that spoke. Please ask for the same respect. I heard the legislator talk about the water plan that was just, the sewage plan that was just approved in the county, and the money that that's going to generate. That's countywide. That's going to be every community in Suffolk County that is without sewers, which is the majority of the county, is going to be fighting for that same money. There'll never be enough in the next 20 years for Seville to be able to tap into that resource to fully fund a sewer project. That's reality. I'm just here with facts. I don't want to talk, I'm not here with any emotions. Like I said, I live less than a mile from the property, and I'm in favor of it. I was a member of Island Hills. I wish Island Hills was still open, but it's not. It was a beautiful golf course when I was a member. I enjoyed playing there. I wish my kids had an opportunity to play there, but they don't. That's the reality we're faced with today. As my oldest daughter graduates college, my son goes on, wants to go into the Air Force, I want him to come back and have a place to live in our community, and you need places for them to live. Right now, if you look at the inventory of housing that's out there, it's very sparse, which drives up, it's supply and demand. It drives up the cost that's associated with it. So, I respectfully ask that you approve this project, and I ask that the community continues to have input. Thank you.
Ralph, Ralph Ben... Ralph Benzekin will be on deck.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Strober. I'm the Executive Director of the Association for a Better Long Island. We represent over 80 employers here in the region and have over 100 residents within the town of Islip. First off, I want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak. Clearly, this is a very important issue that affects the community. A lot of people have a lot of different opinions, and they should all be heard. On behalf of the Association for a Better Long Island, we fully support this project. And let me tell you why. There's two reasons, and I'll give you them antedoteally. The first one is, one, when I went to school in the Midwest, I came back to Long Island, and I was looking for places that had young professional housing. There were three or four. Now, there's probably 12 or 13. And these communities, we found data that when people invest in young professional housing, the local brick-and-mortar businesses have a more likelihood to succeed. There's more attraction for employers, and the most important thing is property values in these communities go up because they're more desirable for young families. That's number one. The second story is this, and I gave it at this podium three years ago. It's the story of a 70-year-old stubborn Irish Catholic, Gertrude Lanigan, who's my mother. She lives in a colonial house, bedroom on the second floor, living space on the first floor, laundry in the basement. We thought she was crazy, all the covering costs. It's way too much space for someone to keep. We couldn't get her out. She said she's going to die in this house. Finally, after two knee surgeries, she's finally admitted. It's time to move on, and projects like this allow her to age in place. It allows her to pick up my kids from school when me and Elise, my wife, are working, and they're sick. They're allowing her to be home at bus pickup, and I don't have to worry about her dropping home in to go to her, to her place. She's in town, around the block, and can get home. And for those two reasons, I think this is vital, not just for the region, but for the town here. It's good for property values. It's good for businesses, and it's good for Long Island. Thank you very much for your time, and that's all I have to say.
Next on deck would be Rama Quinn Roddy.
Why are people like to all the houses?
Rama Quinn Roddy.
Again, if we're going to interrupt, we're going to ask you to leave, so please.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ralph Benzekin. I'm a resident of the town of Islip. I'm also the president of SIBS, which is the Commercial Industrial Broker Society of Long Island. I represent almost 400 members, and while this is not a commercial real estate project, we recognize that every project on Long Island, every project that affects people's ability to live, work, and play on Long Island affects commercial real estate. So, I'm here on their behalf. I do have a relationship with Reckler Equities. I've been on the same side, I've never been on the same side of the negotiating table as them. In fact, I've always been opposed to, not to everything they've done, but I've been on the opposing side of the negotiating table. And I can tell you that in over 20 years of working with them, we've always reached an equitable, fair, and reasonable solution where all parties were satisfied. So, that's just a matter of fact that I know that they always try and do the right thing, and I know that they're trying to do the right thing here. I'd like to quote some of the results of the REI study at Stony Brook University. REI is the Real Estate Institute at Stony Brook University. So, a study of multifamily projects on Long Island, including 14 complexes of over 200 units per complex and a total of over 4,200 units. The study showed that, on average, these units generated .09 students per unit. That's not .9 students per unit. It's .09 students per unit. In other words, nine to 10 units are contributing to the school tax without any, without using any of the school district resources. Smart development can counteract tax increases. 20 years ago, your taxes might have been $10,000. Today, your taxes might be $20,000. 10 years from now, they might be $40,000. The cost of keeping your town running will go up. The only way to offset that is smart development. I wonder if anybody here remembers the Cero Wire site on the Long Island Expressway? It's a little bit west of here. For four decades, residents opposed any development of the site. Many of the proposals were quite reasonable. Today, rather than having any of those reasonable proposals, the community is now staring at a 200,000-square-foot Amazon warehouse. The moral of this story is, when you see a good deal, take it. Thank you for your time.
Next on deck would be Ken Roth, or Ken Ruth.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. My name is Rihanna Quinn Roddy, and while I serve on a well-respected board dedicated to improving water quality on the Great South Bay and have the honor of being Commodore of a local yacht club, I'm speaking tonight solely as a resident of the town of Islip. I want to be clear that I have no business affiliation with Reckler Equity Partners or any commercial interest in this project, but I am here tonight to express my personal support for the proposed South Bay Village project, mostly from an environmental perspective. Long ago, long gone, rather, are the days when environmentalists need to view developers as adversaries or threats to our fragile ecosystem. My experience with Reckler has shown me quite the opposite. They have demonstrated a serious commitment to environmental responsibility, especially in their revised plans for the project. It should also be noted that Greg Reckler served on the board of the Nature Conservancy for many years. What stands out most with this project, to me, is their focus on improving both groundwater and surface water quality in the Seville community with a specific and much-needed goal of protecting the Great South Bay. They have proposed a water-storm drainage system designed to retain and recharge all stormwater on-site. This means significantly reducing runoff that would otherwise carry pollutants into our waterways. This is not just smart development. It's responsible development. But the most impactful element, and the one that I care mostly deeply about, is their proposal for an onsite state-of-the-art wastewater treatment facility. Even more importantly, they've offered to establish a public-private partnership with the town of Islip, making it possible for Main Street Seville businesses to gain access to sewers, something this community has waited far too long for. This initiative would drastically reduce nitrogen seeping into our water table, the number-one pollutant harming the Great South Bay. Without action like this, we may never see sewers in Seville in my lifetime. But with this project, we have a real tangible opportunity to move towards a cleaner bay. Let me be clear. Sewers for downtown Seville are a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. This is a win for the town of Islip, and more importantly, it's a win for the Great South Bay. One simply needs to look at other projects, like the Canoe Place Inn and Boathouse, excuse me, where they reduce nitrogen loading in the canal and the bay, to see that Reckler are thoughtful and respectful developers when it comes to our environment, and I sincerely hope that other developers take note of this positive, of the positive environmental aspects of this project and will follow suit. Thank you for your time, your thoughtful consideration of this project that represents real progress for our local environment and our future. Thank you.
Michael Florio. And Roy Canetti.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the planning board. My name is Mike Florio. I am the CEO of the Long Island Builders Institute, representing over 750 member companies and 114,000 employees in the homebuilding industry here on Long Island. I'm here tonight to express our strong support for the South Bay Village proposal because this project is not only necessary, it's timely, thoughtful, and transformative. Any independent observer will confirm that the core of Long Island's housing crisis is basic supply and demand. We have far more people who need homes than we have homes available. Just today, the front page of Newsday had a story that told us that both Nassau and Suffolk Counties have reached a record high for home prices, over $850,000 in Nassau County and $700,000 here in Suffolk County. It's the result of a deepening housing crisis, one that is pushing out young people, burdening families, and making it harder than ever for our seniors to stay here. It's clear. We must act now. South Bay Village directly addresses this challenge. It provides 890 new homes, carefully designed and reimagined after years of public input. The site itself, a defunct 118-acre golf course, has been transformed into a community that provides both for-sale and rental options. Over half the homes here will be age-restricted, and several are reserved specifically for autistic adults and others with special needs, making this a project grounded in inclusion and care. Let me be clear. This is not the same proposal that it was years ago. It's evolved thoughtfully and deliberatively to reflect the voice of the community. Beyond housing, this project will stimulate both local and regional economies, supporting construction jobs, suppliers, and local businesses throughout Suffolk County. Let's not let the perfect be the enemy of progress. South Bay Village is a rare example of a housing development that's responsive, inclusive, and forward-thinking. After years of debate, now is the time to move forward. I respectfully urge this planning board to approve this plan for our families, for our environment, and for the future of Long Island. Thank you.
Next, Kathy and Greg Weber. Kathy and Greg Weber, you on deck?
Good evening. Roy Canetti. I'm a 32-year Seville resident. I raised three children in Seville. I'm in full support of this project. My middle guy already moved out of state. He's down in Florida now. My daughter's struggling, trying to find an affordable place to live. We need some place for our kids to stay on this island. We need some affordable places for them. And I also think that the sewers brought down to the Main Street, I mean, I shop there. I get my hair cut there. I eat there. I know what they're going through with their septic systems. I know what it's doing to the bay. I'm a boater. I'm on the bay. I see what's going on. This is a major victory, I think, for the town of Seville and Islip, and I hope the board supports it. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kathy Weber, and I live on Bohemia Parkway in Seville, Fortway Bohemia Parkway. When my husband and I first moved out here 33 years ago, it was for the small-town feel, and this development, the size of it, just does not fit the character of the existing neighborhood. And I've seen this something, this Coalition for Long Island's Future, supporting this project and saying, you know, that let's work together to make Seville thrive. Seville already thrives. It's a beautiful, vibrant neighborhood of single-family homes, and what they want, the size of it is just, it's too big. And for you people who talk about the traffic, do you even drive around here? And how it is, I'm sorry, how it is that you haven't even taken into consideration the merge or how that would be affected by 400, I mean, I go on Bohemia Parkway towards the Sunrise Highway service road every single day. If there's a landscaping truck parked there, which very often there is, two cars can't even go by. And now you want to add 400 or some under-inflated number of cars into the neighborhood. It just doesn't fit here. And for the benefits that you speak about, this, we need, we need housing. We need smart housing. We need homes for empty nesters. We need homes for people first starting out. Rental community, at $3,000 a month rent, I don't see how anybody's going to be saving any money to buy a house, to be perfectly honest. And this, this project is a, is a, it presents general generational income stream for the developers. It doesn't help, it doesn't help enough of the young people that we need to get to stay here. So, I hope, and like I said, I live in this neighborhood, and this does not fit the character of it at all. It was zoned for single-family homes, and that's what it should be. So, thank you very much for your time.
Next on deck, Susan Mantavani. Susan Mantavani. Susan Mantavani.
That was my wife before, and I am up now. My name is Greg Weber. I'm going to destroy this, but cavit emptor, the Latin phrase for let the buyer beware. It's the buyer's responsibility to assess their purchase. They bought this knowing for it was 98 homes. Do I want another 98 homes in my neighborhood? No. But that is what it's zoned for. So if you're going to prove it, prove it for that. But like I said, let the buyer beware. I never thought that would attain to me after 33 years of buying my home. Thank you.
Next on deck, Michael Beretti.
Good evening, board members and neighbors. My name is Susan Mantavani, one of the directors of the Greater Islip Association and a proud resident of Sable for 34 years. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed zoning change for South Bay Village, formerly the Island Hills Goth Club. Our neighborhood's charm lies in its green space, mature trees, and open fairways that have served as a natural buffer from congestion. This isn't just property, it's part of the reason many of us chose to live here. Approving the zone change risks eroding the peaceful character we treasure and undermines the environmental quality we rely on. This parcel of land has always been on the radar for redevelopment, as we can see from the 2009 Sunrise Highway Corridor Report. According to their recommendations, specifically on page 77, the property should retain the AAA zoning to protect and preserve the open space. Why isn't that recommendation being respected? Our Suffolk County LD8 representative, Anthony Picarello, has previously sent a letter of intent to Reckler to try to preserve the property, which was ignored by the developer, who clearly is not interested in our community interest. Reckler touts that this new plan for 890 units is 35% less than their original plan. What they failed to mention is how their plan will still increase the density by more than 800% than the present zoning allows. Let that sink in: more than 800%. How can that not stress our infrastructures? How can that not drop our property taxes and our property values and increase our taxes? What would be in the best interest for our community is to retain the present AAA zoning and not support the over-800 density increase in that small area. Increased traffic impacts public safety, heightens pollution, and diminishes our quality of life. Our roads are already congested during rush hours and school runs. We can all look daily at the Oakdale merge, where even those issues continue to remain unresolved. We've seen cursory outreach from Reckler. Those meetings were cherry-picked. Some attendees that were invited weren't even residents of Sable or Connect Quad. People who have no idea how this will impact this community. The GIA was not invited. We reached out for the invitation. Local groups like the Sable, Oakdale, Bohemia, and Ronkonkoma Civics, along with both the Sable community, stand in opposition, I'm sorry, both with the Sable School District and Connect Quad School Districts, with our local civics, stand in opposition with us to this proposed zone change. That speaks volumes of what the residents in our community, the taxpayers, don't want. In closing, I urge the board to listen to the community residents and the civic groups and the school districts, and refuse this rezoning application, and instead retain the AAA zoning presently in place. Thank you for your time.
Next on deck is Richard Galante.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, board. My name is Michael Burnettti. I'm a businessman, have had businesses in West Hampton Beach for about 25 years, and just a beautiful little village, just like Sable's beautiful little village, and I just wanted to speak about the impact that it have had on us and the local businesses putting in a sewer district and having sewers brought into West Hampton Beach. And it has greatly impacted us in a very positive way. Myself and my own businesses, I've realized that probably three times the amount of revenue generated because of the fact that I could have outdoor seating, and also, not only that, but the ability to use proper utensils and not have to deal with plastics and also throw plastics out into the garbage. So it was really a great thing that happened to us with a downtown sewer district. And so that's why I'm here to just speak to that. And thank you so much for your time. Hope it goes well.
Rich Galante. Larry Mashitla.
Good evening, Chairman and board members. My name is Rich Galante. I'm a business owner, own a couple of businesses and commercial properties in the town of Islip in Bohemia, right down the block. Never worked with Reckler or anybody like that. I just wanted to talk to you about how I support the project being proposed at the defunct Island Hills. I think that I've reviewed both the original and the revised site plans. The current site plan does fit well within the development. I mean, you could see that it looks like the homes around it. It does have a nice feel, it's got the nice buffer around the property. It's nice to bring affordable housing, excuse me, bring affordable housing to a desirable neighborhood that people can't afford to live in, and people can't afford to buy in downtown Sable. It's nice to have something to get them into the door down to be able to afford to get into that community. It's going to increase the local shops and merchants down in Sable. You know, it's creating hundreds of jobs for construction workers, suppliers, you know, and, you know, it's going to provide millions in tax revenue. So I, I'm for this project. Like I said, I've never worked with the company before, and I do, I hope you approve the project moving forward. Thank you.
Lenny Minervin.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Larry Macheta, and while I'm not a resident of Sable, I do live in a nearby town facing many of the same challenges. As a young professional, I'm trying to build a future here on Long Island, a place I've called home for many, many, many years. But like many in my generation, I'm finding that more and more hard to, and difficulty to stay. The reality is, there just isn't enough housing for, housing options for people in my generation. Entry-level homes are nearly impossible to find. Rentals are also very scarce and difficult. And quite often, we're forced to choose between either living with family or with opportunity or just leaving the region altogether. So I'm just personally, you know, invested for my livelihood on here, Long Island, to stay and support the South Bay Village project. If done right, I think it's strongly part of the solution. I did open saying that I'm not part of the Sable community, but if the project was approved, I would strongly, strongly consider it being part of its residence. Thank you.
Teresa Ferraro.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Arthur Spina from the Regency Knowles Housing Development in Bohemia. We have 125 homes. I'm the president of our homeowners group. Right now, what we do is maintain our property that the town left us to our common areas. What I want to let you know is that I've always lived in affordable housing. What I mean by that is I worked my ass off to be able to afford every house I've ever lived in. I went, I was about to get drafted in 1966 into the Army. I fooled them because I enlisted. I became an officer, and I came out five years later. I lived in a modest apartment that I moved out to Brentwood, Long Island, in 1972. That's all I could afford. That's where I lived until I brought my house here in Bohemia almost 36 years ago. I worked three jobs most of my life, including an accountant, a fireman in New York City, and a colonel in the United States Army Reserve after my five years' active duty. Every house I lived in, I can afford. Now, the word affordable housing, the connotation to me is that some of the people cannot afford to live there and will be subsidized. Every community I've ever seen that had subsidized housing always fails. It turns into, it turns, the houses that people cannot afford to buy, they cannot afford to maintain. The houses turn into little dumps inside our communities. I'm very fortunate that our Regency, excuse me, our Regency Knowles community of 125 houses, everybody maintains their house in a professional manner, and the common areas owned by the town, we maintain at our own expense. You're welcome. We have, we pay a modest dues, and we maintain all our common town-owned properties. So if this development is going to be built, it should be scaled down to a similar thing like the Regency Knowles development off Lakeland Avenue, 125 houses or whatever could fit, single-family homes. Maintain the integrity and the stature of our community here in Sable and Bohemia. Thank you.
Bob Kempf.
Dear Chairman, members of the Islip Planning Board, my name is Lenny Minervini, and I am here representing myself, my company, and my fellow Islip coworkers. I currently work at a local business operating at Oval Drive in Bohemia, employing over 30 people. At this time, I would like to submit this letter seeking your approval for this project. It is signed by some of my fellow employees that live in the town of Islip. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our voices.
Thank you. If you give it to the officer right there, we'll make it part of the record. John Whalen.
I'm Teresa Ferraro, owner of East West Industries. We are an engineering manufacturing firm that supports military and Department of Defense programs. We're located in the town of Islip, and I am a proud member and resident of the town of Islip. I'm speaking from an employer's point of view. We have been in business for over 55 years and always been in Suffolk County, specifically Town of Islip. Our 85 employees, a majority of our staff are professionals, specifically from the engineering fields. One source to attract and recruit and retain are from universities such as MIT, UPenn, Villanova, and Northeastern, along with recruiting from other prime companies such as Sikorsky, Boeing, and Lockheed. One of the first questions potential applicants ask is, what type of housing options are by you? These individuals are looking for options that not only provide immediate but future long-term housing. Their marital status changes, their family status changes, many are looking for both rental and purchase options. Our employees are tenured 20, 30, and 40 years with East West. Unfortunately, there are fewer and fewer options available. I personally believe that this project will provide better options to meet recruitment and retention's needs, which in turn will create more jobs within the town of Islip and an overall benefit to the community. As a committed employer and resident of the town of Islip, I respectfully support this project and ask for the board's approval. Thank you.
Pamela Green.
Hi, my name is Bob Kempf. I've been a resident of Sable for my whole life. But one of the things that really kind of hit me about this entire thing was that with 900 units going up, I think it's generally about one and a half cars per unit. That's, I think, what they usually use as a norm for that. Well, just this past Friday, as I was coming down Lakeland Avenue, I got to where the light would be by Lakeland Avenue and Tariff Street, and I waited there for three exchanges for that light before I could go by where Parkville Deli is. Now, I just thought to myself, if we have 1,400 more cars on this road who have to get to Stop &amp; Shop or maybe going to go out to dinner downtown, how long am I going to have to sit at this light before I can get through to get home? So that's just one thing. Now, unlike the people who would be in this unit, I still drive. I don't know about those people. I guess 400 people out of 900 are going to make a trip out of the day. They don't live on my block because everybody on my block is going all day long, coming and going. And I think the amount of traffic is just going to be phenomenal. The one thing that I looked at also is, how is that going to affect the air quality of just sitting there with all these cars just sitting there, waiting for lights to change? Is that going to improve our quality of life? I don't think so. Then I look at, well, how kind of, what kind of stewards had they been of the land that they have? I know they decorated the nice house with a blue tarp and boarded some up, and buildings falling down, but you see, I think this is part of what they want to do. So we'll get to the point where we finally say, anything has got to be better than looking at this eyesore. But I think the town has a responsibility as well. If this was my property, I think the town would be coming and say, hey, you've got to clean this place up. It looks like a dump. This is Sable. Where are we here? And so I think there's a couple of things that really bother me, is just that if they haven't been good stewards in the time they've had it so far, what is it going to be afterwards? I have five children, I would love to see them stay here, they can't afford housing, but this is not going to do my kids any good. It's going to be way overpriced, and unfortunately, that's the way it is. And I don't think enough has been done as far as looking at all kinds of, you know, we saw people stumbling up here, they didn't even know the facts. These are things that we have to know because we live here. So I thank you for your time, and I hope you really take it.
Next on deck, Keith, please, please. Keith McNorman.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Pamela Green, I'm a resident of Bayport, and I had the honor and opportunity to serve as a town board member of this fine town for a number of years. During that time, we were represented by the icons of local planning. We had the icons of Tom Iles, Dan Galizio, Gene Murphy, I'm sure Mr. Colgan is now part of that illustrious group as well. But what we learned through the 1990s and into 2000, we were tutored as board members and told, diversify your housing stock or you will perish. Diversify your housing stock now or you will be facing dire circumstances in the years to come, and now we are there. We were told, if we do not provide diversified housing in the forms of townhouses, condominiums, units that are rental, to provide options for residents who own single-family homes who now wish to downsize, perhaps snowbird, to give up maintenance of their homes for snow care, snowblowing and lawn care, if we don't have those options for those people who wish to stay here to move into, they will not move out of their center-hole colonial single-family homes. And if you stop that cycle, you cut down the supply of housing. Diversify your housing stock. This proposal, Mr. Chairman, you asked us to please highlight the positive impacts. It provides diversified housing stock. It provides much-needed housing in the town. It provides sewers to downtown Main Street. While some may think it is thriving, there is over 100,000 square feet of vacant space. Rent sewers in the area will be thriving for local businesses to consider moving in as well as bringing much-needed patrons into the existing businesses. This is good planning, and this planning board, I know, is looking to continue the tutelage that we heard of the need to diversify housing here in the town of Islip. Thank you very much for your time.
Timothy Urata.
Good evening. I know my handwriting's bad, but it's McNamara, Keith McNamara.
We were debating that.
Yeah, no problem. Good evening, everyone. I'm actually speaking on behalf of my parents. I grew up, was class of '96 in Connect Quad, and, you know, blows my mind when I say that. It's literally 30 years ago. I'm very familiar with the area. I frequently visited the old Flatbush Pub every Friday night down on Lakeland Avenue, probably too late many of those nights back in the day. But I am in favor of this zone change, and the main reason is the for-sale home option and the neighborhood setting that Reckless have designed. My parents are aging, you know, 75, my dad's going to be 77 on the 21st of August, suffering from COPD, and frankly, they just took pride in maintaining their home and their land. However, the property has become too large and demanding for them to manage safely and effectively. The year-round physical upkeep is simply beyond their capacity. It's not about inconvenience, it's about growing health and safety concerns. My older brother and sister fear. I'm asking the town board to approve the zone change, as this project would allow them to transition into a more manageable living situation. Our family's goal is to ensure their continued well-being, keep them close to their three grown children and their seven grandchildren. I appreciate your time, and again, I support the zone change for the South Bay Village. Thank you for your time.
Terrence Duran and John Barrett. Michael Burnettti. And then David Manitovi. Montevani.
Good evening. My name is John Barrett. I've been a resident of Islip for 45 years. I know I don't look it. I have five children. I come from a family of nine. All my brothers and sisters are moved off the island because they no longer wanted their four or five-bedroom house, but didn't have an affordable option to downsize to, or otherwise known as a snowbird. My, my five kids, I only have two left on Long Island, and both are considering leaving. This is all due to the housing shortage and the availability of housing options. I believe that the proposal that's in, in front of the board shows a sensible way of offering these alternatives to a mixed group of aged community. It's not simply over 55, and it's not for somebody who's just starting out. It gives options to everyone and frees up the housing for everyone who can afford it. I'm in total favor of the proposal that's being sent, that is in front of the board. Thank you very much.
Christine Bogle and Said. I don't know.
I'm reading, hi, my name is Christina. I grew up in Bayport, and I lived in Oakdale for a while. But I'm reading this on behalf of Richard Wilk, and he couldn't make it tonight. So he says, my name is Richard Wilk, and I lived at 324 Homestead Road in Bayport for over 40 years. I love the Bayport-Saville area, but unfortunately had to part with my home and neighborhood due to divorce. I would love to move back to the, that area where I raised my kids, and I love the Great South Bay and all it brings to one's life. I currently rent an apartment in Waiting River. I feel really nervous speaking, even though it's not my words. But I would love to move back to the Bayport-Saville area in one of the cottages that would be available in the South Bay villages. Please make all efforts to make this development take place. Respectfully, Richard J. Wilk. And just, I remember sledding in that, in that, at that golf course, and I'm a public school teacher, and it's so disheartening and discouraging for young people, they can't afford houses. And it's wonderful that people who bought 30 years ago and they're able to afford that. But for many people, it's become like, it's, it's, and we've accessed 44 teachers this year due to low enrollment. So I think people should consider, maybe this isn't the project, but what are people considering for young people to be able to live here? Thank you.
Eric Snyder and Mylin Aguilar. Nicholas Perlermo.
Whoever's up, if your name is called, come on up.
Go ahead, if your name is called, come up. Anthony Confredo would be next.
My name is Mylin Ogless, and I live in the Connect Quat School District, Sayville. Tonight, I ask you to take a hard look at the very financial consequences this proposed 890-unit development, South Bay Village, also known as the Gray Barn-Saville, would have on our schools. The developers' DIS claims only 145 students would enroll from this project, but we've seen a pattern here before. In Amityville, Reckless Gray Barn projected 71 students. Actual enrollment ended up being nearly three times that. And when it was all said and done, the school district didn't experience, didn't just experience crowding, it suffered devastating financial harm. Why? Because the development received a generous IDA tax abatement. As a result, the Amityville District shorted millions in tax revenue. The consequences? Approximately 100 staff members were laid off. That includes teachers, aides, support staff. Programs were cut. Students were impacted, and the developer walked away with profit, not accountability. The Suffolk, the same story repeated elsewhere and Patrick Medford. According to the Suffolk County News, Gray Barn apparently received $4.6 million in tax breaks from the Brookhaven IDA. Despite opposition from the school district, Superintendent Donna Jones warned the tax breaks would have to cost the district millions, while adding hundreds of residents and stresses on their services. Now, bring the reality home to Connect Quat. We already face a $1.5 million reduction in foundation aid. We see more than, we have more than 5,300 students, and 20% require special education services. It costs $42,000 per year to educate one student in the district, where for a child with an IEP or related services, that number can jump anywhere from 180,000 to 120,000 per student or even more. So what hap, so what happens if this project results in 300 to 400 students and the developer secures another IDA? Those result in $10 million deficit to Connect Quat School District. If they don't get the IDA, the district will suffer about $2 million in a deficit. We get the students, but not the taxes. The district is left to fill the gap, and the burden falls on local taxpayers while our children face the direct consequences: overcrowded classrooms, fewer teachers, diminished services. This isn't just speculation, this is cause and effect. This is history repeating itself. Unless you stop it, we cannot afford another gray barn, not in Saville, not in Connect Quat, not at the expense of our schools and our children. Please vote no to the zone change. And I want to thank the couple of paid sponsors here that spoke at the mic tonight.
All right. Pat Potter.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Confredo. I live in a town of Brookhaven. Also have a company called Maggio Environmental. I represent over 175 employees. It's very imperative that this project get approved. It'll be an economic boost to the community. Excuse me?
No, no.
Construction is the infrastructure of our economy on Long Island, and people get affordable housing mixed up. Affordable housing is not Section 8. What do people do that start out as schoolteachers, public officials, public service? They're making 75, $80,000, as far as I'm concerned. I don't know. I don't think I could afford a $700,000 home making that type of money. What do kids do when they get out of college? They got a 150, $200,000 student loan? They don't have $150, $200,000 plus closing costs to put down on a house. The facts are there, $700,000 is the average median house cost in Suffolk. We need to get money flowing into the economy, not taking it away. This is not Gray Barn, this is South Bay Village. I appreciate on what they've done as far as sitting down with the community. They've invited the community in. People sat with the board, they made suggestions, they went back and changed it, they changed how it was designed, they changed on how it was set up. I mean, I spend money on property, I would like to build on it. That's how I feel. I approve this project. Thank you.
Tom White.
Good evening. My name is Pat Potter. I am a homeowner in Oakdale, and our, our home is 1.5 miles away from this proposed project. I'm also a math nerd, and I've come here with a lot of curiosity. And I want to acknowledge that I see that the Reckless Corporation has made a very significant financial investment in this project. I, also, as a math nerd, I've been paying very close attention to a lot of the numbers, and I acknowledge the report on the water and storm drainage proposal with the underground storage and the wastewater, et cetera, et cetera. But what I want to say is, that's in regards to the 890 units. The greater issue is that, right, I believe that although these plans give the appearance of addressing the environmental impact, what sorely skewed is the soil management impact. Island Hills, in its current state, and when it was a golf course, provided water absorption as a green space. Nearly 100% of the 9,583,000 square feet of that acreage was water absorption. The proposed project paves over nearly 3 million square feet of that green space. Once construction paves over that green space with housing, driveways, parking lots, maintenance facilities, et cetera, the water is no longer absorbed and becomes runoff. Basically, it can become floodwater. That water must go somewhere. That somewhere is ground floor apartments, first floor and basement of houses, waterlogged lawns, clogged drainage, not only in that development, but around that development. The proposed ponds, in their numbers, covers 199,327 square feet, and that's supposed to make up for the 9 million square feet of water absorption. Take a look at the South Shore floodwater map, it's on the Islip.gov website, especially in the areas north of Montauk Highway. Those roads and homes near green spaces are outside of the flood area. Those roads and houses within sufficient green area, oh, I'm sorry, those that are outside, excuse me, I'm nervous. The roads and homes near green spaces are outside of the flood area. Those roads and houses without sufficient green space are within the flood zones. I'll, I'll do it real quick, it's an important sentence. In addition, when the soil becomes waterlogged, it impacts the root stability of large trees. Does anyone remember during past hurricanes and rainstorm seeing trees that toppled over from the roots? This happens more so from waterlogged soil than just the wind. Thank you.
If you want, you can submit that for the record if you'd like.
I will.
Jeff Boss. And then after Jeff Boss would be John Chandler.
Good evening. This is to the Recklers, the Town Board, and the Planning Board. How many versions of the word "no" do all of you need to hear before you start to listen to us? You say, the Recklers say they want to improve our community. I would rather you just leave that decision up to us. We live there, you don't. You live in Nassau County, okay? 97% of this community loves Sayville the way it is. That's why we continue to live there. However, the last decade or so, you're making life difficult for us, especially those of us who are planning to retire here. If you force me to sell my house and uproot my life, I will deem that unforgivable. You'd be surprised, folks, what you can, what a Google search turns up. Turns out, the Recklers and all their cronies, including Amory and Jim, the whole Reckler crew, none of them live anywhere near any major development projects. Why is that, I wonder? Hmm. I'd rather not spend my retirement years fighting construction traffic, negotiating for parking spaces in my own quiet neighborhood, hearing heavy machinery beeping 24/7, and eventually smelling a sewage facility placed at the south side of the park, 1.5 blocks from my driveway. Judging, the remainder of this will just be a few bullet points. First, Railroad Avenue, it's clogged daily in both directions and not just during summer festivals. Number two, the Oakdale Merge. I can't believe the traffic study guy didn't do anything about the Oakdale Merge. Any of you folks, whether you're for this or against it, or you're on the fence, if you don't know anything about the Oakdale Merge, you've got to experience it at least just once. It's completely filled in both directions all the time, you know it. The fact that you didn't speak on it at all, it's either, it's either a lack of you caring or you just, you just don't know what you're talking about. Number three, the displaced wildlife. As a staunch environmentalist and nature lover, I find this development project unforgivable and quite offensive. Number four, our taxes are going to go up, our home values are going to go down. Number five, the first responders and the schoolteachers, the added burden that's going to be placed on them will be unsustainable. The dredging up of 100 years' worth of toxic chemicals will infect the aquifer and the Sayville watershed to the point where it'll decimate the entire seed clam and oyster industry on the South Shore. As absentee landlords from Nassau County, I would respectfully ask that you vacate this plot and let it remain what it always was meant to be since the Teddy Roosevelt administration, green space in perpetuity.
Steve, Steve Brienza. Steve Brienza.
Hello. I live right on Lakeland Avenue itself. The traffic on Lakeland Avenue, south of Sunrise, is already way over capacity. There is no doubt, if the town increases the density for this development, this monstrosity, traffic lights up and down Lakeland Avenue are coming. And for their traffic, for their traffic expert to say with a straight face that he saw no impact on traffic going south on Lakeland is like a joke and it's an insult to the board. There's a five-way intersection at Tariff Street, which is blocking traffic. There's the summertime ferry traffic, you got the Long Island Crossing gates, already make this road unbearable. This is a two-lane road that was built in the 1800s, and it's, I live right on Lakeland Avenue, it's already almost impossible for me to pull right out onto that street. So think of what's coming on that street. Everybody who's in, in favor of this development, they don't live there. Let them put a development like that in their neighborhood and see, see how it would turn out. All right. I just want to say, this one-mile stretch of road, we already have, within one mile of that complex they're proposing, we already have five multifamily complexes, five apartment buildings, already totaling 450 units of alternative housing. This is on a two-lane road that was built in the 1800s. So people who cry nimbys should just shut up, because when that Fairfield Knowles project went up about 20 years ago, no one said a peep about it. No one said a thing. So we're doing more than our fair share. We have like 450 units about within a one-mile stretch of five apartment complexes. I deeply resent people like the Recklers who wouldn't tolerate a project like this in their own neighborhood, coming down here and telling how, with a straight face, how great it's going to be for our community. All right, you know, it would be lifting, like airlifting station yards and putting it in a residential neighborhood. And these type of mega housing proposals are supposed to be transit-oriented, remember? And this is nothing like that at all. So, and one thing that hasn't been brought up either, you're talking about 1,400 cars in that development. 1,400 cars, and we, there's just no capacity on Lakeland Avenue anymore for that. And how they could come across with 900 apartment units, 1,400 cars, and say this is going to be a plus for the environment, that, that boggles the mind. And, you know, he's asking for a 900% increase of the, in veil, current allowable zoning, and saying with a straight face how reasonable he's been. I mean, that's, give me a break. I mean, he's already entitled to build 100 homes, and he's unhappy with that, that's his problem. He wants nine times what's permitted, but it's for like our benefit, and I, I just don't see, and I don't see anybody in our neighborhood who sees it that way. This would never be approved on the North Shore, and he looks at, I think looks at the South Shore, and Islip is easy pickings. So, you know, and this whole thing where it's a grassroots development, has its grassroots meetings, this is nothing but astroturf. He's coming across as its grassroots, and as you brought up, it's nothing but his hand-picked, you know, cronies, and it's nothing but an echo chamber. And I believe everybody there who attends is either on the Reckler payroll or some type of financial benefit from this, either owning a business or whatever. So I spoke to a lot of people in Sayville, and virtually nobody's in favor of this. Thank you.
Brian, Brian Timman next.
Oh, Jeff, last name is Fass, F-A-S-S. I'm number 38 on the card. Thank you.
Brian Timman is next.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Stephen Brienza. I just recently moved to Sayville, five and a half years ago. We love it here, and we moved here because of what it looks like, and we resent the idea that anything is going to be changed or modified. I would ask the board to note, and I noted sitting out there, that all the people that spoke in favor of the project were either business people, hired by Reckler, or business people concerned about their own businesses and growing their businesses and not concerned about this community. There was only one person from the community that spoke in favor of it. Everybody else that spoke in favor of it was a businessperson that had a business and was looking to figure they can increase their business by having this project. Also, a lot of tradespeople would get work from this, and they also spoke in favor of this. The other thing is, and somebody brought this up, the way they are treating the proj- The other thing is, and somebody brought this up, the way they are treating the property now is probably done on purpose. There's a couple of shacks there, and I think people are living in there because there's a mailbox and a blue tarp. And so I think by doing that, they're trying to figure that maybe people will say, well, let's get that out of there, this way we can fix up the area. The other thing is, I live right off Lakeland Avenue in an over-55 community. It is very hard to make a left turn onto Lakeland Avenue if you're heading north, okay? Also, heading south is very bad. Other people said about Railroad Avenue, and that's also tied up a lot. The other thing is, the gentleman just before me brought up, there is a lot of rental housing and a lot of senior citizen housing for sale. A lot of these Reckler units would probably go for at least $3,000 a month. So people are talking about a housing crisis, and still that is not going to be, I don't think that's going to solve it, the size of it. I suggest, or hope, that you'll keep the zoning as it is with the single-family houses. Thank you for your time.
Brian Timman. Toby Coewell is next.
Good evening, members of the Board. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Brian Timman, and I live in West Hampton Beach. And I will, I'm sure you'll be pleased to know that I'm not here to offer any opinions on this project whatsoever. I wouldn't, as not being not a member of this community. What I am interested in is what I've done for over my half of life, half of my life as a public servant, both elected and appointed on various boards. I served for the past 10 years as a village trustee for West Hampton Beach Village. And as one gentleman spoke about before, who's a colleague of mine, and I asked him to come, was to speak to the benefits of sewer-ing communities, specifically downtowns. What we did in West Hampton Beach was transformative, and it was a monumental lift, and we got it done. We did not have the help of any developers to do that. We had to find the money on our own, and that was a big challenge, and that's pretty much the biggest obstacle with any project like that. So I just wanted to speak to the benefits of sewer-ing, how it not only changes a downtown, but does change a community. I consider the downtowns of small villages and hamlets to be the heart that pumps the blood throughout the rest of the village. We accomplished something very big in West Hampton Beach, and I hope more municipalities have the opportunity to do that. And the one other thing that I'll say, again, not on the topic of opinion, but we had this development group do two projects out in our neck of the woods, Canoe Place Inn and an industrial park at Kupresky Airport. And our experience in the community with them was that what wound up getting built in both cases was vastly different than what was originally proposed. And that came from community input, modifications, and people recognizing opportunities to make the project better. So again, I'm not interjecting my opinion on this project. However, I can say factually that the two projects that they worked on in my area turned out to be phenomenal. So, that's all. Thank you.
Debra Waltoff.
Good evening, Chairman and Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Toby Conwell. I'm a resident of Islip. Been in the building material business for most of my life, since I was very young. I've worked with the Recklers for the past 10 years. I would like to, I'm in favor of this project, although I'll probably be retired before the project comes to fruition, but for reasons of the need for housing. My daughter lived in Sayville for a short period of time. She had to move out because she had a terrible cesspool problem. So, I live, I mean, I think I learned a lot being here tonight, and a lot of good information. I feel confident that the Recklers will work this property out to make it convenient for everyone. And like I said, I don't want my children, my grown children, leaving the island. I terribly miss my grandchildren. So this gives an opportunity to stay on the island and live in a beautiful community like the town of Sayville and Connect Quad. Thank you.
Matty Arshvish.
And if I can just ask everyone to hold back on the clapping, I think some people are missing their names because they can't hear it when Kevin calls it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Deborah DiWaltoff. I live in Sayville. I actually live across the street from where this project is going to be. I can't really say a lot more than some other wonderful points people made. The traffic is a crap show. Mitigation, talking about turning it into four lanes. Well, there's a lot of houses and businesses on Lakeland. Is that really going to happen? Also, I want to say, in a way, kudos to the architect. The renderings are beautiful. But the fact is, they call it South Bay Village for a reason. It's a village, folks. They want to put, basically, a community, a pretty large-scale development, right next to an already existing residential neighborhood of mostly, excuse me, out of breath here, asthma, one-story, two-story houses. Now, on the rendering, it looks beautiful, it's flat. But anybody who wants visualization, go to some of the newer projects here on Long Island, like Ronkonkoma, also up off of Floyd, William Floyd Highway. Look at three-story buildings in a residential context. See how large they are, especially in a case like this. To compare it to like a large Victorian house that's probably situated on two acres of land, that you look at multiple buildings, three, three and a half stories high, that's kind of like a sore thumb in that neighborhood. So definitely something to consider. As far as affordability, I live in a 55-and-over apartment complex. There are plenty of empty rentals there. If somebody wants to live like that, there are already lots of places to live like that on Long Island, apartments. How many young families looking to have kids really want to live in an apartment? And the truth of the matter is, most of what's going to be in that development is apartments. So it's sort of muddy water, them talking about affordable housing for young people. If the gray barn rents are any indication, I'd say young people with really, really good jobs. So I'm against this project. Thank you.
Matty Arash. And on deck, Sal Napolitano.
You actually said it right the first time. Thank you. My name is Matthew Arasich. I'm the president of the Building and Construction Trades Council for Nassau and Suffolk Counties, representing 65,000 local workers, local workers. So here it is, I'm writing to express my strong support for this reimagined South Bay Village transformative luxury housing project. This forward-thinking development represents significant and much-needed investment in our community's housing, in their infrastructure, and also their overall well-being. It's a comprehensive approach to inclusive, sustainable growth, which makes it a model for smart urban planning in the 21st century. One of the most compelling aspects of the South Bay Village proposal is its dedication to housing diversity, offering a wide range of living options, including luxury residences, affordable rental units, dedicated housing for individuals with special needs, and a 55-and-over community. The project serves a broad section of our population. This inclusiveness ensures that residents of all income levels, ages, and abilities have the place and a place in the evolving South Bay community. The integration of affordable rent options with a master-planned luxury environment demonstrates a strong commitment to equity and community balance. These, excuse me, these units will offer much-needed relief in a region where housing prices have made it increasingly difficult for working families, young professionals, and seniors to remain in the area. And particularly, it's a progressive move. South Bay Village will feature its own onsite wastewater treatment plant, and the system will not only support the new development's sustainability goals, but also provide expanded capacity for downtown Main Street businesses. It also promotes growth and revitalization of a commercial core. The infrastructure improvement exemplifies how thoughtful development can benefit the broader community. The South Bay Village project is poised to create new jobs, stimulate local businesses, and enhance community services. In addition to that, various housing types mean more residents will be able to work, live, play, and stay on Long Island. And actually, at that point, they'll thrive, supporting a walkable, vibrant, and interconnected downtown. I stand here as a recipient of, lucky to have three generations of building in Long Island, building with our hands, not developers. I'm a tradesman. Don't let the suit fool you. My grandfather actually built Pilgrim State, actually went there on horse and wagon. I grew up in Bayshore. I know what it's like to be the middle-class income. And if you want to talk about things which make economic impact, I could talk about this. When we have our pre-apprentice programs and apprentice readiness programs, this is what happens. 19 kids can come into our group, and if they go ahead and make the lowest amount of any rage rate in any of the trades, that's $75 an hour. Going to do some quick math in 12 seconds. You've got 19 times 75 times 40 hours a week times 48 weeks a year is $2.7 million. If they never got another raise in 30 years, those 19 people will generate $82 million in economic benefit. I said I represent 65,000 members. There's some numbers.
Steve Brienza and Glenn Rube.
Hi, I'm Sal Napolitano. I come from the Ronkonkoma area of Islip. I'm the president of the Greater Ronkonkoma Civic. We have 1,400 members who are against this piece of development. We see our own development on the Brookhaven side, Station Yards. They're putting up 1,500 apartments, four-story buildings. Yeah, they look nice, but I actually had a friend whose daughter and boyfriend moved in, and it was $3,200 for one bedroom. They spent the year, and they got out of there because there was no way for them to save any money for a new home. I have three pages I was going to talk about, but really, what I've heard tonight, that it's even worse. I have bigger problems. The traffic on Lakeland Avenue, I know all about it. You take 400 cars at 20 feet each, 8,000 feet, that's a mile and a half of cars. You take 1,900 parking spaces, that's an awful lot of cars coming in and out. You take buses trying to get out of that unit, that area, through the Bohemia Parkway, trying to get on the South Service Road and make the left turn to go the other way to go to OBMS and to Connect Quad High School. You're talking about going over four lanes of traffic, a bus. That's, all four lanes will be covered by that bus as he's trying to get over. Try and get out of Sunrise Highway and make the right onto Lakeland Avenue. You better have turbo and everything else in order to get over. It's not an easy place to maneuver. And these problems are real for the people who live here and the people who spend the time here. I have been very involved with the Connect Quad School District. My daughter was on the Board, so I attended a lot of meetings. And I can't remember Rector ever being there to tell us. And it's really been the last few months that I've been telling them, they better put a letter together to talk about how bad this project's going to be for Connect Quad Schools. And they just did it about two weeks ago. So it's going to be a problem for taxpayers, because no matter what happens, we're going to get stuck with the bill. I hope you guys don't approve anything that has a tax break. I hope you don't approve any kind of pilot. And I think it's important that the taxpayers who live here, their concerns are important to you as much as economic development. Thank you.
And Chad Lerner would be after him.
Good evening. I'm not much of a speaker, but my wife told me to come here, and I better talk to you. She just recently passed, and she wanted me to, you know, talk to you guys about this. 43-year resident. I live on Hitting Street on the corner of Railroad. I can't even make a right turn anymore onto Lakeland Avenue. It takes me five or 10 minutes to get out of my driveway. Go to Depot Road, try to make a left onto Lakeland over the Railroad. There's been a few accidents there in the last month or so. You can wait 15, 20 minutes, and that's no lie. Go there and see it. You're going to put another 500 to 1,000 cars on Lakeland. I don't know what's, people are cutting down my block. You know why? They don't want to go to Main Street and wait through three, four, five lights to try to make the turn. They cut down Hitting Street, which goes right to the railroad trestle on Main Street, and they bypass the town. So all this talk about all this going to the town to spend more money, that's not happening. They're bypassing the town, because nobody wants to deal with this traffic. That's the number-one issue here, is traffic. I mean, like I said, I'm 43 years here, and I bought on that block, you can count maybe 10 cars a day. I play a little game now with my grandson, he's five years old. We sit on my front porch, we pick a color car, let's see who gets the most cars in 15 minutes. He usually wins. I used to let him bypass a few, but you're talking between 75 and 100 cars in 15 minutes coming down my block. That's unheard of. I can't get out of my driveway. I mean, you just can't, you just can't put this, this whole project. And for all the people that came here, the tradespeople, you know, you want to support this, well, support building 89 houses. That was, it was there for. You'll have jobs, you'll have everything. 89 houses, not 1,000 or whatever you're talking about. It's just, it doesn't make sense. You bought something knowing there was only 89 houses. I wouldn't buy a car that I couldn't afford or whatever. You bought this property for 89 houses, thinking what? That you could throw money at the Board and say, oh, we're going to get this passed? No, that's not how it works. This is what you bought, use it for what you bought it for. Don't try to make changes to everything. I just don't understand this. Anybody think about some of the infrastructure? Talk to the community ambulance. I used them 22 times in the last six months. They're overwhelmed. I used South Shore University Hospital 22 times. No, I'm sorry, 12 times, because they couldn't handle it anymore. I had to drive to Huntington Hospital with my wife in the van, because South Shore had a three-day wait in the emergency room. Hit another 1,000 people, most of them over 55. Aren't they going to use the hospitals? So, I mean, just look at all the stuff. Put it all together. I mean, you can just see, this is a nightmare project, and please, vote no. And my opinion, I was very upset with you guys before I started this. After hearing all your opinions, thank you for, you know, changing some of the things that you said, and you would have answered some of my questions. Thank you.
Billy Hart. EJ McBride would be next.
Good evening, Chairman Friedland, and members of the Islip Town Board. My name is David Bloom. I'm a lifetime Islip resident. I live on the Great South Bay. I am extremely concerned about the Great South Bay and the downtown communities. And before I say what I've actually written, after all the comments I've heard tonight, the Recklers are going to make sure that they improve that downtown problem that we're having, and that means a lot to me with the Bay. I want to express my support for the South Bay Village project after attending several recent meetings and reviewing the revised plans. I believe this development will be a welcome addition to our community and set a positive precedent for future use. When considering any development, I put myself in the shoes of those living nearby. The original proposal for four-story apartments raised concerns for me, but the current plans reflect significant improvements. When I saw the original plans of Gray Barn, honestly, there was no way that I would want something like this in my community. If I were a resident of Bohemia Parkway, I would have been apprehensive about any development on the old course. However, the new proposal for thoughtfully-designed, single-family homes, complemented by a generous 250-foot buffer, is something I would welcome. I believe this design will enhance the area's aesthetic appeal. I also attended a presentation at the True North Church regarding the revised plan. One key takeaway from that meeting was the emphasis on communication between the developer and the community. I believe that there are going to be adjustments made to this project, and I believe that they are listening to the community. It was encouraging to see the developer actively seek feedback and make adjustments to create a project that truly does benefit our community. Sayville is a special place, and I feel the redesign aligns well with our community's aesthetic, environmental, and financial needs. There is significant demand for this type of housing in Islip. My two daughters, who do live in the area, are already considering moving to South Bay Village. I am totally in favor of this project, look forward to its successful completion, and the community working together with the Recklers to get this done. Thank you.
I have Billy Hart, EJ McBride, and then Donna Brown. I have Billy Hart, E.J. McBride, and then Donna Brown. And then Kathy Cutrone.
My name is Constance Fury. I've lived in Seville for the past forty-three years. No, pardon, fifty-three years. I have never been disappointed in the way the Town Board has acted. I'm hoping you don't disappoint me now. Please vote this down, for a number of reasons. I was at a meeting once when they brought up the problem of traffic and how the new development would affect it. And someone from the Reckler circus actually had the nerve to suggest that they changed the start time at Bostie School. That's the kind of consideration they have for us. There is no consideration for what the traffic would be. I've been on Lakeland Avenue when an ambulance hasn't been able to get through. It's a problem that's not going to get solved overnight. If those houses were built tomorrow, do you think the state would widen Lakeland Avenue the next day? I used to tell my kids that no is a complete sentence. No is a complete sentence. We don't need the zone change. Islip is fine the way it is. There's plenty of housing, there's plenty of apartments. And how is anybody going to afford a house if the rent to start is over $3,000 a month? That's insane. To tell me that they're only going to add four hundred cars at a time? There's no way. Somebody, please, drive down Bohemia Parkway and tell me how in any way that's considered anything more than a narrow country street. If the garbage man is on that route, you're not going to get through for a while, guys. Please, drive through the area. If you think that this is reasonable, drive through the area. Think of what it's going to be like when the soccer field is going out. It is not meant that areas got too many narrow streets. Lakeland Avenue, at best, is three lanes when it comes to Sunrise Highway. And as somebody who used to have to go through it twice a day, no, it is not meant for this kind of development. And there's just no way that traffic is going to be absorbed on Sunrise Highway safely. I think if somebody was a betting man, they would start a pool as to how many accidents there are going to be, because that's just not meant for that kind of traffic. So, thank you very much.
Brian Kell, Kevin Shapiro, and then Frances O'Brien.
Good evening. My name's Donna Brown. Due to the time, I'm going to edit what I was originally going to say. Listen, I get why builders are all in favor of this. Builders got to build. Developers got to develop. But, you know what? I'll be honest with you, not my problem. There's been no mention of the years of disruption this construction is going to cause this community. I have a neighbor doing a big addition to his house all summer long. I love them, I'm like, do what you got to do, we'll take care of the lawn after. But years of this? Not fair. And then, what's the benefit to this community? I understand about the sewers. I get it. But I don't think Island Hills, the community, is going to get sewers. Are we getting, are we getting sewers? Our neighborhood? No. No, 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 no. So, the answer is no. We're not getting sewers. We get the sewer treatment plant. Really? How is this fair? Okay. I do not trust one number presented, not the taxes, not the traffic, not the building size. Once PDD is given, it's basically a blank check. Note, people who live in apartments have children. I've got kids who live in apartments. I've got granddaughters. Also, let's see, Seville, oh, by the way, people over fifty-five drive. We all drive. We each have our own car, and we drive a lot. Okay, nobody walks in Island Hills. I think I'm the only one who's ever walked to the train station. I take an Uber now. Hundred-year storms are occurring every year. We hear it, we see it. Hundred-year storms are not hundred-year storms. And please remember what's been said before, beating a dead horse. AAA zoning, they bought it, they own it, they can build on it. We've done nothing wrong. We're taxpayers, we're citizens. You're our board, please help us. Thank you very much.
Frances O'Brien.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Cutrone. I'm the president of the Greater Seville Civic, and a couple of points I'd like to make. First of all, we realize now, we have to get here early and sign up to speak before we protest. Therefore, you will have heard our voices a lot sooner than you're hearing them now. As far as the age-restricted housing, fifty-five and over, that leaves no availability for our children to remain within the community. And at the cost of the housing and the apartments, the apartments are about $300 to $3,500. There's no way anybody's going to be able to save for a house in the coming future. The American dream is not apartments. It's a house, white picket fence, the whole nine yards. So, I also wanted to point out that to be accredited by the Better Business Bureau, you need to build trust, advertise honesty, tell the truth, be transparent, honor promises, be responsive, safeguard privacy, and embody integrity. Well, the postcard that went out shows single-family homes and no apartments seen anywhere. And on top of that, the Better Business Bureau, again, you have to be accredited by the Better Business Bureau, not one Reckler firm is accredited with the BBB. So, that being said, this is, I'll end this quite quickly. Oh, I do have a question on the disability homes. That's something I don't think I've ever heard before, so I'd like a little more information regarding that. And also, if you're going to use the term manor houses in some circles these days, it's considered a racist term, so you might want to rethink that. And if it gets to the point that Reckler decides to sue the town, my tax money, take it and fight this to the bitter end. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brian Kell, and I live in Seville, very close to the Island Hills Golf Course. For me, the fact that the developers' first request to change the zoning about eight years ago tells almost the entire story of this project. The developers have stubbornly refused to listen to the community's concerns, that the project is too big. And there's a good reason why the property is zoned for either recreation or homes on a single acre. Opponents of the project have been equally stubborn. Why should we trade our precious open space for traffic jams and diminished quality of life? In between those two forces is Seville itself. Residents and visitors prize the small-town feel, and I think the developers do too, but they believe they can monetize its character without destroying it. I think with a project density about nine times what could be built as of right, that seems like wishful thinking. Tonight, you can drive down Lakeland Avenue, and even as hot as it is, see people sitting on their front porch. With an additional fifteen hundred cars up at the end of Lakeland Avenue by Sunrise Highway, I don't think people will be sitting on their porches anymore. And what I really fear is that they won't even want to live on Lakeland Avenue. And Lakeland Avenue will take on the depressed appearance that characterizes a lot of residential roads that have high traffic. I understand the need for more housing, but I don't think it's necessary to cram a massive development into our hamlet when smaller, more sustainable developments in Seville and in surrounding communities can provide the housing we need, and it will create jobs, it'll bolster our local economy, and perhaps, most important of all, we'll remain proud of where we live. Thank you.
Next on deck would be Michael Hoken.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Kevin Shapiro, 851 Smithtown Avenue in Bohemia. I live about a mile from this project, and I'm here on behalf of my wife, my four kids, and the general community here. Putting aside the obvious negative issues surrounding this project, which we've discussed for years now ad nauseam, I'd like to consider the integrity of the Reckler organization in this project. I am not a sensitive guy, but I must admit that I'm personally offended by the Recklers' tactics, similar to legislator Bergen, and here's why. Reckler's first paid professional speaker stated this project was designed to, quote, "to be more of a fit into the existing community," which is a clear acknowledgement and indication that the project does not fit. What does more mean? That means it doesn't fit. Let's be clear, our community has never advocated for less density. Our community has been steadfast in advocating what the rules and the law allow, AAA zoning, single-family on one house per acre. That is what we've advocated for, not a diminishment from 1365 to 890. Let's be clear, as mentioned earlier, new sewers are not contingent upon this project. So, to suggest that they are is a falsehood, flat-out. And there is no guarantee that these projects will bring sewers at all. Let's be clear, the environment cannot and will not be helped by adding 3,000 new residents in an exorbitantly-priced, mostly rental complex. Let's be honest, this charade of public input is a flat-out lie, as are the paid ads running 24/7 on social media that I follow, from paid advocates who don't live here and have no other skin in the game. Let's be transparent, Reckler's well-compensated lawyer stated that invites to community sessions, he said earlier, went to, quote, "chief opponents." Listen, I asked in writing to be there three times, I was not invited, and I am a chief Mr. Baker, another highly-paid Reckler employee, stated that the Sunrise Corridor study was factored in, along with the traffic study engineer, who then stammered through a disingenuous response, the summary of the study said in no uncertain terms that high-density developments, PDD's such as this one, should be avoided at all cost. Let's be straight up, the traffic engineer stated that roadway improvements, I'll be done in just one second, will diminish traffic on Lakeland Avenue. Does this sound truthful? What nerve, in addition to the fact that none of the approvals had been granted anyway? I would just like to say, to consider the integrity of the people behind this project. To me, that's very important, and I think it's clear. Thank you.
Frances Cahill will be next on deck. Frances Cahill.
Good evening. Frances O'Brien, 684 Bohemia Parkway. Thank you for the opportunity to speak about this project. Now, the registered letter I received was the only correspondence I've received about this project with Reckler Equity, even though I live within 200 feet of this property, which was shown several times on the presentation, Bohemia Parkway, you can see the street I live on for the past, since 1997. So, let's be clear, when this project first came as the Gray Barn project, the board reviewed it and turned it down. Hence, Reckler is not really interested in building relationships, because I recall that meeting, I actually introduced myself to Reckler, saying, let's sit down and discuss the project. Seek first to understand, then be understood. They didn't respond. So, let's debunk the propaganda put out by the Facebook group and so on, and the consultants about community input. I live right across the street. I have never spoken to anybody about this project, inquiring about it, I've gotten no response. They are not interested in benefiting the community, they're only interested in benefiting their bottom line. Now, while this is now called the South Bay Village, I've seen their work before in the project they did in Ammerville, the Gray Barn project. In that case, they didn't buy an abandoned golf course, they bought a trailer park and tore it down to build four-story apartment buildings, with rent so high that 99.9% of the trailer park residents could not afford the rent and had to move. I know this for a fact, I included several of my students. I teach in the Ammerville School District, I've done so for the last 21 years. I know one of my students particularly, I won't mention her last name, Amanda, I told her for 157 days that she had to move because they could not afford to stay where they were. Amanda was part of that community. Her parents were part of the Ammerville community. Reckler Equity is not part of the Ammerville community. Now, this project does not benefit the community at all. A sewage treatment plant on the property does not benefit the community. Tearing up the trees and soil does not benefit the community. Displacing the wildlife does not benefit the community. Flooding the streets with hundreds of more vehicles doesn't benefit the community. Adding hundreds of housing units would place a strain on fire and emergency service, this doesn't benefit the community. As for being part of the community, Reckler doesn't want to contribute to the community. This project like the Gray Barn in Ammerville will not pay property taxes. These rental properties do not. They pay a pilot fee determined by the Industrial Development Agency, a non-elected entity. And as often is the case, those pilot fees are deferred for several years before being collected. I wish I could defer my property taxes like that. And the traffic studies evidence show that the infrastructure simply cannot handle the influx of vehicles proposed by this project. My street, Bohemia Parkway, is six feet narrower than the surrounding streets. You speak to the traffic flow, there will be no flow. It'll be gridlocked for residents. If Reckler and anyone who supports this project wishes to live on a street with a failing rating for traffic and view a three-to-three-and-a-half-story apartment building from their front porch, then build it in your backyard, not ours. Thank you.
Drew Baldwin would be next.
Michael Hooker, Seville, 40 years. I came here with a game plan, but first I got to address the nonsense I've heard here. The first thing is, the kindest thing I can say about this, they're very disingenuous. They said they had the committee, community outreach, they had two or three meetings that hardly anybody knew about, that they held at 10 o'clock in the morning during the week. Who can go to that? Nobody. Then they said, it's not going to impact the schools, the schools are going to be happy, they're going to get more money. The guy fails to mention, the school's against it. Then you ask about the traffic, and you ask about the merge, and the guy's like, what the merge? What's the merge? Of course, they didn't study the merge. It's like, yeah, send a cigarette company, if they studied cancer, it's not going to work out. Then, you ask the architect, how tall are these buildings going to be in feet? I heard, "Hamida, Hamida, Hamida." He didn't even come up with a number. There's no, it's just, it's all smoke and mirrors. Now, let's get to the nitty-gritty. Home builders buy residential property, commercial builders buy commercial property. These guys are commercial builders who bought residential property. With a stroke of the town's pen, they want to turn that straw into gold. Whatever they paid for, I think it was like $15 million or something, if they change the zoning, it's worth $30 to $40 million, just like that. Where does that wealth come from? It's going to come from each and every homeowner in that community, monetarily and in quality of life. And that's just wrong. It's a forced transfer of wealth from an entire community to a couple brothers who live on two-acre zoning in Nassau County. It should not be allowed. As far as I'm concerned, they might as well go around with a gun and stick people up once a year. And if the town owes for it, as far as I'm concerned, they're driving a getaway car. You got to vote this down. This is just bogus. Oh, a PS, the guy says, oh, they go walk to Seville Plaza. That's a suicide mission, nobody's going to do that. And if you really want to laugh, read the environmental impact statement, because I did. There's a paragraph in there that says it's going to benefit the community, because there'll be less squirrels peeing on the ground. It says that. I mean, where did they come up with this? This is complete nonsense, and it should not be allowed. Boom. Thank you.
Leanne Redzinski.
Two things if I can ask you once again with the clapping, so he calls names, I think people are missing their name being called. Also, I know people are leaving. If you can't speak, whether you're for it or against it, please email your comments to us, we will consider everything that we receive. Go ahead.
All right, Leanne Redzinski.
My name is Frances Cahill. My wife and I bought our house in 2020. We looked at over 35.
over 35 plus houses on Long Island during our search and fell in love with the Sable community. We found a house on the 11th Street near the proposed Fulton Ave entrance. Living across from an urbanized city was never part of our American dream as we worked our butts off towards homeownership. Living across the street from a sewage treatment plant and through years of construction was never part of our vision for our growing family. Earlier, we heard that part of reducing traffic flow was moving Main Entrance from Lakeland to the corner of 11th and Bohemia. I literally wrote down, "Thanks for that?" question mark as I was listening. Moving an entrance from one area to another does not eliminate the problem. Lakeland Ave is already a huge problem, as we've heard multiple times tonight. The corner of 11th and Bohemia is already extremely dangerous, with people making right turns off Sunrise and people entering Sunrise off Bohemia. I am already training my two-year-old son when we go on walks to stop and count to five and look all three ways. My biggest concern of this plan are my two sons' safety. Accidents happen. Lives get lost. I never thought I would have this tattoo on my leg. My best friend Matt was hit by a car by a distracted driver in a small-town community similar to Sable. I got this tattoo to honor him so his kids could still see it and tell the story. We're talking about traffic increase, accidents happen, lives are lost. This will bring more fatal lives to our community, accidents to our community. This decision should stay with the residents of Sable. I respect Reckler Equity's rights to pursue their business visions, but it cannot be at the expense of my family and my community. They should build on what they bought, not petition our town to change. They also shouldn't insult us by spitting out facts from a report that was built on feedback that you needed an invite to attend to. I'm a member of the millennial generation. Most of my friends are millennials. Reckler claims that millennials want more apartments, more rental options in Sable. We've already heard today that they are already accessible. All of my friends and acquaintances' goal is to buy a single-family house. Last but not least, I think they should build more single-family homes within the current zoning guidelines that they bought the property on. Thank you.
Richard San Giorgi. Cheryl Lee Malinowski.
Hi, my name is Drew Baldwin, and personally, I believe that from an environmental standpoint, this project benefits Sable and the greater community. The need for a sewer system in Sable is paramount, not just from a business perspective, and it's building a vibrant downtown and maintaining a vibrant downtown, but we also have the simple fact that nitrogen in the system, specifically through the fact that Suffolk County has more cesspools than the rest of the country does combined. So, building single-family homes does not solve this problem. This bleaching is the sole reason why the Great South Bay is being damaged. By building a sewer plant and also using a groundwater discharge system, not only are we maintaining the aqua fall, but we are also reducing the amount of effluent flow that goes through the ground into the bay. I've been spending years doing environmental projects in the bay to try cleaning it, and the first thing we need to understand is, whatever you do in the water doesn't matter if you're not willing to do something on land. The use of this project, looking at it in the landscaping, utilizing rain gardens to collect the runoff and store it locally so it has time to absorb into the local groundwater before running into streams, is in, to an extent, that is not yet done in development today. It is done on small scales. It's not, this project was planned on a large scale to contain its own runoff and reuse it as a groundwater replenishment system. This is something that we need to understand, is a strong benefit not just to Sable, but also to prove to everyone else that this will work for them. On traffic, something I'm surprised that is cited being in their report they didn't bring up today was the emphasis of utilizing a shuttle service to be able to go through downtown, thus reducing the necessary need for some of the traffic on Lakeland. Is it a perfect solution? No. Do we know that a lot of people will not use it? That's a fact of life. But at the end of the day, they are trying to find a solution to the problem, and that's what we need to do. As someone who has a brand-new dardle and is in the process of trying to move, I know how hard it is to find housing that is affordable on this island. I am a beneficiary of having a family that is strongly supportive as I'm moving from the Connect Court School District into the Sable community. But at the end of the day, I understand that we need to provide people with housing options, but more importantly, we need to provide people with a smart solution of variety. Thank you.
Next on deck is Guy Galante. Cheryl Lee.
Good evening. We bought our home on Sterling Place, Sable, in 1994. We are at the southern tip of Island Hills. We chose this house, this town, because there was a golf course in my front yard. I look out my front door, I look out the bay window, and I was looking at a golf course. My backyard was woods, as my backyard neighbor allowed his backyard to fill in. Islip has now become overrun with 7-Elevens, gas stations, storage businesses, and traffic. Overwhelming traffic. I can't get out of my neighborhood. You can't get onto Lakeland Avenue because of the heavy traffic. I am forced to take Terry Road to Sunrise, as there is a traffic light there, to make a right. And now you want to put 576 rentals, 314 for-sale units, each of which will have two vehicles, not one, not one and a half. There will not be enough parking. Therefore, these people will park on my street and walk into your open gates that you've mentioned. I have three houses on my street. That's it. I did not buy my house to live in a New York City suburb. Our streets can't handle the additional cars. Our town services cannot handle this influx, and this isn't even affordable housing. My son cannot afford a $3,000-plus apartment. Save our lifestyle, our choice to live in Sable. Otherwise, we will be forced to move out, along with my many neighbors who have already left. I live on a cross street of Terry Road. I now only know three people left. Everybody else has already moved on. And this only started when Reckler started presenting us with their proposals. We will have to move just to get away from this monstrosity. It's time to add beautiful, open space, or even a nature park with walking trails. Enough. Islip Town. Thank you.
Mary Novotny.
Hi, my name is Bea Corbin. I live in Sable. I found Sable because I was looking for a place to live. I've been on Long Island my whole life. We found it because it's charming, and you know what? We want it to stay that way. We have a very supportive community, and we lost very few businesses during COVID because our community is so supportive. I'm really kind of tired of coming to these meetings over and over again while Reckler completely changes things, but they pay no attention to the fact that they bought it when the zoning was what it was. And they keep trying to change the zoning and paying no attention to what the community wants. I think that's such a slap in the face, and it's just a statement of greed. There is no benefit. If there was a benefit, I would be so happy to welcome them, but there is no benefit to these high-rise apartments and queens. Just can't go there. And people were talking about, "Well, maybe we can widen Lakeland, because it takes me a half hour just to get out of town sometimes now." If we widen it, just think of all those people who live in those beautiful homes who have such small front yards. They won't have a front yard. That's not a good idea either. Anyway, that's about it. That's what I have to say about that, but thank you. And I really am trusting you'll speak up for us. Thank you.
Mark Malinowski and Buddy Cohen.
Good evening. My name is Guy Galante. Live on 18 Sterling Place, extreme south end of the golf course. Only three houses. Probably have maybe 100 to 200 cars a day go past my house. It's only one block long, and we don't even have Island Hills anymore. I worked hard all my life to have this house. I love Sable. I brought up my children in the area. My dad was a coal miner from West Virginia and Pennsylvania. He worked hard. He worked in a factory then in the Bronx with a light bulb hanging off a wire, running a machine. I was an over-the-road truck driver. I drove 38 states. I slept in my truck so I could have my house in Sable, but I couldn't wait to get home after five or six days sometimes just to be at my house, and I cut my own lawn, take care of my house. I'm 84 years old. Five years ago, I gave up my Class A CDL license, and the DV MD Motor Vehicle Office says, "You sure you want to do this?" I said, "I don't even want to drive my car anymore." I returned to my CDL for a regular passenger car license. It's ridiculous, okay? Forget that, buddy. You go on Sunrise Highway. My wife was in a nursing home out in Bellhaven. They'd be doing 85 and 90 miles an hour on Sunrise. There's no respect for anybody. And you talk about Lakeland Avenue, "Oh, we're widening it." It's only two lanes. What are you, take some of the cemetery plots from St. Lawrence Cemetery? Or are you going to knock down the ambulance company building or the VFW that I belong to? You're not going to make four lanes out of that road. It's ridiculous. The same with Bohemia Parkway. And what are you going to do with Sterling Place, my little three-house block? It ain't going to change. It is absolutely ludicrous, ridiculous. I worked my whole life to live there, and I'm not moving. I'm staying there. This is my town, my hometown. Now, I sit in my garage, and I wave to the people who come by. "Hey, how you doing?" You know, I live here. You're not going to force me out. And I ask this board, "Please give it some strong, strong consideration for all of us hard-working people that live here. Sable, our hometown." Thank you.
Alexa Elowitz. Eugene Nelson. Wayne Kahler.
My name is Mark Malinowski. Guy's my neighbor. Great guy. I bought my home in Sable, across from the golf course, as my wife said. So, a lot of stuff, you've heard it all. I heard one thing come out of good from the South Bay project. Yeah, we might get sewers in downtown. But you've got to understand, there's problems with the sewer systems too. You're taking water out, you're discharging it somewhere else. If you go through with this project, the scope is so big, it's still big, no matter how they cut it. It's still a big project. It's going to create a lot more problems than I think they even realize. I think if you go through with this project, you can do away with Greens Creek. I think that's going to dry up. I've seen it over the years. I'm a lifelong resident. I grew up in Bohemia. I live in Sable, so I know what's going on here. Groundwater is getting scarcer and scarcer. We're pumping more water out than going back in. All the springs and the creeks are drying up. The creeks are getting too warm to support the life that it used to. I mean, all right, it's only one creek. Well, we've lost a lot of creeks over the years. I don't want to move. I don't want to move. I enjoy the neighborhood. Sable's a great community. This is not the project that's going to help Sable. If anything, I'd like to see this land preserved. We do not have big parcels of land left in Sable. And I think between the town, the county, and the state, with the funds that have been collected over the years, that we should buy this property and make it a nature preserve or a park for the people. I hope that the board does not approve this, does not change the zone. Thank you.
Patty McLarry. Robert Lico. And Stephen Sisti.
All right, how you guys doing? Eugene Nelson, 76 Mobile Street in Sable, New York. I'm about three blocks from the proposed site. Did a quick zoo Google check, and the town of Sable has got 15,000 people in it. You want to put in an apartment complex of 900 units, we're going to say, you know, average American home, 2.3 people, that's 2,000 people. That's 1/7th population. That's not joining, all right? That's taking over. I'm a little surprised that this would even be considered at this, I would say, level of construction. And then I sat here for a while for a very extensive presentation. Some of it very good, some of it a little questionable. When the first one was proposed in 2014, my wife's father is somewhat of a bigwig with the MTA, and I brought up the thing about Lakeland Avenue being extended and being widened, and he looked at me and goes, "That's never going to happen." I said, "Why? There's a room for it." He goes, "Yeah, because in the wintertime, we get the stuff that falls from the sky. It's called snow, and we need places to put it when we clean it. There will not be enough apple roots to make that long, red road wise enough." So, that's a pipe dream. That's not going to happen. The traffic on the place is going to be untenable. You have community ambulance just spent millions of dollars to update their facilities to move themselves closer to Suffolk Rise, to Suffolk, sorry, Sunrise Highway. And the whole point was to reduce response times. I don't see how adding another, what, 2,000 people between them and the response time is going to help that. I really hope that you guys are listening to what the people who live here are saying, all right? We don't want this. It doesn't fit the neighborhood. Thank you for your time. Hope you do the right thing.
The name is Robert Lico. Sable resident, 52 years, combat veteran captain, and I own the Phoenix Associate Engineering. At first, I would come up here and discuss the sewage, but I have to put something before that. The misconception of the sewers in Sable. Let's be perfectly clear. We have a sewer map already. Down Lakeland Avenue, Main Street, ridiculous down Gillette, across Edwards and up Candy. Past the parks. That's going to do a lot of good. Will pick up two toilets. Let's keep in mind that Main Street is 27 feet, 8 inches to the water level. If you were going to put in a sewer, it would have to be south of Elm, where it would do the most good. Now, let's talk about nitrogen. Back in the, I live on the bay. My feet have been in the water for 52 years, and I'm a captain on the bay now. So, let's be perfectly clear. The bay is the cleanest it's ever been, and it's got nothing to do with us. We're being swept from the sandy breakthrough eastern Maritza's. That's what cleaned the bay out. Beautiful. It's the best it's ever been. Last five years, no green algae, no black algae, and no brown algae. It's been great. The nitrogen that does go into the bay is very simple. If you live on Candy Avenue, you could look right there, you'll see a drain. The drain goes right to the bay. So, you put down your food, your grass food with nitrogen right into the bay. The cesspools on Main Street, zero. Mrs. McGillicuddy with two employees with a flower shop is not ruining the Great South Bay. But the underlying message here that must be made clear by Islip Town Board, the big benefit here is Suffolk County Department of Health. If you have no water and you have no sewage, it's five acres. Like out east, those brave people turned down Suffolk County water not to change their zoning. The next step is Suffolk County water and sewers. If you have Suffolk County water and sewers, as in Main Street, we could put the World Trade Center in the middle. Trade Center in the middle of Sable, like we're doing in Patchogue. You lost all, there's no zoning. Once you have sewers and water, you can build anything you want. And Islip Town's got nothing to do with it. It's Suffolk County Department of Health. Providing they, according to the zoning, which they can do anything. Four-story can build slums all down Sable. The only one who benefits is the business owners of Sable and the store owners of Sable. So let's get that clear. When people say sewers in Sable, they're talking about Main Street and a little side action on Gillette and Candy. They don't mean sewers for the whole town. We have found out in the past that Great River had it right set before them. Now, Great River only has to jump over to East Islip.
I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
And they turned it down because it's $17,000 per house to hook up the sewer because you got to pump uphill. Just keep that in mind. I wish I had another three. I can explain.
Breed the Chance?
Sewer treatment plant that's coming to Sable.
Breed the Chance? And Charles Smith.
Good evening, and thank you for doing this. My name is Patty McLary. I live on Bohemia Parkway, right across from where they're going to put their sewage recycling thing. I don't know how many people have walked past one of those and have smelled them. When the wind blows up north from the bay, I can't imagine what our neighborhood is going to be smelling like if that is to go through. Something nobody else has really mentioned is that our community is a very summer community in the sense that a lot of people ride their bikes around the streets. There are people walking their dogs, people jogging. When you increase all this traffic, it's going to be, make it much more difficult for us to be able to live the way we like to live in our community. We don't really want to live in Queens. That's why we're in Sable. And my son, who's 30, a professional person, does not want to live in an apartment, even if it's a cheap apartment. He wants his own little piece of ground with his fire pit where his friends can come over, they can hang out, do whatever they want, decorate how they want. They don't want to hear people next door to them doing whatever they're doing and being told what they can and can't do. And that's what I think our millennial people want. They don't want to live in apartments. And if you're paying $3,000 or more a month, you might as well be paying a mortgage. So please, keep the zoning the same, no zone change. Thank you so much for listening.
Linda Tyra. Linda Tyra.
My name is Steve Sisti. I live on Oak Avenue, across the street from Bostia Elementary School, about three blocks from the golf course. Last week, I went out every night. I printed out 30 handouts, and I knocked on doors. I started at Locust Avenue, and I worked my way all the way down to Terry Road. I worked every night and finished up on Saturday. There wasn't one resident. I spoke to approximately 160 people face-to-face. There wasn't one person I spoke to in my neighborhood with the people that have the most skin in the game that supported this complex going up in any shape or form. And I have to ask, you guys are here as a zoning board to watch out for me, right? I'm the little guy. I'm not the guy from West Hampton. I'm not the guy from the trade unions. I'm not anybody. I'm the little guy. I'm expecting you guys. I have skin in the game, 43 years in the neighborhood, and it's going to be ruined. The negatives far outweigh, I'm not going to go into all these details, but the negatives far outweigh any good that could come from this complex. The last thing that infuriates me is hearing that, oh, Reckla is just going to take us to court. But you know something? I'd rather lose to an impartial judge than to have the people that represent me, looking out for me, sell me out to this guy.
Greta Bartrand. And Rosemary Ortlie.
Good evening. My name is Charles Smith. I live in Bohemia for the last 25 years. And first, just let me say, I'm very surprised to hear that the addition of 3,000 people, 1,400 cars, 200,000 gallons of sewage waste, and it's going to be good for the environment. There are so many aspects of this huge development, I suppose, I could talk for hours. The primary question is, why do we set up zoning regulations in the town to begin with? The answer is to organize the land use and improve the overall quality of life and character of the community. Also, to protect land values and provide certainty for landowners. Reckla Equity bought Island Hills Golf Course, knowing the property was zoned for 98 single-family homes, and did so, and so did the homeowners surrounding it. Reckla now proposes shoehorning 890 units into this property and wants the town of Islip to approve this tremendous change in zoning. This would be a dramatic change in what's currently allowed, and would drastically degrade the quality of life and character of the surrounding community. This development would be the largest development of its kind in all of Suffolk County. I went on the Suffolk County website and see that. No resident of this community in their right mind would want this huge development in the neighborhood. The homepage on the town of Islip's website states, "Welcome to Islip, the third largest town of New York, in New York State, but with an endearing small-town feel. Well, we all enjoy living in a community with a small-town feel. In my 25 years' residence in the town of Islip, I've seen this small-town feel steadily disappearing due to overdevelopment. Allowing this South Bay development would be devastating blow to the small-town feel of Sable and the surrounding communities. Please do not approve the zoning change that would allow this huge development to go forward." Thank you.
Hi, Linda Tyra. Lived in Sable all my life. I'm third generation. My parents live on St. John Street, which is right across the street from the Reckla proposed building where they want to put their entrance, which between, nobody has talked about yet. There is already two stop signs that are very, very close together from that street. I want to understand how they're going to put their entrance right there, across the street from my parents' house. My parents are both seniors. They've lived there all their lives. Again, third generation. I have my own house on Green Avenue, which is in town. Don't want to leave Sable, love Sable. My parents are seniors. They're in their late 70s. They don't want to leave their home. They love their home. They're very active. My father's still working because he loves to work, not because he needs to work. And when he goes to work at 4 o'clock in the morning, I can't see how there's going to be 800 more people with cars on that road and him trying to make a left to go up to Sunrise Highway to go to the school district. He works for Connectwood School District. He's worked there for 52 years, same, almost the same age as I am. I don't see how our seniors, even in that development, are going to be able to drive around this area with all these cars at this time, at rush hour, at regular hour. I've lived here all my life. The traffic has gotten terrible. I can't even get from Green Avenue to my parents' house, which used to take me two minutes. I can't get there in 15 minutes. I am so close, not even a mile away from them. And I'm there every other day. So I don't understand how adding more cars is going to increase, you know, the benefit of our town when our seniors can't even drive around this town without being afraid for their lives because there's an accident on Lakeland Avenue and Sunrise Highway almost every week. How the merge? While I'm growing up, it was never going both ways. It's been going both ways the last 10 to 15 years now. Where are all these cars going? And the cars that they're saying there's going to be one or two per unit, what about their visitors? What about people coming over to visit them? There's more cars all around the surrounding area. They have never said one thing about extra cars that are going to be in their development. Please, don't let this go through. We don't want to leave. I'm not leaving. I love my town. I've been here forever. And I don't want to see this go through for me, my parents, and the rest of my family. Thank you.
Jose Fermina.
Good evening. My name is Greta Wharton, and I'm the Executive Director of the Long Island Coalition for the Homeless. I'm also the Chair of the Long Island Continuum of Care Regional Planning Committee's Governance Board and a resident of the town of Islip. I've been a resident of the town of Islip for the last 25 years. I know a lot of people have concerns about this project, but one of the things that most people agree on in New York, Long Island, across the country, is the need for more housing. This plan includes the creation of 890 units of housing on which, which used to be a golf course. It includes both rental and ownership units, all designed to a specific aesthetic and blends into the Sable community. I thought that it was important, especially since a lot of folks talked about whether or not there was support and community input, I thought that it was important to look at the town's consolidated plan as it serves as a blueprint for the town's housing goals over the next five years. I'd like to share some of that plan with you. The town of Islip's draft consolidated plan for 2025 to '29 indicates that 41% of the town residents earn below 80% of the area median income. It is estimated that 71% of those households have a housing burden of greater than 30% of their income, and 32% have housing cost burden over 50%. The record also, the report also indicates that housing costs are a significant housing problem for the town for almost all income levels. The report indicates that approximately 100,000 households living in Islip, of them, 46,000 are small families, two to four people, and almost 31,000 are single individuals. Only 15,000 households are larger than four people. Furthermore, almost 39,000 include adults aged 62 or older. The population trend is increasingly small families, with adults remaining single longer and then waiting to have children and typically having smaller families. Despite this, 75% of Islip Town's housing stock is made up of owned detached, single-family homes with three or more bedrooms, even though the growing need is for smaller units, including rentals. Islip Town's own consolidated plan states that the availability of housing does not meet the need, especially affordable housing. Respondents to the survey stated, quote, "Stated a need for more new rental and homeownership housing with a slight preference for rental housing." The commissioners of the town noted the need for more accessory dwelling units, multifamily housing, and a wider variety of housing types and prices, including for senior adults. Just one last thing. This project includes housing for, includes affordable housing for households at 80% of AMI, including a small number for people with disabilities. That is included in the town's own, in the town's own draft for the consolidated plan of what is most needed for the town of Islip. Thank you.
All right. Christine Roland and Carol Celeste.
And we'll make the rest of that part of the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Ortlie, and I work at the Long Island Coalition for the Homeless. But tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of my daughter, who is autistic and who would like to live independently in the not-too-distant future. I am also speaking as a lifelong Long Island resident who is worried about the future of our island. As a parent, I want my children to be able to make Long Island their home, the way my family has for half a century. A lack of housing pushes all of us down the housing ladder. I am a homeowner only because I was able to purchase a home in 2020. As a single mother with a child with disabilities, I am fortunate that I am housed, but I will not live forever. What will happen to my daughter when I'm no longer here? Statistically, she is at much higher risk of becoming homeless because of her disability, along with other groups like aging adults. My daughter, Katie, is the smartest, kindest, and most talented person I know. When she was starting kindergarten at our local public school system, she was placed in a blended academic environment. Half of the students had disabilities, and half were considered typically developing. The purpose of this academic environment is to provide children with disabilities a classroom that fosters their learning while accepting their learning differences. But it also offered enormous benefits for children on the typical side because they received extra resources. There were two teachers in each classroom, along with aides and specialists. All the children in these blended classrooms thrived due to the mutual benefits they received. Each year, many parents fought to keep their children out of the blended classroom my daughter was in. They didn't want their own children around kids like my daughter. To this day, I think about how much we all benefit when we give others a chance to thrive. We all win. My hope is that my daughter will have the opportunity to live in thoughtful housing in a community that thrives in part because she has a place to call home. I hope this community considers the enormous benefits of this housing development. Thank you.
Anthony Navatney and Richard Casa Bianca.
And if anybody else would like to speak, we'll continue to call names as we're waiting for people to come up. Please come up. You can come up now, just state your name for the record. We'll continue to call names in the interim.
And this has no first name. It's Deschance.
Good evening. My name is Adrian Hines. I am a lifelong resident of Sable. I am concerned about this whole situation. Three minutes is far too little time to list all the reasons that I believe that this is not a good idea. The only people I believe that will benefit from this project will be the Reckla group and people who are in their pockets. There have been hundreds, no, I'm sorry, thousands of homeowners and obviously taxpayers, not renters, who oppose this. The back and forth reminds me of a school board budget vote. When the budget is voted down, the school board elects to change a little bit, and they hold the budget again until finally it's passed. This is wrong. This is, basically, this is wrong. They vote. It's no. It should be no. I would like to state just a few of the ways that this build, in its current form, will negatively impact the residents in the area, all of which have been stated already. But I wrote this, so I'm going to read it. Emergency services will have to contend with attempting to assist with ambulances, police response, and fire emergencies, not to mention traffic on Lakeland Avenue. The Oakdale merge is already a disaster with the additional traffic that is, that this build will cause people will have to leave for work much earlier, in addition to the many accidents that it will cause. I believe the traffic on Lakeland Avenue north of Sunrise Highway will drastically increase as people will be forced to travel to the LIE, which will drown up traffic there. If anything should be built, it should only be single-family homes, not rental properties or condos. This new proposal will only help the Reckla group as they will make more money. Numbers have been put out for the residents to review. These numbers are a lie, and the Reckla group know it. There will be negative impact, there will be a negative impact on groundwater contamination due to loss of trees, sewage, and fertilizers, in addition to many other things. 55% of this proposed plan is designated as age-restricted. We need young families to be able to buy. We don't need more senior housing or any more rentals. The traffic congestion on Main Street is already a nightmare, especially on weekends. Trying to navigate through town is horrific. This has been ongoing for years. When the Reckla group get the message that this plan is, when will the Reckla group get this, that this is not acceptable? It is my hope that this meeting will finally put an end to this absurdity. Thank you for your time.
Members of the board, good evening, and members to everyone in the room. My name's Casa Bianca. For the speaker record, first name Richard. I live in Hampton Bays. And because I live in Hampton Bays, I'm not going to speak in any way, shape, or form to the particulars of this project, not my neighborhood, not my business. Okay? Just let me be very, very clear about that. However, what I would like to speak to is something that I think I'm going to call like a sense of something in the room. There's something that I'm picking up in the room. And we had our own PDD, and I've had my own experience with Mitchell and Greg. And let me tell you how it went, all right? Come with me back, I don't know, some years ago, sit with me on my porch, you know, coffee cigarette over here, books, papers over here. I'm chairman of our Citizens Advisory Committee. I like to think I'm up to speed on things. So I take the local newspaper and I So I take the local newspaper and I see a photograph. It's these guys with our town supervisor, our then-town supervisor, smiling. And they're standing in front of the Canoe Place Inn, you know, a place that was very, very important to us. And there's some, there's some, so the article says that they have some grand new idea, and they want to tear it down. And the supervisor says that we need to get over our nostalgia for the place because surely we'll come to see the wonder and wisdom of this new idea, right? So anyway, I read that, go from about zero to sixty in five Sicilian seconds, right? And go to a, go to a hearing like this one, stand at a podium like this, say what I say to the town board. They squirm in their seats as well they should. And these two are looking, you know, like deer in the headlights, like what the hell? We thought we were doing a good thing, you know? So it goes like that for a while. And then we get a new supervisor who informs us that she's tired of our crap and that it's time to sit still and sit down and have a conversation, right? Nothing happens without a conversation. What do you want for dinner is a conversation. Will you marry me is a conversation. Do you want a hundred units or two hundred units is a conversation, right? So I get a phone call from Mr. Morgo. He knows who I am by then. I know who he is by then. And we go to the diner, and we have a conversation. And that conversation was not actually so much about the inn, but rather about all kinds of other things. And it expanded and expanded and expanded, and so much got done. And their product was wonderful at the end. And that's what I wanted to say. Stay in conversation, keep it constructive, keep it civil, and, and consider all possibilities, address every consideration and concern, and see what kind of a product you have at the end. Okay? Carry on. Good night.
My name's Tim Dolan. I am a lifelong Seville resident and a former member of the Island Tills Advisory Committee. I live about two miles, as the crow flies, to Island Tills. I grew up there. I played on the golf course. Like many people, initially I was opposed to the Island Tills project. And I just want to say for the record, too, that I am not being paid in any way. I am here under my own will because I support the program. So I was opposed, like many other people said. Why? Because I thought it was too big, it was too high, it just didn't fit into the community. I was asked to be on the Island Tills Advisory Committee, and I jumped at that opportunity as a way to, to give a say what was going to be built in my community because I care deeply about my community. When, throughout this process, we heard time and time again that there were, people wanted individual homes. They were worried about traffic. So the Reichlers listened. They updated the plans. It created over a hundred and thirty individual homes. So every home, whether you're on Babylon Turnpike, Chester, or any one of those surrounding houses, they're going to look across the street and they're going to see a regular single-family home. That was important to us, and, and some of them will even have a nice greenway, a big setback, where they're going to park land across where they can walk their dog or do whatever they want to do. The updated plan also took, in response to the traffic, it did mitigate the traffic. We've heard a lot about Lakeland Avenue, but there are a variety of other entrances and exits to help mitigate traffic throughout the community. They also moved up, put one stop sign, and ceded some of the property to line up Chester and Gibbons, which was a direct result of a comment of somebody who lived on Chester. So there were representatives from members of the community with, that were invited to participate. Thousands of invitations went out to the community, and yes, it was by invitation only, but there was some dialogue because we wanted to encourage that dialogue and safe dialogue. Needless to say, the Reichlers, developers, they listened to the plan, they listened to the advice, the recommendations that the board came up with. The plan fits in with the surrounding communities, as the architect was showing you, that, that the, the homes reflected some of the things that were found, and it was a variety of different homes. It wasn't just cookie-cutter homes that, that are going to look totally separate from the community. One participant at the meeting called every single chamber of commerce where the Reichlers had, had a development, and every chamber of commerce said that, they're good neighbors. And, and that's what I think, that the, the Reichlers will be good neighbors to us in Seville. The community, I could tell you what the community doesn't need. After living here my whole life, the community doesn't need nearly a hundred homes on one-acre properties that are going to go for over a million dollars. I don't think that that's what our community needs. We need affordable housing for people like my mother-in-law and my mother, who are looking to downsize at this point in their life, for younger people who are looking to buy homes, and we need fresh, clean water for our bays. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Hunter Gross. I'm with the Long Island Housing Coalition. Not paid to be here, I support this project. Born and raised in Suffolk County, and I'm here to speak in support of this proposal. Let's be honest, what's at stake? Long Island is in the middle of a housing crisis. Younger people like myself are finding it harder to afford to stay on Long Island, and it's sad because I'm really not that young anymore. I'm thirty years old in November. I work three jobs, and I have to say, the connotation that if you can't afford to buy a house with the current interest rates and have to rent, that it's going to turn into a dump, is very offensive. Middle-class families like my parents are getting priced out to Florida. Seniors like my grandparents are forced to leave the towns that they helped build. And this isn't something that's just in the Islip bulletin or in any newspaper. It's happening to people we know regardless of their background. This development is a real opportunity to meet this moment. It brings thoughtfully-designed housing, walkable streets, preserved green space, and new life to a site that's been dormant for years. It offers a path forward if we choose to take it. Now, I truly understand that people have concerns about traffic, about change, and what that, that might mean for the rhythm of the neighborhood. And I don't want to dismiss that. Those are real feelings and true concerns. But the truth is, every single generation before us has made room for the next one. They dealt with growth, they dealt with change, they dealt with new neighbors, and that's what built the towns on Long Island that we all love today. The idea that we can freeze time now and pull the ladder up behind us truly is not fair. I want to ask everyone on the board directly, where are your kids going to live? Where are your grandkids going to live here? Where are your parents going to live here? Because for more and more families on Long Island, the answer is somewhere else. Not because they want to leave, but because we've made it impossible to stay, and that's truly a policy choice. We say we care about our community, but a community that doesn't make space for its own future isn't a community, it's a gated community. And doing nothing is not neutral. It's a choice. A choice to keep things unaffordable, a choice to protect the past at the expense of the future. The uncomfortable truth is that many people here who are opposing this project in this room couldn't afford the homes today if they were purchasing them today. The real traffic crisis is, isn't just on the roads, it's the steady stream of young people like my peers and classmates who grew up here on Long Island, essential workers and seniors leaving Long Island because there's nowhere left to go. People say this project will ruin the character of the community, but if the character of the community means excluding the very people who grew up here and work here, maybe we do need to change the character of that community. It makes room for teachers, first responders, young families, and seniors looking to downsize. I urge you to support this project.
My name is Emily Geiger. I'm an actual resident of Seville. I would like to present some data that I'm sure this zoning board is aware of, but I would like it in the public record. The following properties are currently already established within the Seville and West Seville zip codes. Fairfield Waterside on Candy Avenue, rentals. Seville Garden Apartments on Lincoln Avenue and Hidden St., Hidden Street, rentals. Fairfield Plaza South on Lincoln Avenue, rentals. Fairfield Plaza East on Lakeland and Johnson Avenues, rentals. Fairfield Plaza Seville on Lakeland Avenue, rentals. Fairfield North of Seville on Lakeland Avenue, rentals. Fairfield at Woodview at Cherry Avenue and Easy Street, rentals. Brookwood of Seville, Easy Street and Greeley Avenue, rentals. Fairfield at Garfield Estates on Garfield Avenue, rentals. Fairfield North West Seville on Rollstone Avenue, rentals. Greenview West Seville on Main Street and Rollstone Avenue, rentals. Fairfield Plaza West on Rollstone Avenue, rentals. Not to mention the dozens of apartments above the retail stores and commercial properties on Lakeland Avenue and Main Street. But that's not all. Lakeland Estate co-ops on Lakeland Avenue. Sunset Bay co-ops on Browns River. Coral Lane Pine Wood Gardens off of Lakeland, fifty-five and older condos. Sunset Village on Lincoln Avenue, a fifty-five-plus community of homes. And that's not all. Seville is also home to Good Samaritan Nursing Home on Elm Street, Seville Luxor Nursing Home on Broadway Avenue, Bright View Independent and Assisted Living on Broadway and Sunrise Highway, and most recently with Bright View is the Bristol Independent and Assisted Living Facility on Lakeland Avenue. Today I Googled rentals available in Seville. According to Apartments.com, just in Seville, there were a hundred and ninety-six rental units available. If you expanded that search, one point five miles, it jumped to six hundred and ninety-six rental units available. That did not include the Greenview expansion on Sunrise Highway, the four-story apartment complex, and it did not include Patchogue. I think that Seville has its fair share of rentals and community properties for people of fifty-five and older or who have health needs. What we don't have anymore are preserved green spaces and private, single-family homes. When I Googled homes for sale just in Seville, Zillow, one of the most popular websites, showed eleven, six of which were pending. On Realtor.com, it said sixty-six. I almost had a heart attack. When you dig deeper, give me ten seconds, nine of them were from Fire Island. Most of them were pending. Seven were still actually for sale. I'm asking the board to continue to keep the zoning for single-family homes because that is the need of our community. Thank you.
I did put a card up. I guess it didn't, I don't know, whatever. So I'm going to touch on a couple of things that were brought up early regarding education since I do appreciate a lot of...
Can you just state your name? We're here for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Jenny Ketti, and I am from Oakdale. So I appreciated all of the information that was provided, although much of it was lacking data. The other thing I'd like to point out is that it doesn't really seem that an educational consultant of any type was included in this. Now, we discussed like the population and the ability for the school district to take on the, the extra load of even a hundred and forty students. So an interesting thing is that someone already came up and discussed all of the financials of the district, and they're correct, right? We have an immense amount. So the, a couple of things they didn't mention was that while, while some of their employees and colleagues and coworkers back there were saying, "The school district has the room," no, actually they don't. Because if you understand anything about special education and support services and the way that classrooms need to be structured, a classroom, a school may have a certain amount of students, but you still need to provide a particular environment for those students. So to be honest with you, the schools that even some other gentleman mentioned, that he grew up and went to a very small school, that school is also maxed out as far as space. So you cannot just make space where there isn't, and that goes for much of the district. Now, they discussed that they were not going to pursue IDA and all that nonsense. I get it. That's great. Do you understand the price of support services? So, and we have to provide that as we should. I one-hundred percent agree, we should. And I'm speaking from an educational standpoint. The other thing that they haven't brought up was that we have ELL students, and for those who don't know, it's their English language learners. Currently, our district is at about five percent. As that number rises, we still have to provide particular services for students who are English language learners. When you get to a certain point, you now have to have classrooms that are dual-language completely to assist them in learning. We should be doing that. They also mentioned that in their, so these are all issues. Oh, and the population is declining because kids are leaving because they can't afford it here. If you actually looked at the U.S. Census, in general, the population is just declining. It has nothing to do with them leaving because there aren't apartments here. And to be honest with you, as a mother of five, I could assure you that none of my children want to pay three thousand dollars to live in a studio apartment, and especially as a younger person, there's nothing to do there. You can't get anywhere. You still have to buy a car. So if you made seventy-five thousand dollars, like one of the gentlemen said, your take home's about fifty-five thousand, your monthly rent for the year is about thirty-six thousand. So that leaves you with just enough to pay your car insurance, your cable bill, your electric. You might be able to buy food for about fifty dollars a week when you are done. So that's not even realistic. And quite honestly, when they're saying that there's no housing for their employees, maybe the problem is they're not paying their employees enough. So we want to complain that they're, and this isn't affordable. Oh, and the supportive, the housing for disabled students, I support that, but that's very open-ended. All they're saying is that we're going to provide a space. It's not, it's not supportive living, it's, they're not providing any other service. A child who, or an adult, rather, who needs that is going to need a little bit more than that. So that's very open-ended and misleading.
My name is Susan Rona. I live in Oakdale. And just a thought with her, you keep saying there's room for more students. I, I don't have kids in the school district, but I know young couples who have kids, and the pre-K, it's limited of how many spaces for the kids. All the kids who need pre-K, pay pre-K, can't get it. So if there's space, why can't they have more pre-K? That was not in my speech. Anyway, I attended the True North meeting a few months back where Greg, Greg Reichler presented his view of this development from its early days. They were prepared to build a gray barn on the site, end quote, unquote, because it did so well for them, which I take to mean they made a ton of money on it. Seville and Amityville are two distinctly different communities. His thinking that a gray barn was appropriate in Seville indicated to me that the Reichlers did not do their homework about what the Seville community and surrounding area was about. They just saw a big piece of property, and they saw a whole lot of dollar signs that they could make more than they made in Amityville. They were completely unfamiliar with the area. Thankfully, the initial proposal was voted down. So they went back to the drawing board. Now they have South Bay Village, which they say incorporates the community's input. At this meeting I went to was very poorly attended because it's in the morning on a weekday, and not that many people can go. So Greg said that they incorporated the community's input and which, quote, unquote, "they came up with this new plan which they believe is reasonable." Nothing could be further from the truth. Reasonable is a very subjective word. I believe their definition means that they could still make a ton of money from it immediately and forever. Reasonable to the community, however, means building according to code. While they did scale back the project, it is still over eight-hundred percent, the current zoning. Why should the whims of two greedy men outrank the desires of the populations of thousands of people who live in the area? Two men will be taking the wealth out of the area because the rental income will be going out of the Seville community, it will be going in their pocket. If it stayed in the community, people could build their own equity and enrich themselves, not two greedy developers. There should be single-family homes there. That's what is needed on the island, and not just for seniors. Also, before the True North meeting started, I had the opportunity to speak with John Lorenzo about it. And this is what I came away with, this is my feelings. He believed, what I got from him is he believes the community should cave to the Reichlers. He told me that something is going to be on that property. Yeah, I agree, something's going to be built on that property. But he also stated that if this case goes to the courts, the community will lose. I am so disheartened to think we're lost. What are we going through this process for if they're going to win in the courts? It's a waste. And I had a lot more, but...
You can submit anything in writing you'd like for the record. We'll make it part of the record. And I can ask everyone, just please state your name and where you're from when you come up so we can pull your card out so that we know you spoke. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Donna Briganti. I live at one-twenty-eight Terry Road in Seville, one of the streets that are going to be deeply impacted by the heavy traffic on it. I am totally opposed to this development. The, I, well, it's a triple-A zoning. I think it should stay a triple-A zoning. I can't get out of my driveway now. There are accidents all over Lakeland Avenue. People cannot get down Lakeland, so they cut through my neighborhood, so much so that I can't get out of my driveway. And they're going to be putting an entrance at the corner of St. John and Terry or Oakdale Bohemia Road, Tariff, Tomato, Tomato. It's the same. I won't be able to get out of my home. That's basically it. I am totally opposed to this. It is not going to enrich our community. The development is not, it's not going to fit into our way of life. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the planning board. My name is Patrick Fife. I am a fifteen-year resident and current resident of Bohemia. I'm the former president of the Bohemia Civic Association. I was president when this project was first proposed. I make these comments in my personal capacity. I hope to, hope, give you a voice of, of reason. I don't think we should be against development, change... Changes to zoning can be beneficial and are needed under appropriate circumstances. I'm not in favor of NIMBYism that tries to stop reasonable development of affordable housing. However, to build a smart and sustainable town, zoning changes need to be smart. They need to be sensible. They need to have balance and take the balance of the needs of the existing community. I think South Bay Village fails in this regard. The changes are not reasonable. There is a reasonable way to develop and diversify the housing on this property that includes a mix of housing for seniors, for the disabled, for low-income families, without having 900 units on the property. That is the problem. Some simple statistics illustrate the absurdity of this proposal. Compared to existing zoning, it would be an 800% increase in the number of households currently allowed on the property. It would increase the projected number of residents allowed on the property by 356%. The project would be 253% more densely populated than Seville currently is. It would increase the number of households in Seville by almost 15%. Imagine you approve that, and that then happened in other hamlets across the town, and the population explosion we would have, and it's one that we just simply can't sustain. It would increase Seville's total population by almost 12%. I can't think of another application on Long Island that approaches these numbers. It defies the towns and counties' goals of preserving open space. The chairman had asked, it's page S14 of the DEIS, they admit that it is contrary to the recommendations of the Town Seville Hamlet Study and the County Sunrise Highway Corridor Study. The notion that community input was obtained through the Independent Advisory Committee, I think it's a somewhat irrelevant distortion of reality. The summary of the meetings, it's hearsay. It's not legally admissible, first. But second, that committee never provided those there an actual number, what the project was, what the proposed number of units was. Mr. Morgo emailed me after and confirmed that what the committee presented, quote, "was not a plan, but was a sketch." It was not a fair representation. I don't think that this board has the ability to consider it. You should consider what everyone here has to say based on the DEIS, and there are options available for the applicant. They can seek, as the chairman said, B zoning, double-A zoning. There are opportunities for a more compatible use that gives the community what it needs, more housing, a varied stock, but without stressing the community beyond what it can sustain. Thank you.
Eileen Tisner, 43 months in lane, West Davil, New York. I'm a longtime resident, as well as president emeritus of the Greater Seville Chamber, as well as administrator. First, I want to set the record clear to what Mr. Dolan stated, that the chamber said the Recklers are nice guys. I can assure you, not one person uttered that from our chamber. So I want to get that clear and out of the way, first and foremost. Secondly, I find it very funny that we have a lot of people here with personal interests speaking on behalf of our downtown village. First and foremost, I will state this very, very clearly. I have yet to see a landlord from downtown Seville come here because they are the ones with the vested interest for the sewers that are being dangled like carrots over our residents. Okay? I have yet to see a landlord. I will tell you, my business owners that are on my Main Street, not in West Hampton's Main Street, not in Bayport Blue Point, because I'm finding a lot of people from Bayport speaking about this development, don't pay the exorbitant amount of rents that they pay there. So dangling the carrot of sewers when other municipalities, or like in West Hampton, the money can be raised for those sewers without compromising the safety and the well-being of my nostalgic, beautiful town, is unbeknownst to me how that's even being dangled. So we'll get the sewers out of the way. Next, I am going to read the name of just four people that were struck and killed on Lakeland Avenue up by that development. So I am going to speak about no sidewalks, no lighting. Okay, so we have a 63-year-old man who was struck and killed. Somebody crossed over the double yellow trying to get around somebody else and killed him. We have a mom who safely crossed her two children over, and then she was struck and killed in front of her children. We have a bicyclist. He was riding his bike, this 14-year-old young man, and was just hit. No apparent reason, just hit on Lakeland Avenue in that vicinity. I implore this board to look at the safety in that area that they want to put, all this density and all this traffic. That, to me, is not, we do not have the infrastructure, nor do we have the time to waste for them to develop that and fight that out. The other thing that I do want to speak about is we keep talking about our downtown village, our downtown village. Our downtown village has various business owners that don't live in the vicinity. I've spoke with them. Nobody has come out with any statement from our chamber that states that they're for this project. They hand and cherry-picked people for their meetings, me being one of them, but I fought my way through there. And from the beginning of the project, I was really open-minded, but I will tell you, the people in our community, they were not asked in an open forum what their thoughts were. I implore you to please oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Valerie Mazurowski, and I have lived in Seville since 2016. I moved here because I fell in love with this town's quaintness, its quiet charm, its strong sense of community, and the feeling of safety that's become harder and harder to find these days. Seville isn't just a place to live, it's a place to belong. That's why I'm speaking today in strong opposition to propose the zoning change in this new development. The impact that it would have on this town is not just minor, it's major, and it's lasting. I heard someone compare this to Patchogue. But with all due respect, Patchogue is a model that we don't want. That town has transformed into a party scene, and as a woman, I would never walk those streets after dark. That is not what Seville is. That is not what we want Seville to become. This development may look good on paper to some, but what it threatens is the very character of our town and the reason why a lot of us have moved here in the first place. Bringing this development risks unwanted traffic, unwanted noise, and yes, unwanted trouble. I urge you, not just as a resident, but as someone who genuinely loves this town, to protect what Seville is so special. Because once that Seville is gone, it's not coming back. Thank you for your time.
My name is Ellen Perz, and I live at 952 Chester Road in Seville. So I am very much affected by the development. My backyard abuts the golf course, Island Hills, and I will be severely impacted. I know one of your concerns is the traffic, and you may not, unless you live in the area, you don't know that Chester Road is Lakeland Avenue Junior. Many people, to avoid the traffic on Lakeland Avenue, will cut through and use Chester Road. I wish I were exaggerating, but I sat on my stoop one day just to count how many cars passed in front of my house in a one-minute period of time. 31 cars passed by. And this wasn't during, you know, rush hour. This was just in a regular, ordinary day. There are no sidewalks on Chester Road, as many streets in Suffolk County. And children walk those streets to get to the bus stops, and it's unsafe. I can't even walk my dog on that street without having to stop several times because there are cars going in both directions. I know that Chester Road was mentioned as having access to the development that's being proposed. So there's been a lot of talk about the traffic on Lakeland Avenue, yet nobody has talked about the traffic on Chester Road and other side streets. With the opening to the development on Chester Road, that's one reason there will be more traffic on my street, plus the fact that there's going to be more traffic, no matter what they say about openings onto the other blocks, there's going to be more traffic on Lakeland Avenue, which means that there will be more traffic on Chester Road, which is a town street, and I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, as it stands, it's just, there are just way too many cars, and the safety of the children on that street, I worry about them. And as far as people are talking about having the seniors, those homes are going to be sold. I was at the meeting with the business people. Those homes are going to be sold for over $700, for about $700,000. I'm a senior citizen. If I'm going to be downsizing, I'm not going to be buying a house for $700,000. Why would I be taking a mortgage? You know? So I think that some of what's being said is disingenuous. And with that, I have 12 seconds. Good night.
I didn't come prepared to speak. My name is Thiel Rizzo. I'm a resident of West Seville, and I've been before the Town Variance Board, zoning boards, and all sorts for years. And you have always allowed us minor changes on residential and commercial properties. This is drastic, and I can't think of another word, but it's a monstrosity. This will change the character of our community. Everyone here spoke about all the minor details, which I'm sure you need to go over, but you need to remember, we invested in our community. I've lived here 33 years, in the Seville area. Prior to that, in East Islip. I've been an Islip town resident my entire life, so has my husband and my children. My children want houses, one bought one. They don't want to throw their money in their pockets. They want to invest in our community like we have, in the five businesses that we have. We don't want this. You need to really look at that. You need to drive around those streets and then drive down behind the Old Grumman and look at that complex and times it by three, and then imagine it elevated in the middle of a residential community. It's no good. That's all I have to say. Please, don't approve this. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Patricia Carroll. I live at 227 Green Avenue in Seville. I've lived there for 26 years, and I'm here to urge you to reject the proposal before you. First of all, I have to say the notion that $3,000 rental properties in the middle of Seville are somehow going to keep our young people on Long Island. It's absurd, it's laughable, and it's just not true. Most of the things I was going to talk about have already been discussed, so I'm going to limit mine to two topics. One is water, and the second is traffic. With respect to water, there hasn't been a lot of discussion of the fact that there's going to be so much impervious cover that is going to be placed in this project between the roads, the parking spots, the buildings, anything else. It's going to greatly impact our groundwater supply, which supplies 100% of our drinking water here on Long Island. It's really important to think about that. From the various things that I've read, there could be up to 46 acres of impervious cover, and all of the quote-unquote mitigation measures that are being proposed, like ponds and recharge aquifers or whatever, they're not going to alleviate that amount of impervious cover. So that's what I have to say about the water, except also, there's a multiplicity of toxic chemicals that have been found at the location that are going to be dug up and dispersed. They're not going to be properly taken away, they're just apparently going to be mitigated by adding more dirt to them. All of those chemicals are going to wind up in our watershed and in our bay. Now, with respect to traffic, I have to drive on Lakeland Avenue every day, even though I'm over 55. And it's untenable, as it is right now. And the notion, I mean, their traffic expert estimated that 1,300 cars would be coming and going in the course of a day. That is far too much for that narrow street of Lakeland Avenue or even Bohemia Parkway. It's just, it's too much to ask of a relatively small, you know, two-way road. And it's going to be dangerous, accidents are going to increase, and everyone's quality of life is going to be wretched. It's already too much traffic. So all that being said, I really implore you to reject this untenable proposal. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Brendan McCurdy, and I applaud you for giving us all the time to speak tonight. I live at 108 Atlantic Avenue in West Seville. I was brought up in Oakdale. My parents moved from Flatbush in 1961. I'm a Kinnick Wharf grad, 1975, and I persuaded my wife to move to West Seville in 1989. So we've lived on Atlantic Avenue for 35 years. Two anecdotal stories. One, I would have been here sooner, but I got stuck in the Oakdale merge. There was a breakdown in the west lane of traffic, and it took me 30 minutes to go three miles. And also, in today's patch, we hear that nine beaches in Islip were closed due to bacterial scares. Three of them, one, West Oaks in West Seville, Seville Marina, and the Bayport Beach. So yes, there is a problem with the bay, and we know, science confirms it is nitrogen. Nitrogen gets into the groundwater, it seeps into the estuaries, and it gets into the bay. So let's talk nitrogen, okay? From the report on the supplemental DEIS, I'm reading the simulation of nitrogen and recharge. This is Nelson Pope in Voorhees Report. No golf, so the existing condition, 499 pounds of nitrogen on an annual basis. If we look at 98 units, which is AAA, 2,609 pounds of nitrogen. If you look at the proposed project, 4,822 pounds of nitrogen. Now, the developer said, "Oh, no, this is going to improve the bay because we're going to sewer Seville." And they've come up with this number, net downtown sewer-ing load reduction of 7,463 pounds, to come up with this negative number of minus 2,600. Well, the fact of the matter is, the developer is allocating 70,000 gallons in the sewer's treatment plant. The developer's not paying for sewer-ing Seville. The developer's not putting a sewer pipe down Lakeland, nor is he paying for the hookup. So it's a canard to say that, oh, it's a net negative when you're predicated upon something that is not for certain. It should really be just ruled out of hand. So I think that's an important point, and I hope the board considers it. Finally, I'd like to point out that this is a SECRE hearing. And in SECRE, we talk about cumulative impact, and that is all about, cumulative impact must be impacted, must be assessed, if the impacts of related or any related actions may be incrementally significant, and if whether two actions are in close enough proximity to affect the same resources, including a single road segment. So I bring to the board's attention that not one mile down Sunrise Highway, there's 138 acres that was zoned in 2014 to have 350 residences, a million square feet of industrial, and 340,000 square feet of retail. That property was sold in 2021 to Skanel Properties. That property is now actively in play. They are discussing with the planning board what they're going to do with those 138 acres. So if you, as the SECRE lead agency, do not take into account the cumulative impact of the decision you're going to make, then therefore, you're really not doing your job. So thank you very much for your time.
Can I just point out for you, sir, that SECRE is before the town board, so if you have not given that information to the town board, they're the lead agency on that. So please submit that to the town board. We're different from the planning board.
Oh, okay. So you have no role in the SECRE process at all?
We'll consider the final result of it, but you should certainly get that to the town board, who has an open comment period still for SECRE.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is John Tafe, and I live in Seville, and I get to see the golf course every single day. And I stand before you tonight, not as a politician or a paid consultant, but someone who has given nearly a decade of his life to protecting this land, this community, and our future. Since I was 15 years old, I have been studying this property, the zoning laws that protect it, and the forces trying to dismantle those protections for profit. Tonight, I am submitting a 26-page rebuttal report I personally wrote on behalf of the Greater Islip Association, filled with evidence, data, and code, because what is happening here is not just controversial, it is fundamentally wrong. This is not just another parcel of land. It is one of the last great green spaces left unprotected in Seville. It's where stormwater recharges, where wildlife thrives, where peace still exists. And now a developer wants to wipe that all away and force 890 high-density units into a single-family neighborhood that was never designed to carry this weight. This is not planning. This isn't development. It's desecration of our neighborhood. If this board greenlights a project this reckless, it's not a lapse in judgment, it's a deliberate betrayal of the responsibility to this town. Don't just listen to me. The Oakdale Civic, the Greater Seville Civic, the Bohemia Civic, and the Greater Unconcomitant Civic all stand in- Civic, all stand in opposition. So do both of the Seville and Kinetqua School District. That means parents, teachers, and administrators from two entire districts are sounding the alarm. And that matters. What doesn't matter is a fancy rebrand. This was Seville Gray Barn, now it's South Bay Village. Next year, it could be anything. A new name doesn't erase the truth. It's the same community disaster in a different mask. We heard promises of community benefit, but in Amityville, Reckler paid $0 in school taxes and cost the district millions. That's not a benefit, that's a burden. We are not against housing, we are not against growth. But what is being proposed is not responsible growth. It is unchecked greed cloaked in PR buzzwords. And let me say this plainly as I can. If a zoning change is approved, it will be a permanent stain on this town's history. No one will forget who allowed it. So tonight, you must decide, do you stand with the residents, the civics, the schools, and the science? Or do you bow down to one of the biggest developers on Long Island? Because this isn't just about 890 units, it's about whether our own zoning code and comprehensive plan means anything. It's about whether we believe in the community. It's about whether this board has the courage to do what's right, not what's easy. So say no to the Island Hills-South Bay Village zone change. Preserve the land and honor your duty. And stand with the people you are appointed to serve, because our community will not stop, and we will not back down. And I'm submitting all this for public record. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll make that part of the record.
Good evening. My name is Alfred Croce. I'm a 32-year resident of Seville. And this is the first time that I've felt compelled to address the planning board. I've looked at the project online, the schematic for it, and what was presented tonight, and I'm telling you, it's an impressive project. The problem is, it's being built in the wrong location. What we need, and I think it was demonstrated by one of the ladies just recently, we don't need more rental housing in Seville, we need more single-family homes of whatever type that might be. Regarding the traffic that this is going to generate, it's impossible to make a left-hand turn on Lakeland Avenue or even Montalk Highway. And that's at all different days of the week, all different hours of the day. I often kid my wife, when she's sitting next to me and we're trying to make a left, do you think they had this much trouble in the horse and buggy days? And we have a good laugh about it while we wait. Regarding the sewers, please don't be misled by the fact, we all want sewers, but we don't want sewers under this particular situation. Whatever problems are going to come out of this are going to be much more than what they're going to give you in sewers. Thank you.
Good evening. Mark Andres. I'm a 39-year veteran of Seville. We're in our second home here. And I just want to answer a couple of questions. Somebody had asked about what's the total height. It's on the front of the site plan, it's 45 feet. And the architect here couldn't answer that tonight, which is pretty embarrassing. There are 1,900 parking spots, not 1,400, for this project. I find it really insulting to have a parade of tradespeople come through here that are going to work, and they're out and gone, and have no vested interest in the community. They make their money, and they're gone. What is needed in the community are single-family homes, not rentals. Many people have pointed that out. It's an outrageous amount of rentals at this point. Some of you may be aware, or are not aware, that there are companies like BlackRock that are currently buying up tens of thousands of homes in the United States. And you know what they're doing with them? They're renting them. They're building new projects in communities, particularly in suburban areas like Atlanta. And they are building big complexes, and they're renting the homes. They're taking away the American dream. This is big corporate greed. All right? What is needed are single-family homes. We bought and stayed in Seville because of the real-world small-town atmosphere. You know, it's not easy starting out. We both worked hard, saved our money. You know, we raised our kids here because of the great schools. We stayed because it's safe, it's clean, there's always something going on in town. I can always find a parking space when and where I need it in town. Everyone here is proud to live in our small town, and it shows. It shows in the care people take to maintain their homes. It shows in the commitment from the community with organizations like the Seville Village Improvement Society, who helps keep our town looking beautiful. All this will change by adding 2,700 people in one single development project. That's a 25% increase in population in the town of Seville. There are designated 1,900 parking spaces in this project. There are not 1,900 parking spaces in all of downtown Seville. This project is to benefit the developer Reckler Equities and not the town of Seville or its residents. The magnitude of this project is this disgusting attempt to line their pockets with profits at the expense of longtime residents like myself and my neighbors. There are plenty of rental units available in Seville and the surrounding neighborhood. Fairfill Properties runs a full-page ad every day in Newsday advertising all of their local properties, Seville, Bayport, Holbrook, Holtville, Bohemia. Plenty of inventory, sign up today, move in tomorrow. What this town needs are single-family detached homes. Let them build 114 homes, or upzone it to half-acre, quarter-acre. All right? This is a hard no for me and all my neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Kevin Coyne, Seville. First, I want to thank the reporter, because what a job tonight for how long you've been writing and doing this. So, great job. I'm sorry for you. So that's the first thing I want to say. Second thing, everybody here has said a lot of things that I think, agree with, because I'm against this project. But it's hard to really put into words what I want to say. So I decided, I'm like, in two and a half minutes, I'm not originally from Seville. I moved here because my wife and I lived in Levittown. I think everybody on Long Island is familiar with Levittown. 6,000 square feet, 30-by-25-foot homes, mass-developed. Had three kids, couldn't live there anymore. I asked my 75-year-old father, who's been a contractor, owned business, doing little handyman stuff here and there, what town would you live in? He's from West Babylon. He goes, been all over the island. He goes, Seville. He goes, your sister lives in Oakdale. It's a great town, they have a lot of stuff to do. The character and the charm is great. I married a girl from upstate New York, Rochester, New York. She did not like Long Island. She loves Seville. And now they want to change Seville. This, listening to everybody over here, reminded me of, I'm from Philly, we have offices over here in Garden City. Nobody said, hey, I'm from Seville. I'm from Suffolk. I'm from the South Shore. Nobody said that. It almost reminds me of It's a Wonderful Life. I think everybody has seen It's a Wonderful Life. It reminds me of Pottersville and Mr. Potter. You want to change the character of the town. We worked, I'm sure people before me, because I only moved in two years ago, have kept this town beautiful. It's really nice, and it's lovely. And now you want to change it. Can someone tell me why they want to change it? Just an honest answer. Okay? All right. I'm just rhetorical questions, I apologize. First time at a meeting. So I think the answer is money, like everybody else has said. The traffic's a concern, everything's a concern. But what Seville is, what Oakdale is, what the school districts are, that to me is Seville. This place is not Seville. The last thing I want to say, and I just lost my train of thought, which is always terrible, but in the promotional material for this, it said, it helps school districts. I have failed to hear how it helps Seville. If it costs you $30,000 a year per student to educate them, and you're going to get $5 million, it's about 160 students. But it all sounds like Kinetqua. What is the benefit for Seville? It sounds like a lot of traffic, but nothing for us. Thank you.
Little short. Hey, good evening. Thank you for paying attention to all of us. My name is Karen Andres. I am a lifelong Islip Town resident, and a current Seville resident of 39 years. I belong to the Great South Bay Autobahn Society, and as a result, I am the director of, what am I director of? Brookside County Preserve, which is in West Seville. The preserve, hold on, let me get my, preserve, is located on Greens Creek. All right? The proposed development is the Recharge Basin for Greens Creek. All right? Which is under the golf course. This massive development, which is going to cover most of the property, will not allow the rainwater, especially since they're going to collect all the runoff, not going to allow the rainwater to percolate down and recharge the creek. All right? So that is one issue that I have, is that the creek could very well just dry up. And if you've ever been to this cute little hidden gem of a park, which is about six-and-a-half acres, it used to be, the park is what was the caretaker's house of the Isaac Green Estate. And Isaac Green's wife wanted a water park, an English water park. So what he did hundreds of years ago, you couldn't do now, he diverted the stream to make all these little extra streams. I'm afraid with this development and not letting the water percolate down, the streams could dry up. On another note, someone made a mention of water quality. In the fall, we have well water at the park, and we had Suffolk County come and test the water. The water is undrinkable. So every little spigot that we have on the property in the house says, water not potable. So adding all of this extra fertilizer and pesticides that they'll need to keep their lush green lawn, that's what's going to come downstream and out into the bay. And really, it's the fertilizers which many people have spoken about, whoops, is what's damaging the bay. So I implore you to say no to this project, and I thank you for your time.
My name is Sal Tedesco. I am a Seville resident. I live at First Street, right off Chester Avenue. I frequently drive by the site nearly every day. I did have a couple of things to say, but from everything I've read, everything I heard tonight, what I've seen displayed, a lot of the objections, at least my objections, I think there are a lot of the Seville residents' objections, perhaps not speaking for all of them, but comes down to three main things. Density, density, and density, and stuff. A lot of the problems arise from the density of this project. With the exception of station yards, you know, this would be one of the largest developed areas in the area. You know, station yards, I believe, being over 1,400 apartments. But that was conceived as a mixed-use community, walkable community near a train station. It's not a blighted area that's being redeveloped for the benefit of the neighborhood. We're talking about, you've heard, spoken a lot here about charm and character in Seville. It's a neighborhood. You're talking about changing the entire character of neighborhood with the density of this development. I am obviously opposed to it, and I am against a zoning change. Thank you.
Good evening, almost good morning. My name is Michael Kennedy. I reside in Seville for the past 39 years, and I speak in opposition to the latest amended plan for the Island Hills property. Thank you for the opportunity to address the planning board. I will limit my comments primarily to the environmental aspects herein. Our county has spent more than $1 billion preserving open space and farmland, and the town of Islip is missing a golden opportunity to obtain this parcel via eminent domain at its value as AAA-zoned family-dwelling land, which it's been since Islip adopted zoning in 1938, nearly 100 years ago. If the developer overpaid in anticipation of a massive zoning change, and the town board denies the change, the Recklers can take their business loss and leave us alone. While they could have had their lawyers insert language that the purchase was subject to obtaining a change of zoning, they chose poorly and gambled that the town of Islip would cave to their request and help them create a revenue stream for the next 100 years. They could have constructed 98 one-family dwellings with much less opposition than they have generated with their 900 units. The town of Oyster Bay recently moved to obtain, by condemnation, a privately-owned course for the stated purpose of preserving it from development. The town of Islip could pick up this property for a song at its current zoning, establish a fourth town golf course, a park, a nature preserve, et cetera. People have mentioned this as well. Buried in the draft environmental impact statement is a survey showing that the Island Hills property sits squarely in the middle of the watershed for Greens Creek. And as everybody else has said, they may be dangling the idea of sewers, but nobody is paying for a forced tube up or paying for the connections by the landlords that own the property down on Main Street. The town of Islip grants a small break on real property taxes to encourage first responders, hoping that they will stay for 20, 30, or 40 years with the local fire department or the ambulance company. How many of the residents of Gray Barn, Book 2, will volunteer, and how many will stay for the next 20 or 30 years in their community? This came up before. If you enter the walking distance from the Phase 1 section of the Seville Railroad Station, Google Maps tonight says it is a 36-minute walk. I question how that is walkability, to walk from the corner of Bohemia Parkway to the railroad station in 36 minutes in the winter. Please have the courage to deny the zoning change. Maintain Seville as a place where, more often than not, the grandchildren live in the home their grandparents purchased 60 years earlier. That is what makes it the friendliest town in America. Thank you.
My name is Chris Regusa. I live at 626 Chester Road in Seville. And I don't think that anybody, either on the dais or in the front row, would be willing to have a sewage treatment, storage, or wastewater treatment plant built within 1,000 feet of their back door. It's nuts. What they're planning on doing is putting a city in the middle of a village. It's not sustainable. This is ridiculous. Walk in my shoes. What would you do? Would you fight? You would absolutely fight. And here we are, 25 and a half million gallons a year of waste. Okay? And if I had a blue tarp on the roof of my house for six months, you'd be all over me. This has been going on for better than two years now. Okay? They got to clean it up. Town of Islip 360, everything that was discussed was about changing the zoning law. Okay? It's not a good look. All right? How that was developed and planned needs to be looked at. It's just not right. All right? Walkability, if all this talk about walkability, we don't even have sidewalks. Come on. Let's be serious, please, for two seconds, okay? This is smug obfuscation. Everything that we've been presented, you can't even see the presentation, because visually, I sat right up here. You can't even see it, you couldn't even read it. What kind of a presentation are we really looking at here? Okay? Five to seven years of construction, noise, pollution, traffic, just for the construction, much less what we have to deal with in the aftermath when this thing is completed. Okay? We've had 30 years of promises that we're going to get sewers. I don't believe for a second that these guys are going to give us sewers. It's the county's responsibility. Okay? Lean on the county. Fix the merge. Say no to this. Be smart, please. Okay? Look at it with honest eyes, and you're going to say to yourself, there's no way we can say yes. You have to say no. No to the zone change. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anne Marie Gorman. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Okay? I do agree that we need to renovate the Island Hills golf course, but we need to have more affordable housing for the younger generation, the first-time homebuyers. We need to see single-family homes in the price range of $400,000 to $500,000, not apartments or luxury homes. Otherwise, they will remain vacant, and we don't want to see what happened to the Gray Barn in Amityville, where there still remains a lot of vacancies. This proposal is overwhelming- This proposal is overwhelming in size and will only cause much congestion and severe stress to the area in every way. I'm a mother of three. Now, all my children are married and they were just barely able to afford their homes five years ago. Today, they wouldn't be able to buy their own home. I would like to see my grandchildren and others in the community able to afford their own home. I've lived on Long Island all my life and want to see my children's children enjoy all the wonderful opportunities and amazing places that Long Island has to offer. This community is a vibrant, hard-working town that has many wonderful thriving businesses. We do not need to add a village into the town. Please show some compassion for the town, for the younger generation, and build a reasonable amount of single-family homes that are needed for the next generation to survive and remain here on Long Island. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, fellow neighbors. My name is Bridgette Pamela. I'm a resident of Oakdale. I'm here to speak against this project in terms of education. Bossy's kindergarten classes are the largest they've been and growing now already. Adding more kids has horrible implications for our children. And like many others have said, traffic and first response times will be gravely impacted. Additionally, I would like to add that it took my husband and I over a year and a half to get a variance for our home addition of eight inches for a porch and four feet on a side yard. Luckily, we did fight with supporting evidence for that approval. However, one of my best friends was also requesting a variance for her front entryway protruding 11 inches and was denied. What was the reasoning? It would set a bad precedent and was inconsistent with the aesthetic character of the neighborhood. If 11 inches did that, then a zone change is most certainly a bad precedent and inconsistent with the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Board. My name is Dan Lloyd. I actually reside at 70 Gray Barn Lane, Apartment 101 in Amityville, New York, 11701. So I'm giving a little different perspective to the multiple of individuals spoke today. So I am a native Long Islander. I'm actually a fourth-generation Long Islander and I'm also the president of Minor Millennials, which is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit that helps young people access jobs, build wealth, and become civically engaged. More importantly, I came here today because I'm a husband and I'm a father of two children. And I'm here to speak in strong support of the Reckless Equity proposed South Bay Village development. And I'm going to explain to you why. As someone who deeply believes in the American dream and the promise of Long Island suburban way of life, I'm alarmed by how out of reach that dream has become for my generation, millennials, by the way, that are now ages 43 to 26 years old, and Gen Z, who are ages 12 to 25 years old. Millennials and Gen Z professionals who grew up here, who are educated here and want to stay here are being priced out. I want to remind everyone here and also the many people that spoke already and the people that are still here, Long Island is built for working-class professionals. We no longer can afford to live here based upon the working-class income that we have. Just today in Newsday, a report was released showing that the median income to purchase a home on Long Island is now $242,000. Meanwhile, the average millennial household income earns under $80,000. And that, before factoring in student debt and soaring cost of living. These numbers are not just alarming, they're unsustainable. If we talk about who eventually, or originally moved to Long Island from this city in 1950s and 60s, where fire department, where police professionals, first responders, those that worked to build the working-class economy, would not be able to actually build and live here in today's economy. That's why South Bay Village is so important. Reckless Equity has a proven track record and I live there, so that's why I'm speaking here today in support of that, not just of a beautiful building, but high-quality residence and a true community partner I know firsthand. My own family currently rents there, as I mentioned, and we have design amenities that my children are able to enjoy, a backyard and a beautiful pool that we would not be able to have in other developments as we're acquiring and working desperately to get in a home and acquire and build and own an actual single-family home on Long Island. I make a good living. I make over six figures. I cannot afford, I'm hopefully going to close in a couple of days, but I have not been able to get there yet because of the cost of living that it, it's just the reality of Long Island, it's the reality of the market, it's the reality of life. I know everybody on that dais knows this. If you don't make over $250,000, you probably would not be, that's really quick. I'm standing here just to support of the Reckless Equity project and also just millennials here that are talented, educated, and want to stay here. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Perici. I'm a resident of Oakdale for 57 years. I have one question. Why is this even on the table? With the absurdity of these numbers, why is this still on the table? This company should be called circumlocutiating. Honestly, people ask questions, you had meetings, and this is where we're at? The supermajority of the community has spoken to you guys. I don't know what you're doing.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Lucretia Di Soto. I will be three years live in Seville this November. I am so happy. Before I, we rent in Pacho. We are glad to have rented places when we need it, when we don't have enough to have our own house. But my husband has been working so hard for almost 30 years here and what he's doing is, "I have worked so hard all my life. I would like to have something on my own." Thanks to God, we were able to be homeowners, have the opportunity to pay the house, as a matter of fact. I remember my children went to West Seville Christian School. We drive all those streets that were mentioned and my daughter say, "Oh, how I dreamed be able to ride my bike in those streets." It was her dream and her dream came true. She has been able to ride their bike. And for a child, that means a lot, have a street, peaceful street where they can drive, a safety space where they can develop, feel happy, have the security to go and enjoy their youth, go to their first job in their bike. So they were able to do that. Seville is a beautiful place and it's true, it's a friendly place. All the neighbors has been welcoming and respectful and we have the opportunity to invest in our own capital. That is good. So it's good, the lady that was here before mentioned how many places are available for the people who cannot have the mortgage at the beginning, they can go and rent. But also, it's important, communities with the safety and peace that exist in Seville and that exists more opportunities that people have their own houses, affordable houses. I think, I didn't know about this until I walked with my dog, because I live in St. John's in front of that and I didn't know about this until I was walking with the dog and I saw the public announcement and, "I'm going to go." And when I was walking, I saw deer, so the nature is so beautiful in this place. I think it's good to conserve it as it is, the community exists places that the people can rent and exists community as Seville, the where families can grow in safety and it's good, this balance. Thank you for your service.
My name is Donna Hufford and I live on Dorm Road, which is a block away from the golf course and I lived there for 41 years. And I just want to say that homeowners have a vested interest in their neighborhood. They contribute to the community and tenants are transients and they take from the community. I'd like to say also, I think that AAA zoning is okay, but the more I hear about it, especially the Autobahn, the lady that works for the Autobahn Society and she's saying how that's a very important creek over there and we're going to lose the creek, I'm now really leaning more towards eminent domain and that staying as green, green space, eminent domain and green space. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I'm going to ask Mr. Colgan to give the staff report and then we'll come back to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the hour is late, I'll be brief. Many concerns were raised tonight by both the board and the public that the applicant needs to address and the staff subsequently will need to evaluate. The staff has also received a large number of public correspondences on the application, including just under 400 emails. Additional evaluation of the contents of the environmental impact statement is also forthcoming from the town's consultants and those comments should be presented to the board prior to making a recommendation to the town board on this application. So in light of that, the staff would recommend that the board reserve decision tonight.
Thank you. Applicant like to address some of the comments or make any of the statements on the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think at this time, we will reserve our response for a submission to the board as we've discussed earlier in the night. Certainly, there have been a lot of comments, things to listen to, address, consider, respond to. We certainly have listened to everything that has been said tonight and we would, I think, need probably 10 days to two weeks to respond, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, just so we can leave the record open.
And that's the purpose of keeping it open for a submission.
And also, the questions that were asked by the board members, if you could certainly address those in the response.
Absolutely. We've taken them all down, so we'll address everything.
Important how you came up with the 1.5-mile radius to make your comparison, so we understand that. If you can speak about in your analysis, going from AAA to a planning development district versus the AA, the single A, the B, and everything that's in between that we're skipping over, why not that? Addressing, I know you wrote these notes down, the Town of Islip Master Plan, the Suffolk County Corridor Study on Long Sunrise Highway, and obviously, all the issues that were raised by my colleagues on the board and then obviously by the community, that'd be helpful for us.
Yes. Again, we've taken notes on all of that and we will address it.
Appreciate that. Are there further questions from the board? Seeing any? Anything further you'd like to add?
I think that's it for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Brown?
First of all, I'd like to thank the applicant for the presentation and people for all their testimony tonight. It's a long night. Thank you very much for sticking with it and giving us all the testimony. Based on the information that we have and gathered tonight, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Let's leave it open for 30 days.
Okay, I'm going to leave the public hearing open for 30 days. And what that means is, any testimony that you have, anybody that had to leave because it was getting late, have them submit to the planning board and, you know, their testimony would be just as they spoke right here tonight. So my motion is going to be to leave the public hearing open for 30 days and reserve decision.
It's a motion by Mr. Brown to leave the public comment period open for 30 days and reserve decision. Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Moriarty. Before I call for a vote, are you standing up for?
Yeah, I am. Just to address timing. So to keep it open for 30 days, as I understand it, I believe the next board meeting is August 13th, which is less than 30 days. And it would be our hope to be back here then, not in September.
I think with the 30 days at the next meeting, which is a publicly noticed meeting, we can make a motion to close the hearing two days early at our discretion. Right? So it's open to 30 days if, in fact, you're on the next agenda, as obviously, there's still a lot to do in terms of the secret that's come back, there's comments on that, traffic study, our experts need to look at that, get stuff back to you. We have to digest what you're going to send in to me. So 30 days, but again, if you're on for the August meeting, we certainly can be a motion by this board to close the public hearing and make a decision.
That's fine. Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, we're reserved. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Brown to adjourn. Second by Ms. Cruz, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, we are adjourned. Thank you all.